Thank you, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you this retreat, present some information that we hope will be beneficial both to you as well as the citizens that you represent. I do want to start by personally introducing one of the new members of our team. You may recall receiving an email if you've had a chance to review that, that we have hired a new Director of Public Works and he is here with us today at this time. I'm going to actually ask Dr. Thompson as he oversees that department to come forth and also bring up a new member. He's going to introduce him and then like give him just a few moments to introduce himself to the council. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and members of council.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, as Administrator alluded to, last Friday you all received an email regarding our renewed staff member and so Mr. Michael Maloney comes to us by way of Wisconsin. He's worked for MSA Professional Services for the last 25 years, so he's not someone who jumps ship pretty often and so he comes here with great experience. He's a PE, has a wealth of experience. As I've explained to the public works staff recently, the type of work that we need in transportation and in public works, that's what he's done in both areas. And so, in his role, working for a private corporation, he had a chance to serve as the municipal engineer for different municipalities in Wisconsin. He's also served as the interim Public Works Director for a municipality there in Wisconsin. So, he's completed over 1,600 projects, over $15 million worth of construction projects in a small span of time. So, he understands construction, he understands public works, he has a heart for service and we've realized that for someone to come to us for two weeks in a row for interviews, two Fridays in a row, he flew down on his dime just to meet with us. And so, I want to ask Mr. Maloney just to come forward for a brief moment so everybody can lay eyes on him and someone who has, again, great experience, please give him a round of applause.
Michael, any words you just want to share with our folks, with our council members here?
Well, I just wanted to say I've been here a short couple of days and I just want to say I've been impressed meeting all the staff at Public Works and throughout the county. I've done a little bit of research on the work that has been done here and I'm proud to serve with you, so thank you.
Welcome and we certainly look forward to a long and productive working relationship and just let us know what to do to make sure you're... Councilmember Dickerson, you want to start over there?
Oh, yes. Good morning. I'm Councilwoman Joyce Dickerson, representing District Two.
Yvonne McLeod, District Three.
Sha'Keith Newton, District Eleven.
Joe Walker.
Why aren't the standroom? Is he in show?
Joe Walker, District Six.
Bill Malinowski, District One.
Naomi Shaw, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Jim Miami, District Eight.
Allison Teratio, District Five.
Chip Jackson, District Nine.
Paul Livingston, District Four.
De'olah Myers, District Ten.
Thank you all very, very much. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, members of council. As you see in your agenda packet, we have a group of people that are here specifically designed to focus our attention on some of the areas that we believe that we need to focus on if we want to present these individuals to you with their presentation. So, we understand that there may be other questions and other priorities that are going on in the council's purview, but we believe that these particular matters were ones that we believe need to be focused and attention and so we're hoping that this particular retreat can kind of focus our attention on these areas. So, with that being said, we'll call up our first group of presenters, which we have scheduled was some transportation from last week, the Neil Meyer, Miss Steele, necessary to come forward and present state of the county relative to transportation.
Again, I'm Michael Niermeier, Transportation Director, managing oversight of the penny. I got Ms. Allison Steele, the deputy, with me and today we're going to go over a lot of information that you've probably seen before, but give us a brief presentation then we can roll into any questions and answers you may have as we move forward with the penny. Just a few, you can see in your agendas, some of the topics we'll be looking at today and we can discuss later. Program funding categories are very, it doesn't have the whole thing, it's like we're missing some numbers in there. We've seen this one plenty of times. The largest was the roadways program which is shown in the larger crescent to the right. You're talking about $656 million which encompasses about 63% of the total penny funding and that's 63% of the $1.037 billion of program costs. On the smaller end, you have about 29% of $300,000, that goes, $300 million that goes to the comment and then finally, under the program, the bicycles, pedestrians, greenways, $80.8 million that goes for that category and that encompasses about 7.8%. The remaining 32, which is a very small slice, is administrative costs, $32 million. Current contracts we have advertised or are currently under evaluation and mind you, these were put together in December, so some of the numbers and the dates have changed. The geotech material testing on-call services, which actually benefits all of the county, is currently under evaluation. We have several contracts awarded this time and we have, we are in the process of contracting for geotech testing for many of our projects. This is required for compliance with DOT and other organizations. Additionally, the staff augmentation, which is a huge part of the program moving forward in the county, is in the final days of evaluation by the evaluation team. You can look at some of the numbers there and they look large and they are. To get some of these specialties, you're looking at just south of a million dollars for full-time staff augmentation. We hope it's less because this is a competitive procurement here, but key things we need to move forward with this program that we can't do presently is a lot of the utility coordination management. Our engineers that are currently executing projects need that person to assist them with their jobs, you know, right away. Once we start moving ahead with the program and getting new projects as they get approved in the next few months, being able to do that acquisition of land so we can execute these projects. Program control to monitor those expenses at the program level, document control which is critical just for ensuring that we have what we need when it's audited and other things. Estimators for ensuring we're accurate with the numbers moving forward and, you know, subject matter experts available as needed. So, right now, we're looking at approximately five to six full-time employees with this staff augmentation. Several projects ready to advertise, we have resurfacing Package R, which is about 45 roads, Clemson Road Sidewalk, which will connect the existing shared-use path down the Sparkle berry Clemson intersection and then finally, the Faraway Drive Sidewalk, which is actually ready to advertise. Contracts awarded but under construction, just to update a little bit on this, you know, Green Street Phase Two started on Tuesday.
Would you, if a council member had a question, would you rather them ask it as you cover up the topic or wait to the end?
However you would like. We can do it at the end if it's easier or we can do it in stream if you prefer that.
Oh, if any council member had a preference.
Prefer at the end, but that's okay. It's your workshop.
Okay.
At the end unless it's absolutely necessary.
We'll do it at the end.
Okay, thank you. So, we talked about Green Street Phase Two, did begin this week. They had the construction company Crowder out there doing some survey work in preparation of a full mobilization. North Springs Harrington actually is starting in early February. Harrison Road Sidewalk, we're ready to finish contracting on that as well as Polo Road SUP, that's will be starting this spring. This is just some continued information. We talked about Green Street and the three phases and, you know, if you recall, the bids we received for Green Phase Two came under what we thought they would be, so it'll allow for additional funding for looking at that Green Street Phase Three project in the future. Projects under construction, if you look at the widening, you know, Hardscrabble Road has been ongoing, that is a state-run project. Essentially, we just have a referendum amount that we give to the state to complete that. Clemson Road is progressing extremely well. They're talking, you know, 50 to 60% complete, you know, minor issues like any construction project, but it's been progressing extremely well. And of course, North Main, you know, gets a lot of attention, but we're doing a lot of installation of a retaining wall on the northern part of the project this past week. The sidewalks look great and it's definitely due to be completed in the fall of this year. Other projects that continue under construction, Broad River Neighborhood Improvement, Candlewood and CERN, Broad River NIP as well as Candlewood are nearing completion. CERN, as we know, is ongoing. We just completed the Rabbit Run piece with the new culverts and resurfacing, it's open again and a lot of people excited about that, especially Ms. Newton. Next we can turn to is the connector from Rabbit Run that has had some progress, has started on that, but now they can resume that. Magnolia Schoolhouse is nearly about 99%. We're looking at some punch list items on that and again, everyone's going to be excited to wrap up that project. Dirt Road Packages I and J are ongoing. We're essentially down to the last two roads on both of those. They're very wet, so it's going to take a while for those to dry out before we can continue and finish up those. Package P is about 95% complete. Package Q was about 5%. The big initial road we paved was Decker Boulevard. That's done except for a few punch list items and they've done an additional about 10 smaller roads with that already. Three Rivers Greenway, always a hot topic, is about 99% complete for now. We're in the process with that of developing IGA language with the city to turn that project over, then we can focus on completing the connection between where the current walkway ends near the railroad bridge and Boyd Island, which that piece is complete. We need to get the project into the hands of the city so they can do the maintenance and upkeep and we can focus on that final pedestrian connection to Boyd Island. Dirt Road Package G and H, again, substantial completion. There's a few things left, again, the wet conditions we've had the last month have precluded ending, or completing those, but again, they're substantially complete. Resurface HMNO and transportation improvement contracts are substantial complete. They are a few punch list items here and there and for HMNO itself, they're actually in closeout, so we're in the process of closing those out. We talked about pedestrian improvements with all the ADA accessible corners at the intersections throughout the area. That is complete and that's in project closeout also. Shop Road has been done for a while, closeout just takes a while. Once we get, you know, the final payment, we'll be able to, we have about $3.5 million of economic development funding that we'll be able to bring back in to the penny that's been promised or it's been obligated by economic development and that can be used for Shop Phase, Shop Two. And finally, Coon Road Sidewalk, Sidewalk Package Nine is in closeout process too. I want to explain this five-year construction outlook. If you look at a number of $84 million at the bottom, which is just construction cost for the projects listed. This is what we currently are doing or we've been authorized to do such as, you know, the Gilz Creek Greenway, which was approved, you know, in August with the amendment to the referendum. So, you can, you could probably put about 20% more non-construction costs on that number and then as decisions are made by this body in the near future, we have this work session where we can present what the staff believes, our scope reductions, changes to move and some of the other over-referendum projects, that number will go up, but this is the only number we can commit to or the projects we can commit to as of today. In design, you know, several months ago, council, a lot of dirt road discussion and the remaining Year One, Two, and Year Three, Four roads were talked about quite a bit. Of those 59 roads, we're focusing on the Year One, Two roads, it's about 21. I'll get to this later, but we are following council's guidance and direction on reaching back out to all these residents or the parcel owners on those property to go back through and then do an internal reevaluation with our engineers to address any issues that were seen beforehand and see if they can be resolved now and so we can continue to move this dirt road program forward. Designs for greenways, again, since it was approved, the most mature is Gilz Creek at the moment, will be, that one is moving forward currently. The other scopes that have been developed will need to be reevaluated because of the approved termini changes or the reduction of realignment and those will be moving out, are currently moving out and they'll be getting to design within probably the next six months, hopefully less, but I don't want to promise you anything less. Sidewalks, you know, in August, this council approved the 50 of 56. We have 17 remaining. There's six more on top that are supposed to be done with other projects. Just want to get clarity from this body that those are good, the remaining 17 are good to move forward on and that can be, we can discuss that after this presentation. Everything else, again, is on hold pending comprehensive plan to move forward on the remaining over-referendum and larger projects. Going back to the dirt roads, I did mention this earlier, there's 21 in the Year One, Two. Going back through, sending certified letters, which are actually being done this week, finishing putting together, get them out to those property owners so we can readdress the consent denial. As you know, the ordinance says, you know, consent denial prevents anyone from paving anything unless, you know, less than 25% of the owners say it's okay. It's been a long time, as we pointed out, for these people, had information provided to them. Some of them, five years ago, said, hey, you said, you were going to pave my road and then either nothing happened or there's limited communication, there's a lot of confusion. So, trying to get ahead of that and make sure that everyone gets a fair look again at getting their road paved should the property owners decide that's what they want to do. And again, the follow-up is important. They may say yes, no. If they say no, we need to have positive contact that says, hey, do you understand? You know, making sure there's an understanding there so it's an informed decision as to saying no and we feel that's very important. Going over some brief staffing update, we do have five to six project manager positions filled. We're very excited with the quality of engineers that we've hired and they're all doing extremely well. Couldn't be happier, they work well together, it's a very collaborative environment, everyone brings a different skill set, so that's been very beneficial. We have an offer about to go out for a fourth inspector. You may have heard, one of our inspectors passed away a couple of weeks ago. So, unfortunately, I have to tell you, we only have three of our four, but we are hiring another one right now. All our CEI firms are under contract, so that work is being let as we speak for some of the larger projects. If you recall, our plan earlier was some of the larger state projects, having contract inspectors on those projects, then allows our staff to focus on some of the smaller ones, provide QA and gives us greater flexibility to, you know, cover down should there be a gap in coverage, but my direction to the staff was we will be compliant. We don't need anyone coming and saying, hey, you didn't have somebody out there. So, having that built-in flexibility is critical and so far, we've had great success with our limited contract inspectors at some of the projects like a Clemson Road, like a North Main and with upcoming, with the CERN too. We talked about material testing firms available as needed. There's only so many that are certified within the area and so far, we have had no issues with getting those under contract to do the work necessary. And we talked earlier about the staff augmentation under evaluation. Once we get those finalized, we can start bringing in folks that'll allow us to really execute the whole of the program as opposed to executing the projects as we currently These are expenditures to date. You can, you know, you've seen some of these numbers in the past and you can see at the bottom, you know, the $510 million that is remaining. Just a visual way of seeing the same thing in the drawdown. And again, that drawdown, depending on how we move forward in the next few months, could happen a little bit quicker, but I've, you know, making certain assumptions, you're still looking at seven to 10 years until the penny could be depleted. Anticipated cost reductions, we put some of this out earlier, but if you compare the staffing costs from the previous PDT to what we're looking at with the, with our staff itself, you know, we're looking at about $2.8 plus or minus million annually on those personnel costs. Now, I'm not going to lie, you know, we need to do a deeper dive as we move forward with projects and how much savings we could see at the project side, but, you know, an initial pass at personnel costs is around $2.8 million. Lot of this, lot of the numbers here you look at too is as we get the decision on moving forward in any project D scopes, we could also see greater savings. We talk again about the holding, hopefully, a final work session so we can move this program forward in the right way. Looking at getting a decision for either February or March, where the staff can sit up in front of you, hopefully in an environment like this, present what we think is the right way to move based on dollars available, certain scopes, and then get a final decision that we can execute. Back in '14, evaluation criteria and rankings of all projects were approved by this body. Our main focus is first and foremost, safety. What can we do to the projects to improve safety based on crash data primarily and then if you look at capacity, which can have a number of factors that affect other subfactors such as economic development or just crew mobility or even capacity of a road. So, those are some of the things we're focusing on. And last but not least, you know, one of our favorite things are, you know, construction projects that are over-referendum and not started, listed before you. In your packet after this slide, you'll see an amended basically summary of all the projects and, you know, what we spent to date, what the estimates are for those and it's different than one you might have seen before because what we did is built back in areas that were not approved by this body. So, you know, off the top of my head, if you look at, let's just say Atlas Road, you know, I think the estimate's around $45 million, but there were some things suggested that would bring it down and we'd be able to balance, you know, the $1.037 million of project money, but, you know, to be intellectually honest and present you accurate, accurately, we built those things, again, not improved back into this. So, if you look at to the bottom, you'll see a deficit of nearly $79 million. That's the gap we need to close moving forward. What can we do and not, you know, go under? So, those are decisions will be presented, you know, in the future as we make our staff recommendations and with that, I conclude this brief presentation and I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Maggie, right now?
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Listen to me admire on page 1-20 of our book, the presentation of our anticipated cost reduction.
Yes, sir.
The, I want to do a report line, estimated program development, any funding. When we're saying that that's the estimated funding, that $5.1 million above the figure we're looking at is staff augmentation, the county staff, staff augmentation. Am I correct that $5.1 was their total contract, just not just the staffing part of the contract?
That was the staffing cost that we could glean from even projects as well as program management to come up with that $5.1 million.
So, that didn't cover any of their operating or any of that stuff?
No, sir. We're focusing on personnel costs with these numbers.
You're pretty positive about that.
Certain as a liberal arts major can be, but yeah, based, we, looking at cost analysis of personnel and we have experience with, that's about as close as I, we can personally get without getting a real expert in there. So, yes, sir.
What else? Ms. McRide, then, Ms.?
Just clarification on dirt roads, which I have very few in my district, but I just want clarification. In the beginning, you received consent from the community based on the ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And now, you're going back to get additional consent and that may not be some legal issues if you've already received the consent and then it comes back opposite of what you initially received?
The 21 we're talking about currently were prioritized and, you know, some of them were very high, but when we looked at, when the PDT and meeting Dennis before that looked at, there were certain issues that would take a while to work through and they were skipped over. So, now we're at a point where we can come back. So, yes, some of them were approved consent, but they had other issues like a massive utility or some kind of permitting or maybe there was a key person that denied consent because they're at the end of the road and without that person, they couldn't do the rest of it. So, there's a variety of issues that made these roads get skipped over. So, five years later, you know, this body had talked about it, going back and reevaluating and asking the question again because things can change and we want to make sure with these remaining roads and the remaining money, we have $20 million of dirt road left, actually, no, a little less than that, $12 million in dirt road funding, we can address these high priority roads that had to be skipped over with the previous management.
So, we're actually talking as the high priority?
Yes, ma'am.
And that if there is initial consent with the, pursuant to the ordinance, then there is some major problems with that, that's why you're going back?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly why. It's kind of like if it's too hard to address now and we need to get things moving, they went to the next road with the intent of circling back and readdressing some of these roads that, you know, had some issue.
With the second part of my question is the anticipated cost reduction or administrative costs. When we're doing a comparative analysis, are, is it actually comparing just apples or apples to apples? Because in the beginning, there was design and all other costs, which could have been more than what we're doing now, so I want to know, is there a good comparison? Are we comparing apples to apples or what and doing an anticipated reduction? I don't want it to look sway one way or the other.
Sure. It's very, very difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison because we're switching from a complete contractor managed model to essentially a complete county managed model. Now, design work in the past either went out to one of the five OETs or there were some sub, as we all know, some subcontract design work to firms within the PDT to do other design work. So, in that sense, any design work that the county staff may be able to do on some of the smaller projects is really, you know, it's really not a comparative thing. So, again, it's very difficult.
That's why I'm concerned. I'm glad to see the reduction that we anticipated, but I want to make sure that there, that this is a fair comparison in terms of the reduction. Because I don't want it, I don't want it to be misleading that we're going to say this amount of money because it came in-house when actually, we may not and it's because of the type of work that was done and that's my question. Is it a fair comparison?
So, it's as fair as we could calculate and what we tried to focus on is actually the billets, the jobs within, you know, the PDT from program manager, assistant program manager, you know, construction engineer and drew to a direct comparison to their equivalent county staff personnel. So, in that sense, yeah, we did an apples-to-apples comparison and came up with essentially that, the number you see before you.
Because I don't want to later go back and we overspend, there's so much and then we say we're losing money or we paid more, so that's why caution us to make sure that it is.
It's a challenge, it really is to really try to get an accurate number, so.
Thank you.
It's something that we're going to continue to evaluate as we move forward because I think it's the right, everyone needs to know this body, the staff, you know, the residents of Richland County deserve to know exactly what, you know, the real costs are and that's something, you know, it's a challenge.
Thank you.
Ms. Dickerson?
Yes, thank you so very much, Mr. Niermeier.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time I just saw the projects over referendum. Um, this is the first time I just saw the projects over referendum amounts that showing me how the overage is. And I'm looking on page one twenty-two, one slash twenty-two. This is very informative to me. I know it sounds really crazy, but I never saw it laid out this way. I mean, I've seen it in all this little font, that's two, size two, but now I can see it in size maybe fourteen, and it makes a very big difference. Because now you compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges, and I can see it where if the referendum amount was eighteen and we're looking at it, it was, the current cost is thirty-nine, that makes a lot of sense. I can see why you all did it. My next question is, um, how much by bringing this in-house and what we were paying the PDT, how much money will we be saving bringing this in-house? And where, where you are putting those dollars amounts since we're bringing it in-house and we're not paying the PDT team? I'd like to know about how much we're, I mean, who can, we could put that money to a dirt road maybe?
So this, it's a good question, ma'am, and it's, as I, as I said to Ms. McBride, it's a real challenge to come up with a real percentage. I mean, you can look at, at the big picture and say, well, they charge this percentage for this type of service and that percentage. And you could, you know, grossly say, oh, we're gonna save eleven percent across the board. But that's more of a gross percentage. If you take a look at the staffing costs and deduct that, I think back of the napkin math per project looks somewhere between, depending on the type of project, and I hate that you can say this, but, you know, maybe three and a half to six percent. But, but the biggest challenge or the biggest savings we could see moving forward will be any type of scope changes or realignments we may be doing. So, uh, like I said, Ms. McBride, this is a real work in progress trying to accurately determine by project how much we anticipate saving on this. And I don't like giving you that answer, but I'm not gonna lie to you either. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what we.
Yeah, I'm looking at staffing costs and all this, and it looks like, I mean, how are we gonna do? You will bring in additional staff that we had to hire to reap, to fill the shoes of the people that we let go. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, ma'am, that, and then.
So these costs that I'm looking at now, they're going to be apply, applicable to, to the new staffing that we're having to hire to manage these projects?
Yes, ma'am, and that, that savings is an annual number, so, you know, depending on how many year you could be saving, that two point eight million dollars annually that can go back in to other, you know, to projects. And again, I'm, it's, it's a, it's a great, grave concern of mine is making sure to accurately track this and determine what kind of real savings we can see. And, um, you know, any assistance, expertise is, we welcome, and we'll be having that discussion with, uh, Dr. Thompson and Mr. Brown on how to better track that in the future.
Give me a better, if you give me a better cost, let me know whether we over or under.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether it's to our advantage to do that. The other thing is that you were saying these projects over the referendum, they were, the projects that you have listed here on, on one slash twenty-two, you said these projects were not approved by council, so is that the reason why you all, um, you have it on the construction not started with?
No, ma'am, um, certain ones were approved by council like Blythewood Road Widening, but we, you know, the, the guidance was given that we were not gonna move forward with anything until we address, you know, the issues at hand in totality. So, you know, with Blythewood Road Widening, for example, you know, we were in a process of finalizing right away, you know, design's complete. However, it's over referendum. So are we gonna move forward some, or are we gonna evaluate the program and the money we have available and decide once and for all, yeah, we're gonna go ahead with this, or we're not gonna go ahead with this, or we want to revise the scope of Broad River Road Widening to get it down from an enormous amount of money to something that's either manageable or acceptable under the referendum amount, or whatever decision's made to, hey, we, we have to do this anyway, so we're gonna pay up for it. But I would, I would suggest that, you know, cost estimate is just that, it's an estimate based on the current scope. As we saw with Green Phase Two, you know, the estimate was nearly twenty-three million dollars and the bids came in somewhere just north of sixteen million dollars. So that's a good thing. So that cost estimate could come in under, and those are, those are good things.
Well, now, I say that because I, for some reason, this subject right here is a very touching subject. It's touching to every, I don't know about the rest of you, but this touches H to me, and you can put H in the way you wanna fix it. But when I look at some of the projects listed here that affects probably me and a lot of us, and I look at them compared to a lot of them, and these seem to be the ones that's the problems, and the other ones seem to be, oh, you know, it's, they're all good and glorified. And I guess when, um, we have these workshops and these committees and we get these reports, I mean, no, I don't go to no committee meeting, but I expect when it comes to me that, um, I can't go to every committee meeting. And so when I get the information, and like I said, if it's in a font seven, I can't read it nohow. But, um, I do thank you all for trying to make these fonts a little bit better, so it's much more better for the senior citizen that I am. But I do have some concerns, and I would probably will have some concerns about that, and I will be following these projects over the referendum costs. I'm gonna be following them real close. I may not have taken in some of the dirt roads, because these dirt roads, I think, was a major, was a major, um, focus when this penny was passed. People worked on, they were, you know, people weren't thinking about a Clemson road, but a lot of those people that was out there hustling to pass this penny, they were looking at dirt roads. And most of those dirt roads, in my opinion, from what I've seen, have not really been addressed to the, to the level where I wanna understand it. When I can take it back to my constituents and say, you know, well, Blue Street was much more important. Blue Street was much more important than your, than your dirt road. And I need to be able to tell them that and look them in the eye and try to explain why. So if I can say it came in over the referendum, we gotta go back and vote on it and have three readings in a public hearing. I wanna be able to have that so I can articulate that to my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, um, Teresa Myers and Walker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tare. So my question is about the Three Rivers Greenway, and I believe we were excited about it over the summer being almost done, and then we were gonna get it open in the fall, um, and now we're looking at, um, into this month. So I'm just wondering, could you be, um, could you share with us what has been, I mean, is there a holdup? Is there some piece that needs to be done with the city? Is there anything we can do to facilitate that? Is it a safety thing? Just, could you let us know why?
Sure.
We delayed it out.
So the, the part that doesn't involve anything to do with the railway is complete. We've, in discussions with the city, they wouldn't let take this over as, as much as we want to give it to them. So we can get that off our books, not be liable for any, anything that happens there, and they're willing. So once the language to amend the intergovernment agreement is complete, which we've been pushing for, for a few weeks now, can be sent to the city, they agree to assume it, and with our promise that, I'm setting a, set up a meeting for next week or the, the following week with the current designer to design a pedestrian crossing for the two sections to connect Boyd Island. Get that under design, which should cost less than having to deal with the railroad, and then go ahead and get that under construction and completed. You know, let's, let's say, within the next year, and that can really complete those, those key pieces of Three Rivers Greenway.
Okay, great. Because from what I understand, I think people are kind of finding their way out there anyway.
They always have been.
Yeah. Yeah.
They always have been.
So. Uh, yeah, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Meyer, then, Walker.
Just a couple of questions. Going back to your, I guess your third slide of the pie chart.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have the administrative costs listed out at thirty-two point one?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I correct that that's all wrong now?
That's a good question, because I'm not sure how that's interpreted. In the referendum, it says administrative costs as well as debt financing. And I think there's a lot of questions on whether that the cost of that debt financing in particular is put on the projects or it comes out of that pot. And I hate to throw, as Ms. Hamm, to maybe comment on that a little bit more, but I know she may be able to shed some light on that piece.
Yeah, some, uh, a lot of the costs, the admin costs have been allocated to projects also. So it's kind of a question of if it's moved to the project, then what about the thirty-two million that's part of admin? When we're having to allocate, we tether all the costs to the actual projects. So technically, the way the BDT set up their cost structure, it basically took the five years and divided it to thirty-two million and then five minutes for the project. For their contracts, so they basically were depending on using all of it in the five years.
Is, is, is it all gone? I mean, did we do that? That, that's what I would have thought, but.
Well, the first few years, it was all allocated to administration. The last couple of years, we had to actually tether it to the projects, so the majority of the projects.
So what would you say is left of the administrative fee?
Probably ten to twenty.
So half, you think?
Yeah, a little less than half.
Is there, can we get that number as a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then as a follow-on to Ms. Dickerson's question about sort of where we are with overall projects. So we look at sort of your, um, chart that, well, your page with the seventeen point font, as Ms. Dickerson said, with projects over referendum where construction is not started. These, these items speak uniquely to essentially the urban projects that are over the referendum. But if we were to look at, as Ms. Dickerson correctly said, the dirt road paving project, it is well over the referendum, and we're not, we're not talking about that. I go back to what Mr. Jackson said, that at some point, we have got to start some type of PR campaign to let people know where these projects are. Because what we have is what will look like to people, and I'm not suggesting this is my opinion, I'm suggesting what it'll look like if we keep doing it the way we're doing it, a uniquely urban penny and a slightly rural penny. And that wasn't the way it was sold. So we need to, when we're doing these charts and these analyses, it does need to reflect all projects. And as Ms. McBride said earlier as well, when we're going back and talking to people, we kind of need to wrap in, you know, what happened. Because if in the beginning, she's, she hit it right on the head, they were promised that their road was gonna be paved, but we skipped over it because it was too hard or too this or too that, and then we went somewhere else, but now we don't have any money. That, I mean, those things are important pieces of this. So when we're at the work session, I would ask that we look at sort of a comprehensive, um, plan that addresses, A, do we have real administrative money left? B, what is the real cost of the projects that we know we are aiming to complete? And what percentage of those projects can be completed with the money that's left? Because we don't have any extra money from anywhere. And C, if that's the case, what do we need to be telling the public? So that they are brought into the process. And maybe we need to be having some meetings with them. Maybe we need to go back and say, here's where we are. This is the money we've got, and this is what it can do, this is what it can't do. So that we, we could stop the, the bleeding where we're consistently painted as liars and crooks. And we're telling people the truth of what we know as we know it. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just clarify one point, though. The dirt road program was allocated like forty-five million dollars in the beginning. So, you know, the intent is, a prioritization was done based on the county's ordinance. How was selected, went through consent denial, and was there five hundred and sixty roads, I believe, and that were necked down in the packages? So the intent is to spend all forty-five million dollars on dirt roads, as many as we can get, and as.
That's gonna get you about twenty roads. Maybe, maybe forty.
Sure, sure, yeah.
So there's five hundred.
So we've done ten point one two miles, which doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, you've heard me say before, a lot of these dirt roads are six, eight hundred feet long, too.
No, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Neamaya. I'm just saying if they're five hundred sixty, and we know that at the end of the money, we will have completed fifty. It, it's, it's, it's basically saying the same thing as we're saying on the Atlas Road project. We know that we can't do all of this. We are telling people that. But the, the, the five hundred people, well, five hundred times however many houses there are on those roads, who live on those roads, who have no visibility of the fact that those roads aren't going to be paved, they're just, they're sitting ducks, just like the folks on Atlas Road and on Screaming Eagle and all those other people who are asking us what's going to happen because we're short on the budget. So we have to give them answers too, is all I'm saying. And, you know, I, I don't envy you your job, but I, I do know that we need to start getting ahead of some of this stuff and providing information to people.
And I would say hopefully this next reevaluation of these twenty-one or reconnecting, reaching out to the folks on these twenty-one year one-two dirt roads will be a, a good start for that. Soon as they are getting communication, we can capitalize on that communication and get these, these roads moving forward.
Of, of the ones that are gonna be left, we know that there'll be some five hundred and ten or so that just aren't gonna get touched. Can we develop a plan to communicate to those people? So that they know, because, I mean, we know that, it's, it's a, it's a fact, because the, the money is, is, it's just as much a fact as we can't spend forty-five million dollars on Atlas Road. We just know it. So we, we kind of need a plan to communicate that to those people, because there are a ton of people sitting out there thinking that we're just delaying in the work, when the truth is, we don't have the money for the work. And, and they need to, they have the right to know that.
I would say anything's possible, and I think, again, the first step is we can do what we have at hand, but determine some kind of way to communicate better with the rest of the folks out there. I mean, as you can imagine, it's no small undertaking, so, but we've talked about this from the beginning, communication needs to be better. I agree.
Thank you.
I have, um.
Follow-up question to her. Go ahead, but I can.
I have, I have Walker, uh, Newton in Livingston and, and Dickerson.
Yeah, I just wanna follow up to the conversation that Ms. Meyer brought up and what I've been trying to address or, you know, bring to the forefront is that, we need to be out there saying the same message. See, when I go to my community, and what has happened is we had a previous company that would go out and tell our commu- uh, constituents on one thing. Then we come out and we say another thing. And then when they see, read it in the newspaper, now we are a bunch of crooks, lies, and thieves, because I said one thing to them, Ms. Meyer said one thing to them, and we are not singing off the same sheet of music. And because we are not singing off the same sheet of music, we are taking a crazy message out there, and everybody think, well, there is some telling a lie, because that's not what Mr. Neamaya told them. So we need to, in my opinion, going forward, I would hope we can design some kind of a package that resonates that we are singing off the same sheet of music, we tell them how much money we got, what we can do and what we can't do, and have them have their input. We, we need to have them tell us, get them engaged, because we just, we are just a bunch of crooks, thieves, and liars right at this particular point in time. And so it's hard for me to get over that when I'm trying to address the, you know, my constituents, and I'm sure you're having the same problem. Because they're getting mixed messages.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, I'm preaching today.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So I'm, I'm gonna readdress a point Ms. Meyer's brought up, the administrative cost bucket, and not at all challenging Mrs. Hamm's position from the seat in which she, she sits. But I think my question is more directed to legal. Mr. Brown, I'll yield to you as to which member of your team have answered this question. But in my opinion, and in the opinion of outside entities, and in the opinion of, I think, truthfully, the Supreme Court of South Carolina, the administrative cost bucket has probably been filled at this point. And the proposal put forward here, herein, even though it represents a two point eight million dollar annual cost savings, which I appreciate, in your most aggressive drawn-out scenario of seven years remaining in the life of the program, you represent another fifteen point six one two million dollars in internal administrative funding. What, what's the point of the referendum limits if we just fly by them and wave as we pass? Legal question, what, what do we do? If, if we truly have expended the thirty-two point one, which I think, she very clearly articulated, thirty-two point one divided by five is what the PDT's management fee was. I don't know how you qualify a management fee, anything other than administrative costs. And we hadn't even gotten to debt service, which is included in the administrative bucket, and this ban that we continue to roll for absolutely no apparent reason, because over the seven years potentially, in the most aggressive drawn-out schedule remaining of this program, you're talking about eighty-four million dollars a year, which the, the, the program could internally fund on a cash flow basis. I wanna know what the legal answer is to when we, when we blow past this administrative cost bucket that was set as a parameter, as guardrails within this program by referendum, by the voters. What's the answer? Are we again exposing ourselves to a legal disaster? That's my question.
So I heard you say legal a couple of times.
Yep.
So I don't have any legal people on my staff.
Well, would the county attorney be willing to address? Well, would the county attorney be willing to address?
Well, he's sitting up here.
Maybe I should say... Mr. County Attorney, will you please address my question?
That's what I'm saying. You should get the attorney.
Mr. Walker, I don't know the immediate answer to your question regarding what we do if we determine that administrative costs have been exhausted at this point, as outlined by the referendum. I'm not sure what remedy is at this point. So that's something that I'll have to take a look at and try and get you in on that.
I appreciate that answer. And the, the follow-up to that would be, if, if we're going to completely ignore the guardrails of the administrative buckets, who's to say that Mr. Ando shouldn't come back to us and, and blow the guardrails off of the comment portion of the referendum? And who's to say that we shouldn't just start moving dollars around at will within this program? Because if the guardrails are ignored in one bucket, they're not applicable to any of the buckets. And that's how I view this. And then again, I just want to point out the absolute unnecessary ban that we continue to roll, which adds to the administrative costs, which again pointing back to the seven-year most aggressive drawdown opportunity of your program with five hundred and ten million dollars remaining. That represents a seventy-three million dollar per year spend. What's the ban for? How much do you anticipate drawing down on the ban in the next seven years?
Honestly, it depends on the decisions made in the next three months, whether we can move with these larger widening projects or not. You're looking at that eighty-four million now, you could initially anticipate more, you know, twenty percent more for personnel other costs. So you could be pushing a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty million a year with these larger projects sent away.
Twenty percent on eighty.
But we also need that seed money in order to get started in a lot of these things, too. And if we pay back completely, I think Ms. Ham could back me up on this, we may not have the cash to get a lot of these things started again, which you, everyone understands here, so.
I get it.
But that's fine. But, you know, that's a decision to be made.
Understood. But what, what I would suggest to, to this council, as the governing body, is don't let the projects drive spending. Let the availability of cash drive projects. And that's what we've been screaming. So with that, I yield that. Thank you.
Ms. Newton, I, I should want a quick follow-up. You okay?
No, no, please, mine, mine are totally separate. I'm happy to use... Okay, so just, Mr. Walker hit exactly on what I was asking you, Ms. Ham. So I would ask Ms. Ham, if you would be sure to communicate with Mr. Smith as they're, as you both are giving us the same answer, so that answer can be harmonized. Because the core of what we can do is going to be driven by, is there any administrative money left? And if there isn't, we're going to have to go somewhere and get some permission to do something before we keep rolling along. Thank you.
Ms. Newton, Livingston and Jackson?
So before I, I ask my, my other questions, just a few things in harmony with what was being said before and a few questions. So also, when we're looking at the administrative budget, one of the, the questions that has been asked is what are the cost savings? And that's a perfectly valid question that we absolutely have to must answer and I'd like to see the answer. In terms of that apples-to-apples, or in this case, apples-to-cumquats comparison, one of the challenges that also has to be acknowledged as we look at the administrative fee is the PDT's fee was not solely the nearly six million dollar stated administrative fee. There is the administrative fee, and there is kind of a cost-plus structure on certain things, where they got extra money on top of work. That also has to be considered, that we have to rationalize in terms of where we're looking at things. But also, then to echo, on a separate note, what Ms. Dickerson said, as we look at moving forward for this council, I mean, one of the things that I've always wanted to see, and where I think we absolutely have to go with the penny, is this is what we said we were going to do, this is what we spent, this is what is left, and this is how we want to move forward. And so as, whether it's in our work session or separate from our work session, one of the things that I would love for us to pay attention to, that can seem trivial, but is vitally important, is how are we going to be doing our regular and ongoing reporting to council and to the public about where we are? And I think there, there needs to be a tremendous bias on making sure that it's clear, simple, and straightforward. I know in my district, in my community meetings, you know, sometimes people say, can you just show me a spreadsheet? And this kind of list, and this says, this is, this is how much there was. So I, I want to make sure that we prioritize the reporting and communications, because it's, it's important that we really be crystal clear on how we do that. So my, some of my specific questions, just for my information as we look at this. So when you look at page one-twenty-two, which has the projects over the referendum with projects not starting, I'm just going to take one project as an example, and this may apply to others, because I am a little confused here. So if you look at the Lower Richland Boulevard project, for example, on page one-twenty-two, it says that the estimate of it being over referendum is point-six million. Well, I can process that. I think I understand what point-six million is. But then, when I look on page one-twenty-three, and on that first section, there's the Lower Richland Boulevard widening, which says the referendum is at six million, the current estimate is at eight point seven-three million, your variance is two point-six million. Again, I may be missing something, but two point-six million and point-six million are different. And so my question, using this as an example, is, am I reading this wrong? And they're both true? Or are these in fact saying different, I, different information? And if they are saying different information, then, then which is actually correct?
I think you came, what you're seeing here is, the estimate was not updated on the, the page that you're referencing that shows the two point-six million.
Okay, so then, page one point-two-three, with regards to the Lower Richland project at least, then that is not the, the most up-to-date, I'm saying.
So the last estimate showed a, what, a six hundred thousand dollar overrun, estimate over what the referendum amount is. That is the more accurate information.
And so then, if I'm using Lower Richland as an example, then does that mean that all of these other estimates are correct and only Lower Richland is incorrect? Or am I to think, am I to not trust this page on page one-twenty-three because others might not be up to date?
Ms. Steele has made a... I think Ms. Steele has made a, made a good point where what you're seeing with the point-six is just purely construction costs. This is the total of everything from design, right-of-way acquisition, as well as construction costs. So, you know, this could technically be decomposed into its components. And in the case now, we'd actually include any personnel costs in that. So, again, what you're looking at with the, the one page with a, says eighty-four million at the bottom, that would be, or when you're referencing with the point-six over referendum, one-twenty-two, that is purely construction. So right now, that last construction estimate received for, for Lower Richland Boulevard had, you know, X amount over that, that construction estimate, so six hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
So then, with that answer, if on page one-twenty-two, the point-six million for Lower Richland Boulevard is only construction costs and is not all of the other costs, then does that mean that for the rest of the projects on this page, that these numbers also only refer to construction costs and not overall costs? Again, in essence, I have two, two different sets of data, and I'm just trying to understand which one represents the most comprehensive picture, if either does?
I'll double-check on that, for, I'm pretty sure they're all construction costs, but I want to tell you the truth, though.
On one-twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then, other just simple questions that I had, on page, well, actually, let me go in order. I'm almost done, Mr. Livingston.
No, take your time.
On page one point-one-three, where you have the projects listed as substantially complete, Shop Road is listed, and Green Road is listed. If I heard you correctly, you mentioned that once Shop Road was completed, that there were three point five million dollars of economic development funds that would be given to the penny once the project is complete. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so maybe I just missed that before. Can you tell me two things? What is the source of that funding? Is that written, county economic development, is it state? Where are those funds coming from? And then, secondly, in all of the budget documents that we've seen, is that, has that three point five million dollars already been recognized in the estimates that we're seeing? Or would this be a net addition to the budget?
It's been recognized, because if you look at the shop extension, phase one and two projects, there's a total of like seven point, well, seventy-one point eight million in the referendum. And then if you look at the, the page after the over referendum, that three point four-seven-six million is that economic development provided money.
Okay.
That is an addition to the referendum amount. So essentially coming up with seventy, seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars total.
And then what was the source of those funds?
From our county's economic development, and I, I'm not sure exactly where they got it from.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah, but it's from, it's from, yeah, it's our economic development department.
Okay, thanks. And then my last question is, I think my most straightforward question. On page one-nine, where you have projects under construction, you have the Broad, Broad River neighborhood that NIP, the Candlewood NIP, with estimated completion dates of last year. Do we have updated estimated completion dates? And then, as, as of this point, and I know there have been utility delays and all kinds of unexpected things, is the CERN date still expected to be as listed?
For the fall? Yes, ma'am. Since that's under construction, that's the most accurate. The neighborhood improvements, you know, you're right, they're estimated originally to be that, but they're nearly complete now for the Candlewood and the Broad River. So just, just weather-driven at this point.
Okay, so if it's similar to what we experienced at Rapid Run, they're, they're really just, just about ready to cross the finish line when, when the temperature and the rain...
That's construction for you.
Thank you.
Again, I have Livingston, Jackson and McBride. Mr. Nehemiah, on page one point five, projects ready to, to be advertised? Now, what, what does that mean? I mean, when will they be advertised? They're ready to be advertised, or do we, anything holding, holding up for being advertised? Or why do not advertise?
Yeah, we're, we're holding them up to be advertised. Well, since the direction was given to kind of, anything under construction continues to move under contract, these are packages that are ready to go, that have been developed to be advertised once we get the go-ahead to advertise, once a decision's been made on the totality of the program. So we can release those tomorrow if we want it.
So what you're saying, then, that's, that's until council, that you, you're saying this will require...
That, that's the guidance I'm working under, sir. Yes, sir.
Just want to get clarification on, on, on what, what ready to advertise, and, and what we have to do to move forward with advertising. And you're saying you need an instruction from council?
Yes, sir, I want to, I want to step in, because I gave that guidance based on a council session, where there was specific information given about not spending, continuing to spend money, without us coming forward with a plan as to what we're going to do in total. So that came out of the council meeting, so then I passed that guidance down to staff. And just while I think that when the construction continued, or think that were not already processed, did not recover that guidance. So it would take council to come back and say, this is what we want to do, and then they could advertise. But that's where that came from.
Thank you, that answered the question. And then, one, one point nine, similar to, that's just a Newton question, projects under construction. Now, are those projects on hold till, until you need more information? Are those projects moving forward?
On one point nine, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, those are, those are under construction.
So they're moving forward?
Yes, sir.
You don't need any more council direction to move those forward?
Just, just anything new. That's why we brought back all those projects in December for approval, that were under contract, but not moving dirt.
Good, that's a, to acknowledge that, I appreciate that. And that's all I have for now, then I have Mr. Jackson and Mr. McBride.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important to acknowledge a, a critical factor, sort of what you alluded to, Ms. Myers, and some others did as well. And that is, Mr. Nehemiah, that there was never enough money from the start. There was never enough money to do the projects, even when the referendum was passed. And it was because it was based on a flawed study. The estimates that were done and the projections that were done simply were inaccurate, incorrect, and flawed. And that was some time ago, but since that time, we've been spending a lot of energy and effort, debating and pointing fingers and casting blame and making disparaging remarks, both in the press and in public sessions and private sessions, about who's at fault. And while we're doing that, projects have been put on hold, as the last question Mr. Livingston asked. So of course, we won't be able to spend all the money that we have available to us as long as major projects, projects are not allowed to go forward and to move forward. And until we make the decision, and, and make the hard decision, and make the tough decision to decide what we're going to do with those projects, we'll be at this place, this same place again next year. You made an interesting statement earlier. At the beginning of your comments, you said, when asked the question about dirt roads and why to revisit them, basically by Ms. McBride's point, you said, because things change. How profound that statement is. Things have radically changed since the referendum in two thousand twelve was passed. Estimates have changed, topography has changed, administrative costs have changed. DOR's view of what we've been doing has changed. Economic impact and economic cost of doing business has changed. All of those things have changed. Unfortunately, every one of those things I've mentioned have changed for the negative. What hasn't changed for the positive is our attitude about what we're going to do about the problem. We, we debate, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, Ms. Newton, the report should have been updated. The information should be updated. Absolutely, you're absolutely right. And I hope before we have the next work session, that every document that I've looked at is updated to the day before we have the work session. Because it does no good if the numbers are not correct, because it shows a problem in terms of being able to make sound decisions with inaccurate numbers and incorrect information. I couldn't agree with you more, Ms. Myers. We need to absolutely make sure, and you, Ms. Dickerson, that we engage and involve the public. Absolutely, in every aspect. And when the public speaks, though, I think we need to also then be willing and courageous enough to say, we've heard them, and here's what we're going to do. Rather than deciding on our own agenda what's best for whatever smaller groups that we've been talking to. I, so I hope, Mr. Nehemiah, that at the work session, I'm going to pause to make sure you hear what I'm saying. That's okay. So I hope at the next work session, that we will get the information prior to that work session that will give us a detailed plan, and specifically how to make up the seventy-nine million dollar shortfall. I'm sure Ms. Ham will give us accurate information with regards to, is there any administrative costs? And if there is, then I will accept her answer as accurate and correct, and we'll move forward. I remember the conversation, I think some of you remember the conversation as well, when we shifted from taking administrative costs in one pot of funding and moving it to assigning it to projects. I remember that very vividly. So it doesn't seem foreign to me now that there may be the potential of some, simply because of the way the accounting shifted and changed from the way we were applying administrative costs. And so I am still a believer that we have to be courageous and bold enough to stand up and do the right thing as it applies to these projects and make the tough decisions. I don't, I, you're right, I don't have dirt roads on, in the Clemson area either. But I wasn't here when the decision was made by somebody to put dirt roads at the price that it was set at and to fund it at the level. But not only dirt roads are underfunded, I want to say that again, as I end my comments, Mr. Chair, every project on our list, we don't have enough money to complete them all in their entirety. But I remember having a conversation with a council member from Charleston, and I'm sure we'll probably hear that tomorrow, hope someone will ask the question, did they have enough money to finish all the projects that they've sent out to the public? I think the answer is no. And they had to do a second referendum in order to fund them all, rather than beating each other up about not having enough money. I sort of get offended when we make it implied that somehow, because I believe the Atlas Road project, for example, needs to be completed, that somehow I'm advocating for spending thirty million dollars of the referendum. That's not the case at all. I'm advocating for completing projects and roads that we were told were needed and necessary. It's unfortunate, those who told us that and did the studies inaccurately projected what it would cost to do them. But now to assume that I'm all for spending more money than we have and deceiving the public is actually a professional insult. I'm for doing the projects that the referendum approved us to get done and spending the money that the voters approved us to spend to get the projects done. Thank you, sir.
I have McBride, now, now, Ms. Myers.
Mr. Jackson has said enough, and, and what he said is absolutely correct. So I'll just add one or two comments to it. Most of my life, I've dealt with budgets, federal budgets, state budgets, local budgets. A budget is a projection. And a budget is as good as the input you put in to make that projection. The input that was put in obviously was flawed, some of it. And then this is how many, seven, eight years down the road, so definitely it has changed. So that's just common sense, that the budget we have now is not the budget. The cost we have now is not congruent with the budget we had in the beginning. So I think that we need to think about that in terms of not keep saying that we have overspent the budget when the budget was wrong. the budget when the budget was wrong. The other component of the, the issue that I have is that the budget drives the projects. That always bothers me, because usually we develop our projects based on our need. It's just like in the hospital, and, and in insurance now. You go to the hospital, and insurance say, you got a cut, you can, you need ten stitches. They will only pay for three stitches. So they give you the three stitches based on the budget. You go home and bleed to death. We have got to look at the budget priorities, and follow the referendum based on logic. If there needs to be a change, I don't know legally how we can change it, whether we have to go back and do an ordinance review or whatever, but we need to look at those changes, so that we can follow a true budget based on need and based on accurate input. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Mount Nowsky Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my comments are going to go back to what Vice Chair Myers was saying on getting some information on, so, so the public is aware of what's taking place, and projects are being done. And I get questions periodically about what's being done with the penny tax, and then I, then it's followed up with, oh, yeah, well, all those projects are in the city of Columbia. When are we going to get something in the unincorporated area? And I realize I'm going to hear, well, the city's part of Richland County. Yes, they are part of Richland County, but the whole tax situation, I'd like to have figures also given to us prior to this work session, as to what monies are being collected in municipalities, what monies are being collected in the unincorporated areas, and out of all these projects that are being done, what percentage of the projects are done in municipalities versus the unincorporated area? So we can give these people that we represent accurate figures. Thank you.
Ms. Myers?
Just, just two, two questions. On the projects that we have, as you said, Mr. Brown, that are on hold, what, what are we saying to the owners from whom we've procured rights of way, if anything? Because there are businesses along those corridors who have changed their position because of our representation. So have we made any contact with those business owners to give them any visibility of what's going? Because many of them, so I have a, a piece in the northeast where the, on the backside of Chip's Clemson Road project, where, where the business owners have said, that's the hole of my parking lot. So if, so when we're making changes, there, there's some of these on Atlas Road, too, when we're making changes, if, for example, a business has taken our right-of-way money, and maybe sold something, and changed their position in reliance on what we've told them, I, I think we need to be clear on, on where we are, and where we put folks in the county who've relied on our representations, too, in, you know, kind of in harmony with what Ms. McBride is saying, making sure that we don't go back and then dig a deeper hole, because we've already created a, a reliance. And then the last thing I'll say is this, I agree with Ms. McBride and Mr. Jackson, we ought to finish the projects. My conundrum is, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. And so the money is going to drive the answer to what we can do. And that's why, for me, it starts with, do we have administrative fees left? How much money do we have per project? What can we get for that amount of money? What does it cost to pay per mile? And how many miles can we get out of what's left? Because it seems to me, the, the, this is different from annual tax allocations. Once we hit that hard barrier, we can't go any further unless we go back to get another referendum. And in the current state of things, we will never pass another penny. Which is why it's critical that we go back and analyze where we are, and be able to give people cogent information that they can rely on. And when I say something, it's harmonious with what Mr. Livingston is saying, with what Mr. Walker is saying, with what Mr. Malinowski and Mr. Jackson are saying, so that we, we have all sat in the same room, come to the consensus, that may well be that we don't all agree with it, but the facts ought to be the same. And right now, we just don't have the facts that are driving what we're saying to constituents, and therefore, you know, we're getting pillory for these misrepresentations. But we really do need a solid handle on these facts.
Then I, then I have Livingston. There are several things that we're talking about now, that I think are really important, but I think we're going to have to find a funding source for them, because several of these things are things that DORs that we cannot do with the transportation penny. You know, for example, I'm hearing a whole lot about public involvement. I hear, I'm hearing a whole lot about public information and so forth. Remember, that's something we cannot do with the penny. You know, the, the discussion about reporting, I mean, it'd be nice to make sure we continue to get, you know, nice monthly reporting of, of like we've gotten in the past, you know. The question about whether we do a website or not. We need to figure out a way to do those kind of things. We're going to address a lot of concerns that being mentioned right here, right now, in terms, and identify funding sources of that, if, if we're going to do, get it done. Your other comments?
I guess, Mr. Livingston, I guess that's what I was trying to say earlier some time ago.
Some time.
Is that for months, is that we do not have the right sources in-house to publicly, you know, for, to, for us to always be ahead of everything, you know? We always on defense. You know, I'm looking for an offensive, an offensive way where we can be out there and driving, rather than we always got to be defending what somebody else or something else has been done. And when we try to procure those, that type of person, or those type of staffing, you know, we got riled in the paper about we do. But the fact of the matter, I'm like Mr. Mr. Jackson said, really, we have to be bold and courageous, and, and stand up and do what is, what is necessary to get done, regardless of what it is, as long as we've been letting them be defending, not me always being defending something. So I mean, I may not be as, you know, as articulate as other people, but I'm saying what I mean is like, we get a sheet of paper, we had a hundred dollars, we spent fifty dollars, and we spent those fifty dollars on these projects, and this is how much more we, this is the balance of the hundred dollars we got left. Simplify things, because the, we might understand it, but you know, the public wants something very simplified, but it has to be very plain to them, so they can understand it. And, um, because I'm simplified.
Thank you very much. I'm so proud of us, because we're kind of almost on schedule here. I think our break is at, at ten-thirty, so we have about five more minutes left. Mr. Mount Nowsky?
Real quickly, Mr. Newmeyer, the neighborhood master plans, while these projects were listed as part of the referendum, there were, I thought there were monies set aside at one point in time for the master plans. Are there any funds possibly in there that we can get to put in toward defraying costs of these projects? You don't have to answer, I just throw it out as maybe something we could do, I don't know.
I think, I think as we dig into this and get a little more certain, there'll be monies that we'll see within, you know, you're going to remember, there's three programs, there's, you know, Transportation Improvement, there's Comet, and then there's, you know, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Sidewalks. Within that first program of improvements, that we might be able to move around, if that's a decision to be made. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll talk about the state of the county facilities plan. Mr. Pruitt.
I'm going to try to give you a brief briefing on the facilities plan. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of council, administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For those that may not know me, my name is Randy Pruitt. I'm the Director of Operational Services. I have been charged by ordinance for the use, operation, security, and occupancy and safety of all, the entire Richland County plan. For those that may not be familiar with my department, in two thousand nine, we, we began to exist. They pulled me out of a section of Public Works, turned us into Support Services. We had fleet, and we had central services and facilities and grounds. Two thousand sixteen, they did a reorganization. They took fleet management and put it under risk management, and left the rest of it in We're going to be discussing the facilities that we've added to the county since two thousand and nine. There's a total of twenty-one. As you can see, this is in your packet, but the ones that are listed as vacant are the ones that are becoming more and more relevant for us to have to react to. This is basically because of vandalism. Everybody wanting to get in our buildings, when it's cold, when it's hot, they want to paint our buildings. They basically want to just destroy things. So we have to put a lot of money in these to try to keep them secure. And I could entertain any questions on any facility, either now or at the end of the brief, so.
Can you pull the mic for you just a little bit?
Oh, yes, sir.
Are we supposed to be following you in the book card?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Are we following you in our book, or?
You, either way you want to do it.
I don't know the page.
Oh, okay. Let me get you there. You going to follow me by the slides, ma'am?
I can't see the slides. I might be able to see the book.
Well, I mean, yeah, you want to follow me by the slides in the book?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that that slide that you're looking at in our book is two twenty-four?
Yeah. Okay. I have it, thank you.
Yes, two twenty-four.
Thank you.
On this particular slide, it doesn't indicate the two magistrate offices that we are currently constructing, the Upper Township and the Hopkins. Once we get those done, we'll go from twenty-one new facilities to twenty-three new facilities. I'll give you a quick review of the additions. Basically, what this is, is with the additions that we've added to the county, we now have ninety-four structures, four hundred and sixty-four acres of land, and two point six million square feet of buildings. If you, we have an annual maintenance budget of seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus a year. You compare that to the Boeing facility, which we drove past on our way down here, they have one point two million square feet of plant structure, and they have an annual budget for maintenance at one point one hundred and seventeen thousand. The majority of our structures are brick and mortar. The reason I wanted to bring this up is just to give you an idea of what kind of maintenance is typically involved in these. The brick and mortar have a normal to high maintenance requirement, depending on their age. The stick built have the same, it's a normal to high, depending on their age. We have one ten-cell membrane building, that's Region Seven on Highway Church Road, for the Sheriff's Department. These have a low to high. There's no medium. We have metal facilities, and these are going to go from normal to replacement. The impact that these additions, and we're still just discussing the twenty-one, that they've had on the county, on, on the Department of Operational Services and the county as a whole, of course, you know, there's a physical impact, because now we've got to pay for the lights, the infrastructure, the stormwater, wastewater, so on and so forth. And then we have to also maintain them. We have to keep them in a safe order. There's codes and requirements that say, okay, we still have to maintain fire suppression, emergency access, so on and so forth. We also have the impact of the staffing. Staffing is, we, we haven't received any staffing. We've received buildings, but nobody to help us fix them. We'll get into that in just a minute. And also, it infects the county's capital improvement program, because now we've inherited a lot more structures, and things that are, are considered capital improvements, we still have to try to fix them. The main issue facing this department now is staffing and funding, of course. Okay? We, we are going to try to be requesting, whether it be a few at a time, every, every budget year, or all of them. That'd be for this body to decide. But we have come to the, the calculations that we need additional twenty-one members in this department, in order to adequately meet the needs of the county. This is where we currently are. We have seventy-six positions in this department. This is where we want to be. We add the twenty-one, and of course, it gives us ninety-seven. As you can see, that's identified by the green, is where these positions, these twenty-one positions, will be going within the department. They're scattered all the way throughout. We've got carpenters, we've got maintenance, we've got grounds, we've got building custodians, we've got central services. We have taken them and put them all throughout the department, to better meet the needs of the, of the county. This is going to give you the initial impact of getting those twenty-one positions. If we went for all of them at the same time, it'd be one point one million plus. And then the recurring cost would be eight hundred and ten thousand a year. We did receive an increase in our budget since two thousand and nine. Actually, I think it was in two thousand seventeen.
It's twenty eighteen, Mike.
Okay? We got four hundred and fifty-two thousand, and this is for utilities, because we picked up a lot of different utilities that had to be maintained. City of Columbia's tap fees went up, City of Columbia's stormwater fees went up, SC and G and Dominion's fees went up. Everybody's fees decided to go up, but my budget didn't, you know? So, and as these, as these facilities age, and we have inflation, my maintenance goes up. You know, I can't maintain a flat budget. It's difficult. A lot of times, what you're going to find is, the analogy I use, based on my budget, is I can't fix it, I can only put a Band-Aid on it. Okay? And when I put a Band-Aid on it, what happens then is I have to come back and do it again at twice the cost.
That's true.
This gives you an idea of my budget. If you look at the very top one, are you, you still, you with me?
I'm with you.
If you look at the very top one, at five point five nine, is the national average of a budget per square foot for maintenance. Richland County currently funds this department at two point four nine. We're way under budget, way underfunded. We have a lot of what we consider to be unanticipated repairs. Unanticipated repair is basically due to the aging of the infrastructure. I can't anticipate that this water line's going to bust. I can't anticipate that this ceiling's going to fall out. Right? So as you can see here, starting in fiscal year seventeen, I had a hundred and nine thousand worth of unanticipated. In eighteen, I went to a hundred and thirty. In nineteen, I went to two hundred and thirty-four. And right now, to date, I'm already at one thirty-four. So we're going to bypass that.
Excuse me, you, you said you'd ask, answer the question that, during the presentation. Chair, Mr. Newmeyer has a question.
Very quick question. I understand that, that these are unanticipated, and hence you can't know that, that they're coming, but when these are occurring, how are you currently funding these expenses?
I'm taking them out of my operational man budget, instead of my maintenance budget.
Okay, but there's not like, there's not like a separate budget line that you have where expenses?
We used to.
Okay.
We, we had, we had what we considered to be a catastrophe fund, or a catastrophe line item. But so far, that's been failed to be filled for the last four or five years.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
One question at the end? Are we going to have questions at the end, or I just?
Go ahead.
I, I mean, I could wait, but since you're, you know, you've been talking about kind of Band-Aid fixes, I'd love if you could give an example of one?
Okay, sure. I have a building now on Greg Street, it's called- It's called Probation, Pardon, and Parole. Leaks like a sieve, okay? In order for me to make it stop, it's going to cost me around $300,000. I don't have that. So I took $26,000 out of my operational fund and put it over there to put a Band-Aid on it, all right? To try to slow that water intrusion down so I could then go inside the building and make it a healthy, safe environment for our employees.
That's helpful. Thank you.
This is a reflection of my annual budget for maintenance, okay? Like I said, we get $778,000 a year. In 17, I spent 568,000. In 18, I spent 677,000. This is just normal maintenance. In 19, I spent 777,000. And year to date, I've got 486 already. I anticipate that we will be at 875, so I will be in the negative this year, mainly due to the aging of the facilities. Things break. Capital improvement, just for those that may not know what capital improvement is, capital improvement is considered to be anything that values over $50,000 and remains in the inventory for more than 10 years. A lot of those are samples are roof leaks. You know, 2020 replacement of the roof is needed. We had it approved. We were going to do it in 2016, and the money got taken. That's 2.1 million dollars. Our heating and air units that are, our chillers, our towers, our cooling units, these are all major expenses. These last few that you can see in your butt, in your pamphlet, we have prioritized the replacement of different types of things. 20, this is what we need to replace. Actually, this used to be 19, and it used to be 18. So if it doesn't get funded, it keeps getting pushed back further and further. It doesn't lose its sense of priority. Just got pushed off again. So if it goes to, if 20 goes to 21, 21 goes to 22, and so on and so forth. So we got, you know, we're not in front of our, our needs.
Excuse me, I think you have questions. Put that before we go down.
Can you identify among these improvements, critical needs, which among them would have been remediated or are still planning to be remediated by the plans that we have for some building consolidation with the Renaissance plans?
Uh, well, actually, we would have, we would have had, number one, the administration and the health, all of that. We'd had probation, pardon, and parole. We would have had the administration and health complex roof replacement. We wouldn't have had it, we would have just not had to do it. The DSS, and that would have been?
Fifty percent of that was.
That's correct.
And?
And on this one, Judicial Center, DSS, probably the central services upgrade on the printing because we keep, you know, we're trying to get that, that division up to where we are actually a print shop and not just a glorified office. The administration building, electrical and generator upgrade, anything that has to do with the ministry, 2020, and judicial, pardon and parole, DSS, and any state agencies that we house, they would have been?
So half of both those budgets?
That's correct. And basically, just going through the years, we normally turn in a 10-year projection of, of, of projects that we need on capital improvement. This is just five years, just to give you an idea of how it works. Any other questions?
Randy, what is, what's Pineview Public Safety? Bottom of your last chart there.
The roof replacement, sir?
The one, the one that had?
One for?
Yeah, on the bottom. Hold on, there's a critical facility improvement. Some page 239.
Okay.
Yeah, down there at the bottom right, Pineview Public Safety. What's that?
Safety HVAC replacement.
No, but what is Pineview Public Safety?
Oh, that's a, that's a facility that we, what we have with the sheriff's in it. Sheriff's Department's in that building.
Oh, okay.
That must have been your victim's assistance.
Yes, victims.
Which operation?
Yes, victims assistance.
Oh, okay.
Well, if, well, that's the case. I didn't see one listed on, on Broad River Road. There's still a building that has victim assistance signage up on that, on that building saying victim assistance. Are we still in that building as well?
I don't think so.
Now, it's a county-owned building.
It's not a county-owned?
It's a county-owned.
Okay. That, the sheriff should have moved it, or he should have at least asked us to move it.
Yeah, but the sign is, is, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll check on that.
Go ahead. Mr. Jackson?
Do you have a fund balance? Anybody?
A fund balance?
Fund balance. A reserve fund?
No, I don't. We don't have a reserve fund.
So there's no reserve? Mr. Hayes? But there's no reserve fund balance for?
Well, the main problem is the department, is the general fund itself. The general fund itself does have it, but there, there is no specific one isolated just for this, just like we have for economic development or?
Right.
Sorry, risk management. We don't have anything specifically to reserve facility.
And then the second question, you mentioned that you had some capital improvement earlier that got take, got taken. What do you mean by that?
Well, what I mean by that, sir, is when we were going through the Renaissance, we had, we had money that was approved by this body.
Yes, sir.
They said, okay, we're going to go ahead and go forward with these repairs. And then in order to do the facility acquisitions and all of that, that money was reallocated to them, to the Renaissance.
Yeah?
No, I mean, I mean, you're three questions. Ms. Newton?
So first, thank you so much for laying this information out this way. I thought it was very clear and comprehensive, and I certainly wasn't aware of all of the challenges on our facilities, so thank you for, for sharing this information. I have a few questions, and I'm just going to ask a few and then pause because I actually have a lot of questions as I looked at this. But first, just to clarify, in terms of the answer to the previous question about a line item for unanticipated repairs because those things continue to happen, there's not a current line item, but you said there used to be. Were those funds also then moved to Renaissance, or it just wasn't approved?
No, it just wasn't approved. That line item is still in place.
Okay.
It's just never been refunded. It's a catastrophe fund line item.
Okay. And then this question is, may not actually be for you. I'm just curious as I'm new to this. So obviously, we fund the sheriff's budget, and that's our responsibility to do that. But then do we also bear the sole financial responsibility out of our operating funds for all of the operations and maintenance for those? Or does the sheriff allocate some of their funds for the maintenance of their buildings? Uh, I think I'm?
You got to answer this in response, huh?
The 94, the 94 different facilities that I've identified has encompassed the sheriffs and all of the fire stations, all of the EMS, every, every operations that the county does, we're responsible for and we maintain.
Okay, I'm presuming that there's some legislation that, that requires us to do that? Okay. Just asking, thank you. And then, two more questions. So obviously, what we're going to do with some of those facilities that we own, say for Columbia Mall, that's still in play and that needs to be determined. I guess I'm curious, though, from a timeframe, you have these listed as critical improvements. Even if we right here today said, you know what, let's move into Columbia Mall hypothetically, there, there would still be a timeline on that?
Yes, ma'am.
And so my question to you is, would you say that regardless of what we do with some of those other properties, we still have to do everything on this list? Or if we were going to make some different facilities discussions, are there some items on this list that could then be deferred or handled a different way? Maybe you don't get a new roof, maybe you patch it. Is that, was that question clear?
No, yes, I, I got it, but I don't know exactly how to answer that.
Right, it's not a fair question.
Let me try to, I'll try to explain why. In, in my professional opinion, even if you did say yes, today we've got the money and we're going to do, we're going to move forward, and we're going to go to the Columbia Mall, and everything's going to be moving fast and furious, right? It's going to take us eight years. So I would have to do a reevaluation of the capital improvement projects list to say, okay, in eight years, what do I need to make sure I got done? Because I still have to maintain a safe environment for the employees. So if that means my children needs to be replaced proactively instead of reactively, then I need to go ahead and make that replacement.
Okay. And then my last question, then I'll pause for, for others to ask questions. Well, actually, let me just pause there. I would like us to revisit this eight-year discussion. And make sure that we understand the presum, you know, the assumptions that go towards that. So I don't, I don't want to just leave that, that on the table without saying that that's a number that we would have to come back and revisit. So let me pause there. And then my last question is, certainly, given where you are from a budgetary perspective and given the huge expansion of facilities, I understand why there needs to be additional resources to, to deal with it. My question is, as you evaluated what our facilities' needs are, was there ever an evaluation of outsourcing some of those functions and having some of them in-house? I, I don't know if, because some of our needs are more temporary, some of them are more permanent, the things are growing. Was that ever something that was evaluated, or did you only evaluate what it would take to do these impacts?
No, ma'am, they are evaluated. We, we identify our skill sets.
Okay.
And then we identify the projects that need to be completed.
Okay.
And then we say, okay, that's above our skill set. And then we'd have to farm it out.
Okay.
But if it's within our skill set, then we do it in-house.
So then, from your perspective, if the additional 21 people alone would address all of the problems that you've identified in the facilities?
Well, you know, that's a catch-22 question there, ma'am. The, the estimated 21 new employees would get us closer to the national average.
Okay.
So based on those statistics, yes. The answer to your question would be yes. Based on the caliber of employee that we count within that 21, the answer may be no because, you know, I don't know who the employees are yet. So that's, you know, it's one of those catch-22 things. It's hard to answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Malinowski and McBride.
Same as chair, Randy. When was the coroner's new facility done? Wasn't that long ago, was it?
No, it wasn't that long ago, no, sir. I think it was like in 2016.
Yeah, so why is there now needed a new emergency generator?
Well, because there's none there. And?
So he went and built a new facility without?
Without the generator and on a individual that really actually needed one. It was, it was an oversight on somebody's part. We're not here to point fingers today or throw anybody under the bus, but it's, it's an identified need.
That's where I was going, but okay. Isn't there, and it probably isn't a county building, but isn't there off of Divine Street in Five Points, isn't there that tall probation?
Yeah.
Building there? Is that a county building?
The one on Greg Street is. It's, it's a county-owned facility, yes, sir.
It's on Divine.
Divine Street?
Not on Divine Street.
That's not ours?
That's not ours.
Oh, okay. Can we move into there then? They moved out of there, whoever, if that was a state, they moved out. If this is a state-funded mandated thing, then tell them we want?
We can look, we can definitely look into that.
Because I went by it within the past couple of weeks, and there's a for sale sign out in front of the building. So I'm guessing they moved.
There's nobody there.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that the one in the city?
Yeah, that's the city building now, I think.
That's the city one?
Yeah, the city is.
Okay.
Is there one in the state?
Mr. Malinowski with three?
I know.
I have McBride.
Well, I'm going to reserve mine for that eight-year? Yeah. Projection plan. But, you, Mr. Ford, thank you for the report, and you know my concerns about DSS.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have serious concerns about DSS as the whole council.
Yes.
My question is about Columbia Mall area and those facilities that we recently purchased within the last couple of years. And I don't know whether it's listed, but there is a maintenance cost for those facilities. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And is that listed under the CIP, or is that listed someplace else in the budget?
No, that would, that's going to be, for those particular facilities that were identified by the Renaissance are not in any of the briefing documents I'm giving you today.
Okay. Because, Ms. Myers, following your question, we're spending, projections are really significant regarding how much it's going to cost for some of those buildings, facilities that were supposed to be, or were projected to be moved to Columbia Mall.
Right.
Is that not correct?
That's correct.
In addition to that, we're paying, and I'm not sure how much we're paying just to maintain those facilities, but I do have some concerns about them being empty and the blight that it's causing in some areas at Columbia Mall. And with the blight being caused is also, that's a criminal aspect to the blighted area. So it is important, I'll just make a statement, that we do something with those facilities. We have a dire need to move DSS and some more facilities. And then we have the whole Columbia Mall area that we purchased, and it's sitting there that we're still having to put money into, and there's a need to move the facilities there if we can. So I just wanted to make that.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want necessarily ruffle feathers, but we also have a different facilities that need to be remembered. I know that Columbia Mall is one that's at the forefront of everybody's memory, but we also have five structures that were purchased at the township?
I, well?
That we're supposed to be demoing and redoing the parking lot and all of that. Those particular structures are within the jurisdiction of the City of Columbia. I get letters all the time from their code enforcement officers telling me that I have to come into compliance with their laws. And again, that's an unexpected cost that we have to, we have to do in order to stay in compliance so that we don't have county against city, city against county. So we're trying to work together as a team. Sometimes they're cooperative, and sometimes they're not. But all of the facilities are going to have the same concern you just addressed. One is more important than the other in my eyes. They're all important.
Okay. Well, in my eyes, and in the eyes of many of our constituents and citizens, it is very important for our youth to have our students and our families that are impoverished to have a place that's decent to go to. So that's a high priority for the citizens of Richland County and for me.
Thank you.
I have Tracy O'Meyer to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So looking at the capital improvement project recommended, the 20, I see the 20 and 21, and I don't see any fire improvements or fire station improvements until fiscal year 2022. Is that?
We were constantly working on fire. Their, their money comes from a fire fund. They don't come from the general fund. So we constantly have those already on a list, and they have, as a matter of fact, it's coming, it's getting ready to come in front of this body next month that we're going to, we're replacing three more roofs. So we are constantly working on those, keeping those facilities safe and a nice place to work.
Thank you. So that's one of the first things that I heard about as soon as I came on council was especially the status of the Olympia Fire Station. So I want to make sure that we're, you know, keeping everybody, keeping our firefighters safe so that they can then respond appropriately.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Tracy, repeat my whole card. That's exactly what I was going?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So with regard to the fire issue, the feasibility study that we requested now almost a year ago, is there any visibility as to when that's going to be back and for fire safety within the county? Because we get some places in the county where literally the ISO rating is a 10, and none of these plans are taking into account getting those places, even, even at a five would be better than where they are now. So are we harmonizing what we're calling critical facility improvements and needs with what was now a study that was, I guess we asked for that, yeah, a year ago, maybe March?
Is that the study I just got?
No, we have an inspection that Michael Berg directed, the station of that 18.
Yeah, I've seen the inspection.
Yeah, I just got a copy of that.
I'm talking about the feasibility study that, that we commissioned. I'm talking about the feasibility study that, that we commissioned, we asked for about a year ago because of fire concerns within the county and.
I thought that was gonna be talked about in October.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it either.
I, I thought I had heard, and I've not, I've not seen it at one point, that someone was saying, when we were having conversations with the fire department, that we would get that back in October. Is that not?
So it takes two years now?
No, 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 no. Back, back in October, so I. That was before my time, and so when people said it was coming, I presumed that it was.
We'll just have Mr. Brown to follow up on it.
I thought she had it in her.
About to grab you.
Counselor Myers, I can, I can, I can look into it?
For me, that's a critical area, I mean, we, literally, fifty-five percent of the district I represent is a ten for ISO rating. I've driven it myself. And I've been waiting on this report since.
First I've heard of that.
Really?
Yes, but we will find out who, who was, who was charged with that responsibility and we will follow it through.
Thank you.
I'm gonna follow up, Mr. Chair. I just want us to be aware that our fire department, and I, I agree with you, Ms. Myers, but we get very high ratings, so I don't want it to be reported that we're like at the low level.
Let me clarify what I'm saying. So the fire department is, is different from the areas of the county where they don't have adequate access to a fire station. And where, when you are five miles or more away from the nearest fire station, well, it's ten miles for rural areas, five miles for urban areas, but when you are that far away, your ISO rating in terms of fire safety goes incrementally up. So we have many areas of the county that are so far away from a fire station that the ISO rating is a ten. So I'm not saying that the quality of the station is where they are.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to be misunderstood.
No, the quality of the service is good.
Right, that's what I want. I understand, I just wanted to be, I wanted to clarify that so it would not be misunderstood about the overall fire department services that we get, which are high ratings. But I understand what you're saying. And, but I wanted it to not be misconstrued.
I have Newtons.
Let Ms. Newton go because. My, my questions that I think are, are straightforward. So first, and, and this may be a question for Mr. Brown and Mr. Hayes. Um, last year was my first budget cycle with Richland County. My understanding is that we might be handling our capital projects and capital projects planning a little differently. Um, so if someone could just tell me where we are with, with our capital projects planning for this budget?
Um, as you recall, last summer when we bought the budget report, we did have a recommendation for facility improvement that was based off the prior administration. The council specific, they said you all wanted to see a more, go across section of, um, CIP. So what we spent the last several months working with the departments, attention center, engineering, other work, so and so forth, so that they can submit, resubmit their projects to us. Um, they're gonna be submitting this, this list to Mr. Brown in February, and he is gonna come to council with a recommendation of what we need funded, so that's where we are.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Hayes. And that may have actually been the answer to my next question as well, which is, which is now we have this information. So, you know, what are the expected or desired next steps coming out of this? Will it simply be, let's wait till February and review the capital improvement plan? Uh, are there different steps, evaluations, et cetera, actions that we need to take to address this?
Yeah, so without getting too far ahead, so where I'm gonna go in my presentation.
If it's covered there, I can wait.
Well, it's covered in a sense that most of the decisions that I need you all to make, that will be a request. So we have identified areas that we know we need to address that have been put on hold or delayed. You know, here are the funding sources we have now to address those, see where we may need to potentially borrow, if we're gonna do that in order to address these needs. So I need, I need decision, yay, um, the metal gun's down.
Sorry, it's really distracting.
That's okay. Yeah, so that's it, so yes, ma'am, I'll do, do come with you more decisions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a little quick question from Ms. Myers. I wanted to follow up, may I ask Ms. Myers a question? Because I, you know, like, sometimes I don't think I probably really understand the ISO rating, the ten that you're describing. And is that more applicable in the rural areas? I mean, how, how can you, can somebody explain that to me? Because say for instance, in the rural area, the lower Richland area, which is, which is, um, geographically you've got maybe a house maybe every ten miles and so like that.
Well, that's actually not correct.
No, it's not, not, I'm just trying to.
That, that's what has driven the ISO ratings, that people think that.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Exactly right.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it big, the, the, the fire stations, we don't have that many in that lower Richland area to address, to adequately address the citizens in that area?
That is correct.
And because of that, they are, the, the stations are far away, they're ten miles, everyone's ten miles away?
So the stations are far away, we don't have adequate fire hydrants because we haven't provided water services in the area, so there's no fire, so that, there's nothing, so if you get a fire truck, the fire truck has to have, like at my house, we've given them permission to use our pond, right? So that's, that's their water source if somebody has a fire, which is kinda ridiculous because what they're doing is, they're gonna pour out all the water they got from the truck and get to the closest source of water to fill up and go back to the fire. And that's because of the inadequacy of the infrastructure. And so what I've been trying to get us to is, A, better infrastructure, obviously in those areas, but B, also fire stations in places that make sense. So you've got the whole of Westinghouse, right, on, on Bluff Road. And from Atlas and Bluff all the way down, so there's a, there's a fire station, um, on the other side of Garnas Ferry. There's no, there's nothing on Bluff, so if something happens at Westinghouse, A, there are not enough fire hydrants, but B, there's no close fire station to help in the surrounding areas. They have their own fire service, but we don't have anything that would serve the communities around. So what I've been asking about is a feasibility study that gives something to me that's better than just my guess, right? Because I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it, but I don't, I'm not a fire person, I don't, I'm not a specialist. But I, I, I know because of the insurance ISO ratings, and that's what the people are paying based on how close they are to a fire station or how far away, that, um, we are outside of what is, so the City of Columbia has a one rating, the county has a two, but that two is, you know, an average of all the other ratings that are really high and some really low. And so what I've been asking for is a study that can either disprove my theory that we need more or tell us where we need them, right? And that, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting at. So it's, it's, you're right, Ms. Dickerson, in that it's been fed on the, the very assumption that the houses are so far away that we'd have to give everybody their own personal fire station, but that's not true. And so we have inadequately served, um, that, parts of, parts of the county.
So basically what you're saying is that, what I heard you say is that, say for instance, going down toward Gadsden area, um, and, uh, there, there's, there's, there's no infrastructure there in terms of, like, I guess because I see it from a different perspective, I'm like, I'm driving and I see a big, what you call a fire?
Hydrant.
You know, those hydrants, I see fire hydrants, so. In the rural area, you won't see a fire hydrant, so if you don't have a fire hydrant in that area, that means you don't have water, adequate water supply. And so would that have an effect on whether or not there's a, I mean, I guess.
So we have, so, so for example.
With the study, we'd have to, we'd have to do a study for us to act and see basically how we need to address that area.
We have three, three fire stations that would service that area, but they all use independent water sources. So once the truck empties out, I'll, I'll maybe bring, I have some pages over it, it's kind of crazy that in 2020 we're doing this, but. So at the Gadsden Fire Station, there are, there are the, the fire trucks, and then there's this reserved little thing that they've got where they fill, they fill it with water, and so they'll go, if they'll, if they empty out their truck, they'll come back and get that water or go to the closest person's house that has allowed them to use their private pond to refill the truck to go put out a fire.
So you don't have that many homes that have a private pond?
No.
I would do that study.
Welcome to my world. Belle Mountain, now she's got the same problem.
You got the same problem?
Same thing.
It's crazy.
We gave them permission to use our pond, too. And they're supposed to test it once a year, and I guarantee you, I've seen them out there once in probably. Yeah, but Chief Swers is doing it.
We definitely need to fix a bunch of things.
Any other questions? Any other questions referencing, um, facilities?
Again, thank you very much for taking, having the time to listen to us.
Okay, I would do no time. No, we're, we're, we're ahead, we won't complain about that. So Mr. Brown, and next is, um, our, um, State of the County.
All right, so good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I knew that you all would be sitting here for quite a bit of time before you got to me, and I knew you would have received a lot of numbers and had a lot of questions about a lot of detailed data. Uh, what I wanna do this morning, and know this is, you're not gonna find this in your presentation, is I wanted this to be an opportunity for us to have a dialogue with each other and for you to hear some thoughts. So I'm not gonna be very long-winded, but I wanted to, us to kind of focus, because what I'm gonna be asking for specifically, uh, many of you have asked some things that I've requested, you know, what can I do to help you? And what, what do we need to facilitate your ability to help the county? Uh, and one of the things I think it's important that we both do from me to you, me to my staff, and us to everyone and our citizens, is for us to listen. Uh, and so the first thing I'm asking this morning through this presentation is to really start by just listening. So that's why you don't have something that you could, to keep your eyes on during the process, other than either me or the presentation. One of the things I did for this presentation is I took a framework from a very popular, uh, ideology related to Stephen Covey. If you're familiar, there are lots of different areas you could go, but there was something that, that was very, I'm not gonna say revolutionary, but it was very useful to many individuals and organizations. Uh, and so I went with something that has some historical value versus something that's relatively new. Uh, and that's dealing with the seven habits of highly effective people. And so I'm gonna use it as the framework for this conversation that we're gonna have related to what I view as the State of the County. Very, I'm not gonna read all these to you, but I'm just gonna remind you of what were the seven habits that Stephen Covey identified that he thought was, was able to help transform people and the relative organizations that they deal with. And so you can just look at these here, gonna cover a few in my presentation, and I'll kinda hit those as we just kinda look at these summaries. One of the ones I'll be using is begin with the end in mind. So you will see as I begin the actual slide presentation that the idea that I'm gonna start with is where we are all here, uh, originally dealing with, and that is the mission of Richland County. So keep that in mind as we begin with the end in mind. Here are three and four, I'll also deal with putting first things first. I think what you've heard in this conversation that you've already had is that you as a council, us as an administration, we're gonna have to make some decisions and determine what are the priorities that we are gonna put our efforts toward. And so we're gonna have to determine really what are first out of the list of high priority items that we have to deal with. And so we're gonna need some help with that. One of the other areas I'm gonna be asking you all to think about very strongly is to think win-win. How can we better utilize our social networks in our community to address areas of needs that Richland County has and all of the other neighboring municipalities that are within Richland County and those surrounding Richland County? So that we can begin to leverage our resources when we know that we don't have, as we identified, enough monies on our own to address all the needs that we have. Habit number five, I'll give an extra thirty seconds. I think this is one that was identified by Stephen Covey, uh, as one of the most critical areas, and I think it speaks to all of the opportunities that we have to better our relationships internally and externally. So this one I'm gonna give some special attention to. Number six, I'm not gonna touch on number seven, because number seven means that we've done some things and that we're ready to make continuous improvements. We're not there, all right? But number six is an opportunity for us to do some of what we're doing here now, some of what we started last night, and hopefully what will continue through the next couple of days. And that is to put our combined efforts together to achieve something that I cannot do by myself as the county administrator. And you cannot do by yourself as an individual council member. And the staff can do as individual department leaders that we have to utilize our combined skills and talents to benefit the citizens of Richland County. So synergy is something that we need to go beyond the words that you see recorded, but we need to really actively work towards that and be intentional. We'll talk more about that here very soon. Don't worry, I'm not, I'm not gonna try to bore you, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk too long, I know everybody's, eyes are already glazing over. But let's begin with the end in mind. A very famous council member challenged me a few months back and asked me, what is Richland County's mission statement? So at the time of that conversation, I said, I don't know. And my "I don't know" was a truthful statement, because I did not know the whole thing, and maybe, maybe some of you do. I knew what I have highlighted there for you as the fundamental core of why we are serving Richland County. And that is to provide essential resources, but not just any kind of way, right? The mission says efficiently and effectively. And so I highlighted that was I wanted to begin with the end in mind. If you were asked me today from the State of the County's perspective as a county administrator, would I say that we are achieving that mission? I would say, and sometimes we are. And some things you've been out there, you've been able to be proud of, and we should be proud of those things. But I would add one little area that I think that the mission statement doesn't capture. We wanna do that consistently. We don't wanna do that on certain projects in certain areas, in certain districts, right? We wanna do that consistently throughout Richland County. And that is where I say that right now we have an opportunity to definitely improve. So I don't want you to leave here thinking I'm saying that Richland County hasn't accomplished this on some level. I'm saying that I cannot tell you consistently that we efficiently and effectively provide essential resources to the citizens of Richland County. So as we build this conversation about what we're gonna need to do going forward, I wanted to start with the end in mind, because that's what we're trying to accomplish for our citizens. So putting first things first, how can we reach Richland County's mission without money? Right? Everything that we are talking about right now, up until this point, requires a level of funding. We have questions right now about certain areas of our business as to whether the funding sources will remain at certain levels, whether they will remain at all. And so putting first things first, we need to understand, we need to be thinking about a couple of things that we have going well. How do we maintain fiscal solvency? What does that mean, Mr. Brown? What are you trying to ask us to do? What I'm saying to you is right now, we have a strong credit rating, you had that before I ever showed up. That's awesome, right? We need to acknowledge that. We have a solid reserve fund. That's good, we need to acknowledge that. We have won multiple years of awards related to how our governmental financing works. That's great, we need to acknowledge that. But the fiscal discipline is something that I think you all have touched on this morning that we need to take a closer look at. And what that means is, from a very basic standpoint, I put down here, budgets should allow for flexibility, as we've kinda determined, but limits should not be viewed as dynamic. What, Mr. Administrator, what are you talking about? What I'm suggesting is, if I have, assuming that I'm budgeting correctly, I understand if we hadn't budgeted correctly, inputs, bad outputs if we put in bad inputs. But let's assume that we get it right. We need to change the mentality of, I wanna do X, I only have Y to do it with, but I'm gonna just go do it. And XY, we'll go to the council and say, hey, Ms. Dickerson, by the way, we did this, now we need the money. Okay, that is a culture change that we need to begin to identify. And here, here's what that looks like. Now, I'll give you an example. Right now, based on the current processes, I could have someone have an operating budget and a personnel budget. They could take money from their operating budget and decide that this person deserves a raise, an increase, a bonus. Apply that bonus, and then say, I need operating funds. Okay? When I mean fiscal discipline, I mean that we need to say, to some degree, we'll budget for some certain level of increases, if necessary, some certain levels of, you know, new higher flexibility. But you can't just arbitrarily take money out of an operating fund, put it in a recurring personnel fund, and then come back to the council and say, I need a budget amendment to address my operating needs. That's what I mean about fiscal discipline. So, what will be the ask? Okay? The ask will looks like what I have down here, sometimes no, but not right now is the right answer. That means that sometimes, we're going to need your support in communicating to people who do not answer to us to say, I hear the request, however, we have to live within this scope of means because we have these priorities that we have identified that we're going to focus on. Short of that, it's going to be very hard for you to, to really identify what funds you have available to deal with these issues like facilities that we just talked about. So, again, it's not to be negative, but it's to say, we have a good fiscal background already set up. Let's maintain it. So, we have to be smarter in our budgeting, but also in our allocation of the spending of those dollars. Think win-win. So, here's a, an initiative that I would like for you strongly consider. Something called connecting communities. What does that look like? That looks like you and I involving, and some of us, we do this already, but we need to be very intentional and set this out, ourselves in what's going on in the greater Richland County area. And how do we leverage those things to impact where we're going? So that we're not competing and spending the same dollars when we could be using each other's dollars better, right? And we, we have a lot of that, and I understand why. I'm just suggesting that we need to do a better job of connecting with our internal partners. And it's not limited to other governmental entities. It also includes businesses, it also includes schools, but we need to reduce our level of competition and increase our level of collaboration. And that will definitely involve more of us understanding what we want to do as an organization, and to how we go out and do that. And we'll talk more about that here in a few moments. And you certainly can ask questions during this presentation. I don't, I don't mind stopping, because I, I won't lose my, my thoughts on this. Well, you go right out, we'll accept amen.
Can we just let you do yours and then do the amen?
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Yes, ma'am. So, the next idea we talked about, again, the backdrop is Stephen Covey, seek first to understand, then to be understood, organizational development and culture. So, here's some things I've identified, when we talk about the State of the County from our eyes. And just by way of conversation, it's been almost seven months now. So, it's been, it's been a while, right? So, one of the things I identify is, we have relatively inexperienced mid-management and upper-management. And that's not negative. Don't take that as a, as a negative thing. So, for any of my folks who are here, that's, that's not a, a slap in the face. That's just saying, we know a couple of things. One, we haven't had time to develop a lot of bad habits. But conversely, we haven't had a lot of time to develop a lot of good habits either. So, we have a unique opportunity to really shape what our management team and our leadership looks like. And so, I'm going to be asking you as members of council to, again, as we go through this process, be thinking about, we actually have an opportunity to make an influential impact, because we have some folks here who are not inundated with all the history of whatever it was, and, and now how things can never be, okay? So, now, some of my staff will notice, because we talked about this in one of our leadership trainings in our executive team meeting. And that's the parable of the fig tree. And so, I'm not going to do as good a job as Dr. Henry Cloud did, but I'll just spend just a few minutes, few minutes here talking about this concept I'm asking you as council members to do. So, in this lesson that I shared with our leadership team, Dr. Henry Cloud brings up the fact that there was a simple story related in the Bible. And the story goes something like this. So, there is the person who owns the vineyard, who comes to collect fruit from the fig tree, and has consistently done this for some time. And each time he goes to collect it, there is no fruit on the tree. So, finally, he gets upset and simply says, why am I wasting my time with this tree that is taking up this good soil? We should just cut it down and get rid of it. And many of our management styles, historically, people are like that. They're like, I've asked you for results, you haven't produced. I'm tired of wasting my time and energy. I'm just going to get rid of you and move you to the side. What Dr. Cloud does is, he says, wait a minute, let's look at the story in its totality. The other part of the story says, the guy who is taking care of the vineyard says, hold on, sir, give me an opportunity to dig around this fig tree. Allow me to turn that soil, so we can dig and see what are the challenges maybe that are going on with this fruit not being able to be produced, okay? And then he says, after that, allow me to fertilize it. Allow me to give it some TLC. And then, give me a little time to see what that digging and fertilizing produces. But not just unlimited amount of time. And many of you have heard me say this to my staff, in, in terms of our conversations, we, we don't have a lot of time, but we do have some time. So, let's see what happens in the time that we give it. And the reality of it is, we could get fruit, or we could not, and then we now have decisions to make. What I'm asking you as council members, I've seen a couple of initiatives that we have in place. And ironically, they have very similar results. So, we need to dig around a little bit more to figure out, why do we keep having these commonalities related to all these initiatives that we put in place? If it's poor communication, why do we continually have poor communication? If it's misinformation, why do we keep having misinformation? If it's a lack of good data, why is it that we keep getting a lack of good data? Let's find out, let's do a little extra digging to determine what the real challenges are. And then, the most important thing I'm asking you to do is I'm asking you to fertilize that situation. I'm asking you to directly involve yourselves in helping us provide nutrients to that situation. One of the things Dr. Cloud brings out, he says, listen, part of the reason that the tree needs nutrients, or any of us, for that matter, because you can't produce it on your own. So, it doesn't do good to tell me, Leonardo, be better, if I don't have the necessary things within me to be better. You might have to bring betterment to me, whether that's bringing other people in, whether it's providing coaching and training, whether there's some type of change, those are the things that we have to take a look at, and just not automatically assume I can just do better on my own. And I think that's, again, one of the areas that I'm asking us to consider as we talk about how we're going to move forward. And so, with that being said, I'm just simply asking you, look at these situations that we find ourselves in. Look at these initiatives and programs that we have. Look and see if there are commonalities, and let's dig and find out, why do we have those commonalities? So that we could put things in place to prevent things that we identify that could be, that could be prevented. And not just assume that, you know, Leonardo, for example, and I just use myself, he's bad at his job. And so, therefore, we get these results. I'm almost done. So, I want to put this up here one more time, because I think it's so important, and it's a key opportunity that we have as this group. For me, being a part of this retreat, having an opportunity to engage with you in this mechanism is important, because it really gives us an opportunity to really understand more about ourselves, and how we can better utilize each other, right? So, we'll move on now to why that's important, and this will lead into our next section. We need to develop together a strategic plan that identifies our efforts. What are we going to focus on? So then, I can then go back to my team and the other officials in the county and say, here's what Richland County is doing. We can go out to the community and say, here's what Richland County is focusing on, so that your constituents, the citizens that we serve, and the people that work for the county can understand why the funding is what it is, why it's being allocated the way it's being allocated, and why the yeses are yeses and the noes are noes. Right? That's something that we need to do. I talk about building infrastructure, both literally and figuratively, and I'll simply say this. Literally means that we got some literal ground lines to put in the ground, right? We have some facilities that we really need to do something with. We also have the figurative component of that. And as I said, we need to rebuild or develop a level of trust that would allow us to take advantage of the strategic planning that we need to do. Right? That, that cannot be overstated, and I think you know that. And then, last but not least, our budgetary expenditures need to be aligned with our initiatives. The money that we spend needs to be tied to the priorities that you designate. So, I can't come back in as the county administrator and tell staff, hey, staff, we're going to go do X. They can say, wait a minute, the county voted on this. They can help keep me in check. That's part of the checks and balances. You come to the council, me as a council member, say, Leonardo, I need you to go out and, and do X, Y, and Z. And I say, ma'am, sir, the council voted on this. That's the checks and balances. My people keep me in check, they can help keep us in check through our own processes that we identify through this program that we need to do. So, I think that's where I really want to leave the conversation. And that goes back to beginning with the end in mind. That's how we're going to more effectively and consistently meet our mission, which is to provide essential resources officially and effectively to the citizens of Richland County. And if I could add my word, it would be consistently. But we can't do that without a guiding document that communicates what our consistencies are. If we leave it in, in words, I might not remember where council meeting the vote happened. Might not remember what year that was, but that guiding document will help us do that. So, with that being, the final slide, I'll certainly take questions right now. But if you give me a few moments, I'll read two things for you. I think you might want to know related to a question that Mr. Walker asked earlier about finances, and then one about a recent bond rating that goes back to, again, the strength of the county and, and what you have put yourself in position to do. So, if you give me just a few more moments, I'll do that, um, before you, before I take questions. Is that okay? So, on January the tenth, we received a email, we being members of staff, from our bond counsel, Parker Pope. As we were talking about, how do we make a decision about how much money we try to balance keeping and how much money we pay down? Uh, and we, we laughed about it a little bit, because we thought it'd been great if council had this in one of the meetings, but, uh, it didn't happen that way. So, the, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll just give you, I'll give you the main, the main point. So, the main point is practically, we have a hundred and seventy-five million of band outstanding. The twenty nineteen bands refinanced the twenty eighteen bands. The twenty eighteen bands were issued before March twenty, twenty eighteen, and their date of issuance was, was February twenty eighteen, is the controlling date. So, if we roll the amount, the full amount over for one year, yes, ma'am, go ahead, then a county could issue, not that we will at all, a hundred and seventy-five million in bonds to pay off the twenty twenty bands. However, if the county chooses to use cash on hand in some amount to pay down the bands, and then issue their twenty twenty band in less than whatever that amount is, right? So, whatever amount you issued in, then the remainder of the band will be limited to whatever that amount is. So, for example, uh, when we pay down the band, which we are going to pay down, Stacy and I are working on, along with the rest of the team, about how much to pay down. Right now, we're looking at paying it down by twenty-five or fifty million, okay? Which would bring it down to either one twenty-five or a hundred million, okay? Whatever that floor is, becomes the ceiling. So, that's why I'm bringing it up to you. So, we are going to pay it down. What I want to be conscious of, and I want you to be conscious of, is, is the county comes back and says, for whatever reason, we decided, Mr. Brown, we want to do all of these projects at this level. And that level exceeds whatever that floor is, which is now the ceiling, you won't be able to do it. So, you need to realize that whatever decision that you make, that ultimately, that is going to govern your future decisions. So, right now, we're going to either pay it down by twenty-five or fifty million, leaving you a hundred million? But going forward, just when we make a decision, the same time next year, as to how we're going to handle this, just know that whatever decision we cut off, that becomes the most you could ever use. And that only matters depending on what decisions that you make. So, we'll come back to you, we'll talk about this in a, in a more comprehensive way, but I want to leave you with that financial understanding about how that decision is going to impact whatever work you're going to do with projects, okay? So, yes, we're going to pay some number down, we heard what you said, don't keep holding more money than you need. But we want to leave you some flexibility in, in case you decide something that we're not projecting today. All right? Last but not least, we did also to have a phone call, uh, and we got an indicative bond rating on our utility bonds. And it came back with the fourth highest rating that you can have. So, again, that speaks to the strength of Richland County. However, we need to make sure we're able to live by the plans that we have, or that impacts that information that we share with those bonding companies. So, that's, that's just another part of that. So, again, I, I appreciate it. Hopefully, that was helpful to you. Uh, but with that being said, I'll, I'll certainly take questions now. What questions do you have for me?
Question, council members. This question. You recognize?
Um, Mr. Brown, thank you so much for that. Uh, it just, I couldn't help but feel during the presentation how proud I am to have you here as administrator, and so I just want to say thank you. I know, um, it's been probably a whirlwind seven months of getting up to speed and taking on the staff and this council, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. What, yes, sir?
Mr. Brown, I, um, I, I enjoyed the presentation and, and your comments, and the charge, and the challenge as well. Uh, and I, as you were talking, I thought what came to my mind was that, I think all of the, everything you said is based upon some assumptions. Some assumptions by this group, as well as some assumptions by staff. I, I think that when we, when we recognize that those assumptions have to sort of be in place, I think it helps to make your plan a more realistic plan. Without that, I'm not as optimistic. I, I think one of the, I, I wrote down six quick assumptions that I'm, that I'll mention, and I think, in my opinion. One, my first assumption is that we all have to be on the same page and have the same goal. Uh, we assume we are, but that, that's a big assumption. My second assumption is that we need to think and see the broader issue of Richland County as a collective issue, and not by urban rule, District Eight, District Nine, District One, District Two. Third assumption is that we need to value the views and the ideas of each other, as well as the views and ideas of our critics. My fourth assumption is, we need to eliminate and try to reduce the silo approach to the way we do business. My fifth assumption, we, we need to answer the hard question. We're assuming that we really like each other, and we really want to work together. That's a big assumption. And then, my last assumption, you said it, and I had already written it down though, is that we need to try to establish, assume that we establish a high level of trust. Because without that, it's going to become very difficult to do a lot of the other things that you're talking about, particularly when it involves a smaller piece of the pie, and all of these massive issues that we can never afford to pay for. How do we make that determination, which one maintains its priority? There were some priorities set before I got on this council, uh, and I've come in, and my goal has been to try to, as best as I can, understand what those priorities were, not come in and dismantle them and destroy them, and, and say those people before me were crazy, but to be able to try to value and understand the views and ideas that they used, the logic they used when they created those priorities, even if those priorities are not my priorities, rather than just simply dismissing them. And if I can't accomplish that, then I need to go buy some cows and raise, raise some animals, so, thank you.
And, and, Mr. Jackson, I, I certainly hate talking about behind people when they make good points. I, I want to say you're right. I'm making a lot of assumptions, and it requires, no, no. I'm just saying, I'm, I, I need that, right, in order to, um, move some things forward. And so, that's hopefully part of the strategic planning process, where, you know, even where there are areas that you don't agree on personally, maybe, or even maybe, you know, politically or professionally, that these identified areas, as you mentioned about the people that were maybe before you, they set the tone, so that we can focus on, and we can, we can join around those things where we maybe not be able to join around other things. And so, uh, it would be my, well, I'm going to let the strategic person talk to you about that, but in my, in my mind, I wouldn't bite off more than I can handle. I think part of the challenges that we have right now was that we got a lot of good things, uh, and not a lot of great things. And that's because we got too much happening, uh, and, and not a And that's because we got too much happening and not enough of the stuff that you just talked about in '06. So maybe two or three things and then really hit it and let this first year be an opportunity for us to show what that looks like and surprise yourselves. I believe we can do it. I think it's realistic. So, but thank you for those comments.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. You have an ask.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown and Mr. Jackson, I really appreciate Charles' comments. I have lots of cats.
You have some cats.
Mr. Walker, you want to start?
No, sir.
Oh, I thought so. Call your name if I want to. Ms. McBride.
Mr. Brown, I also want to thank you for your leadership and we're very proud to have you as our manager. I guess my concern is whether I agree with you on it is that if we can, again, and as you stated, focus more on the positive, focus more on the things that we can do. And if we could do away with some of the abstractions that we're having that are necessary. And I think and I have faith in the council, I have faith in you and our staff, that we can move forward. And I just appreciate being here and appreciate the opportunity to work with all of our council members. Even though we have diverse opinions and philosophies, that's America. And I think that we can all come together and make this work. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dickerson.
Mr. Brown, thank you so very much. You know, I stay away from your office much, but I email you a lot. But first of all, I wanna really thank you and I also wanna thank my council members for, you know, for just being a part of this council and knowing that we were put here for a specific reason to help move this county forward. And whatever, I remember we worked on that mission statement. I think, Mr. Mann, you may have been there when we worked on this mission statement. And it took us a long time to even draft it. And I think the word we left out was probably consistently. But the fact of the matter is that I listened to the six points that Mr. Jackson read, but I was slow. I was trying to catch them, but I was slow getting them. But we all, we serve as 11 individuals, but we should have the same goals in mind. But some areas that we serve are so different. Like some of us have a very rural diff area. Some of us are in the city, but we're in the county. And so there are different perspectives that we all have to address because we have different constituency. And like some of us, we got like three, four individuals. Like me, I have a Broad River, I have a Cedar Creek, and I have a Blythe Wood. And each one of them are like three individual groups that I have to address differently. They have different needs. And so the areas that we represent, they have different needs. Like Ms. Myers just mentioned her serious need with her fire department. So she's gonna be really focused on that in the rural area. She has, I think Ms. Myers and I have probably more rural setting than, and Mr. Malinowski, than probably anyone on this council. So we have different, we come from a different, we have a different way of how we have to address it. The people on Broad River don't care what's going on in Cedar Creek, and the people in Cedar Creek don't even talk to them about Broad River Road. So each one of us, I think we have a different set of constituency that we have to answer to. But we have to be respectful of, I think I try to be respectful to each one of my council members for whatever the needs they have that they bring to this council and want us to address. So I try my best to be respectful, and I think that was one of the words you mentioned. But we need to try to respect one another. We don't have to agree, but we should always try to have decency and respect intellectually toward each other. And I don't have to agree with Ms. Teresa, which you know I'm not sometimes. But the fact that a matter of that doesn't have anything to do with whether or not I like her or not. It's just like, that's not a concern of mine at the moment until she show me, you know, have that open communication to say, Ms. Dickerson, y'all know if y'all don't ask me for something, you don't get it. So I feel like if you, there is something that you have a need for and you need all of us to be a part of it, that we should have respect for each other. Call Mr. Livingston or sit down with Mr. Jackson and say, Mr. Livingston, Mr. Jackson, this is where I am. And, you know, try to show each other why it is we have that particular need. And if we don't talk to each other, we don't communicate with each other. So we bring something to council, then we all mad because you're not doing what I want you to do. But because we didn't do like a prerequisite, you know, to sit down and say, Ms. McBride, I know this might not be your interest, but this is very important to me, my constituents or whatever. But it will also benefit the whole county. It's not just, you know, a fire station doesn't just benefit Ms. Myers. It benefits the whole county. So we have to look at it from my perspective. That's the way I look at it. Not, well, you need a fire thing, but, you know, I don't care about that. I have to figure out a way, making that, making, you know, listening to her and trying to help address that issue. It should be an issue that affects the whole county. So I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So another thing, Mr. Brown, I didn't write it down, but the fact that a matter of you mentioned something to me that was very important. And I think I mentioned it to you in like Richland County, when I look at Richland County, and I think I mentioned to a couple of my colleagues, is that Richland County, to me, is broken up in so many parts. You got public works, you got embossment. So I mean, they're all doing everything. Most of the time, the council don't have a clue what they're doing. You don't even know. I mean, the council have needs. Our needs don't get addressed, but we look at the departments and their departments, you know, they just flourish. And each one of them got their own little logo, their own little everything. We don't look like we uniform. Everybody got their own little thing going on under your administration. And I'm just telling it like it is. And like Richland County, they tell me we only got the administrator and the attorney that we can actually, that we actually can just go to. I can't go to Stacy and say, Stacy, you need to, I mean, I can, but I just, I feel out of place. So I gotta go through Mr. Brown and let Mr. Brown know that I'm discussing it with Tracy so that we're on the same page. And she doesn't tell me something that Mr. Brown have not agreed to and have not allowed her to do. And probably Mr. Brown don't know it. A lot of times, we, previous people used to go to different staffers and get everything done. And the administrator doesn't know a thing about it and don't even mention council. So it's a breakdown, since I've been here these two years, breakdown in communication between staff and council members. Does that make sense to anybody?
We're working on it.
You're working on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's the way I see it, so. But thank you so very much for your leadership, and I look forward to working with you to try to help us resolve some of these problems and move this, to move this county forward very positively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, let me just quickly say, I really, really appreciate and share your perspective and your philosophy as you mentioned things to us. And my commitment is to communicate and listen to help us move forward with that. And it'll be more listening than anything else. And you know, it's a level of us, you know, we have, as mentioned earlier, we have districts with different needs at times. And it becomes very challenging because we can't meet all the needs of all the people all the time. But we have to figure out a way to make sure that we're treating each district as fairly and equally as we can. Doesn't mean you're doing the same things for them. Just simply meaning what those specific needs are of those specific districts. And then we as a council, you know, we would have to spend more time communicating and listening to each other too. And we'll work toward that.
I think you may have seen on the slide, I know the one statement where I put up there. You know, we can serve everyone pleasantly, but we can't please everyone.
Thank you. And what else?
All right, I think I'm before lunch, so I think if you're done with your questions for me, I think that, that's it for now.
All right, well, thank you very much. So I'm gonna try to keep, we'll start out in open session. I'll try to keep the brief as much as possible in open session. Nothing really revelatory in any of the stuff. We're not really gonna get into a lot of cases. You get a lot of case updates throughout the year. If there's any questions, at the end, we will talk about just a couple for information in case you've been asked about a couple of these cases, but that'll be at the end. So I just wanna kinda start out, you know, we've been doing this for years. We do our update. And years ago, we used to kinda inundate you with statistics, like here's how many legal opinions we wrote. And you're like, wow, you sent a lot of emails that year. Here's how many cases we had. And that's of value, but it's not really for a purpose of something like this, probably as important. So then we started switching to issues, and now we're in more like themes and values and principles and things that you can take forward as Mr. Brown talks about in your big picture planning. So just to kinda talk to you a little bit about what we're gonna talk about, we'll actually slide the case update to the end. It's only a couple of cases. It'll take a very brief period of time. Gonna talk about attorney-client privilege and executive sessions, although I will talk about executive sessions conceptually in open sessions. That'll be interesting. Talk a little bit about the FOIA, personnel management issues that end up becoming legal problems, value of corporate knowledge. We got a very recent example of that that's quite helpful. Strategy and legal issues, and then tensions among competing interests. Be interesting little discussion about that. And lastly, issue spotting in what I call triage in the medical profession. Triage is basically diagnosing in a quick fashion the condition of various patients and who's most severe and take them in order. So that's kinda the hook on that one. We're gonna skip over this slide for a second. Okay, attorney-client privilege. This is interesting. Most people, you know, whether they hang around lawyers a lot, have seen enough TV shows or movies to know, hey, I don't have to tell you what I told my lawyer, because that's covered by the attorney-client privilege. But a definition, there are many of these, but basically it's keeping confidential communications with your lawyer secret. And that's pretty much what it is. And, you know, individuals have a right to do that. You know, you don't wanna have a confidential discussion and then have somebody come up and say, hey, what'd your lawyer just tell you? You know, and that's a quiet session. So that's basically the concept of it. So we talk about emailing. Just copying your lawyer on an email automatically makes something attorney-client privilege. So if you send an email, you just copy Mr. Smith or me. Is that gonna get us out of the jam there? So you can't, so if that were the case, then what my advice would be that every email Richland County sends, you just copy me and Mr. Smith. And that way, we could just say, hey, it's attorney-client privilege. That's not how that works. If we're not giving any advice and there's nothing, no case discussion or legal advice discussion, just adding us doesn't make it, because we're also staff folks. It doesn't make it attorney-client privilege. Who can waive the attorney-client privilege? You can't. That's okay. The client, exactly. So it's not the attorneys to waive. Now, the attorney practically can waive it. If we were to go out and say, hey, here's what my client's all about, well, I could have waived the privilege. But basically, who can waive the privilege and not get in trouble with the Office of Disciplinary Counsel? I mean, lawyer's not supposed to waive the privilege. It's the client's privilege. So a client can waive it. And if they wanna talk about what the confidential communications were, they can do that. That's their right to waive it. Is it possible to unintentionally waive the privilege? Absolutely. This happens, and I'll mention in a few slides, the origin of some training that we put together. You've probably all gotten emails from our office, and years ago, I started, and everybody's kinda got something similar. Kind of an all caps, which is not yelling at people in the email, just says at the bottom, attorney-client privilege communication, not for dissemination beyond the original addressee and copied recipients. And there's a reason for that. There's reasons that we copy the people, who we copy and the people that we don't copy. And most of the times when we don't copy, it's because I don't wanna burden somebody's inbox with something that's really not, you know. If they need to know, we'll tell them. But, I mean, we're gonna keep it to the smallest group of folks who can deal with a problem because we're dealing with legal issues a lot of times. But despite that obvious warning, we've had people, and I'm talking fairly high up in the organization, just flat out forward our attorney-client privilege emails to folks who are not our client. And do things like, hey, I'm gonna loop in so-and-so, basically, here's what my lawyer's saying. Well, that's just like us having a private conference in a room and then going out and holding a press conference and saying, let me tell you what my lawyer just said. So we've had a real problem. So what this has led to is we put together some email training. I gave it the other day. I'll talk about it later in the brief, but basically responsible emailing, so we're not blasting attorney-client privilege. But if you unintentionally, and they're not thinking about that. That's why we do the training. So they're not trying to do it on purpose. They just unintentionally waive it. Does waiving the privilege in one situation waive it in other instances? So for example, if you've got a matter, and say there are 10 emails about that matter, and one of those emails gets forwarded to somebody. A court could come in and say, well, wait a second. You opened up the door with that one email. Therefore, you've waived the privilege as to the rest of that subject matter. That's not a place you wanna be. So yes, you can waive. So that's why we're kinda fanatical about the attorney-client privilege, because it's your privilege and we're trying to protect it for you. And so we'll talk for a second about who the client is. So that's basically the concept. Okay, that's great, but who is the client in an organizational setting? This is straight out of the South Carolina Rules of Professional Conduct, which is gonna be similar across the states. Lawyer hired by an organization represents the organization acting through its duly authorized constituents. Okay, that clears it up. Well, wait a second. Who are the, what does that mean? Authorized constituents? Who are the authorized constituents? So we'll skip over that, come back to it. Next slide. Here's a special comment. So what you'll see here is they give a rule, and then there's about 10 pages of comments to try to explain the rule. Because you gotta keep in mind, these are lawyers getting paid by the word. Okay, the duty defined in this rule applies to governmental organizations. Then listen to this wonderful language. Defining precisely the identity of the client and prescribing the resulting obligations of such lawyers may be more difficult in the context of government and therefore is a matter beyond the scope of these rules. Well, that's helpful. So what you're saying is, whoever wrote this rule, you're not sure who the client is, and even if you knew, you're not sure what obligations we have on the client. That's a pretty tough place to be. And so, you know, a bunch of lawyers came up with this, but that's the reality of what you're dealing with with organization as a client. It can be clear as mud at times. All right, the entity as a client, additional comment. Organization is a legal entity. So when somebody sues Richland County, if they were to sue the Richland County Public Works Director, well, that's not a legal entity. You need to sue Richland County in acting by and through the Public Works Director. You'd name that in the body of the complaint, but the legal entity is Richland County. Officers, directors, employees, and shareholders, this is where we get to the constituents of the corporate organizational client. Okay, well, that's a little clearer. I mean, a little idea who the client is. But now, here we go. The organization's highest authority to a matter may be referred ordinarily will be the board or similar governing body. Boom. Under Home Rule 4-930, council administrator or form of government, county council is the council's governing bodies. That's the highest authority we deal with at Richland County of the organization. So we're getting warmer. Okay. So we've kind of identified the client, kind of identified the relationship, attorney-client. This is, this is, put yourself in the lawyer's position. When the organization makes a decision, the decisions ordinarily must be accepted by the lawyer, even if their utility or prudence is doubtful. So what they're saying is, the law allows people to do imprudent things. There's a broad range of things that people could do that are not illegal. It perfectly permissible, may not be wise. So when you see cases on this, what the courts will say, and this is when they're talking about state statutes or actually the legislature, say, we're not going to comment on the wisdom, you ever seen this? I know you've seen this, wisdom or folly of the legislative act. We're not gonna say it's a great idea, a bad idea. We're just gonna say it's a legal idea. And so that's what they're commenting on. Including ones entailing serious risk are not lawyer's province. That's the origin then of our stamp that says, yep, this is a proven deformed, we're not rendering an opinion as to content. You can legally do this. Whether it's gonna work out the way you want it to is a policy decision. And so that's where it is. But it says, you know, ordinarily. So now we gotta come back to that. So then I gave you this building, big segue. Anybody know what this big building is?
Yeah, that's where I met my wife very close.
Okay, well, that's probably the best thing that's ever happened in that building. Because when Richland County got involved in this building, and this is many years ago, lots of administrators away. And I'm not calling anybody's name, because the point of this is to learn and to move on. It's not to like hash errors that occur along the way. But the point is, years ago, and this is not, this is not unprecedented, but it is somewhat atypical, the desire to co-locate the planning departments of Richland County and the City of Columbia. That's why I referred you. That's an aspirational goal. As an abstract proposition, got some curb appeal. As a concrete proposition, doubles in the details. So the county bought this building before they had the commitment from the city to locate the planning. Now, since we don't have our planning department in this building, you can kinda see how this worked out. But, so when this came to our office, I said, oh, you wanna do a closing on this property? Great. Anybody got the appraisal? Great, anybody got the appraisal? We haven't even got appraisal on the property. Okay, anybody do environmental study, just out of curiosity to see what's going on in the building? Eh, we don't really have one of those either. How do you know what the market value is of that? Eh, I'm not really sure. So, I said, well, I'll tell you what, did you do just basic due diligence from the public records that exist? So, for example, I just clicked on the assessors link at the county website, put in the tax map number, which is very simple, you put the property address. This is right behind Baptist Hospital, I'm not sure which road it is, but anyway, pop that in. And I said, well, when you evaluated the purchase, your offer for this piece of property, did you factor into consideration the friable asbestos that exists on the third and fourth floors of this property for which the current owner got a big tax break? That's what you're buying without doing any due diligence. So, when we say, yeah, you can do that, we're not really saying that's a great idea. So, that's the role of the lawyer. Okay? So, then, now, look at this. Now, this is, if something goes to a certain area, and it's not the bad idea area, it's the illegal area. This is part of the same rule. If a lawyer knows, doesn't think, but knows, somebody associated with the organization is engaged, intends, or refuses to act, matter related to the representation, that is a violation of legal obligation or violation of law. Now, you've gotten into the lawyer league. Now, we violated the law, we have to then act reasonably necessary in the best interest of the organization. All right, let's kinda break that down. You talk about an if-then statement, there's so many things that have to line up for us to be able to do something. If we know, not if we think, you know, hey, I wonder who's got a not-so-great idea at the county today? We don't, it's not, we think, it's, we know. Somebody associated with the organization engaged, intends, or refuses in a matter related to their representation of them. So, it can't just be, I'm thinking about doing something imprudent that has nothing to do with Richland County. If it's a violation of the law or a legal obligation, that's the key. Okay, now, we get into all this subjective stuff, which reasonably might be impugned to the organization. So, now, the client, the organization's gonna look bad because of this intended action or inaction, and it's likely to result in substantial injury to the organization. Well, and what am I, Nostradamus? I don't know if that's gonna work out or not work out, but, you know, if I think it might be substantial injury, then now, that kicks in additional duty. Then, now, we got this if-then statement. We shall proceed as reasonably necessary. Folks, you telling me what in 2020 is reasonable? We got half the country wants to impeach the president, the other half doesn't, who's reasonable? Okay, that's totally subjective. Reasonably necessary in the best interest of the organization. Now, we've got, this is the ultimate subjectivity, best interest of the organization, that's what y'all do. You come up with what's the best interest, 'cause you're the governing body. So, all this stuff has to line up for us to be able to go to our clients and say, you know, we got a real problem here that's beyond the scope of what we could do for you as lawyers. And fortunately, you know, this is really hard to get to, and I don't think we're there on any of these issues. So, just so you be aware of what that relationship is. Any questions on the, this is, you get the tip of the iceberg, yeah, I know what the attorney-client privilege is, but all the details are unseen under the water. All right, so let's switch, uh, okay, this last one. So, ordinarily, we take it to council, the highest authority, or the administrator, if it's a staff issue, the council doesn't, you know, need to directly be involved in at that point. In some circumstances, it's appropriate for us just to ask somebody to reconsider. So, if we got a department director, staff person who's thinking about doing something, we say, you know what, maybe you just have an innocent misunderstanding of the law. If I'm driving along the road and I get pulled over for doing forty-five into thirty-five, and I no kidding can pass a lie detector, you know, officer, I honestly thought it was thirty-five here. Maybe they've recently changed aside. That's an innocent mis, I'm still gonna get a ticket unless he's real nice about it, but innocent misunderstanding of the law. And they say, you know what, I slept on it, I thought it over, I decided I'm not gonna pursue that course of action. Then we'll say, great, I think that's a good move. What we're not gonna then do is go run to the administrator or county council and say, hey, let me tell you about this rogue employee you got. They made one mistake one time, or they thought about making a mistake. That's not what this is about. I mean, if you get somebody who consistently exercises the judgment of a Bundy jumper, then we may come to you, but, you know, one or two lapses along the way, that's not what we're gonna do. So, if somebody innocently misunderstands and they correct it, great, no problem. Again, solving it at the lowest level. All right, let's switch, related but different, executive sessions. And this is why I wanna do this in open session, 'cause this is straight out of the state Public body may, may hold a meeting behind closed doors. Don't have to. You never have to hold an executive session if you don't want to, but there are certain circumstances where you probably might wanna think about it. For any of these reasons, I'll list them all, but only about three of them pertain to us. First one, employment, discipline, whatever of an employee. So, you got your employee issue. Second one is the biggie we deal with, okay, what is a negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangement? Thinking about entering into a contract, basically what that is. Proposed sale or purchase of property, okay, after you've bought it, obviously, that's all public record. We're thinking about it, yeah, that's, you could talk about that behind closed doors if you choose to. Recede of legal advice, this is not just, you know, if we were a stockbroker, we said, buy low, sell high, or take an umbrella in the rain, it's not that type of advice. It's advice where the legal advice pertains to a pending threatened or potential claim. Threatened, obviously, is subjective, potential, subjective, other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, settlement of claims, et cetera. Discussion regarding development of security procedures. So, for example, I'm trying to think of an example of this. I think one time, when council redid the chambers and we talked about the back room there, we actually had a guy come in and do a sweep for like, what are the vulnerabilities of this building and the parking lot, stuff like that. But we're not gonna let the world know what those are, 'cause that just tells a bad person how to come in and defeat those. So, you got a right to talk about things that are gonna keep people safe behind closed doors. Investigating criminal misconduct, yeah, could you imagine if you're in open session and you say, you know, so-and-so, I think he's getting ready to be indicted by the grand jury, let's talk about that in open session? That's not the type of thing you're gonna talk about in open session, 'cause it's a lot of speculation, and if you're wrong about accusing somebody of a crime, now, you maybe have a slander issue. So, that's behind closed doors. Discussions, this is the economic development one, encouraging industries and business. And finally, this isn't gonna come up, but I listed, 'cause this is, if it's not one of these six reasons, we're not supposed to be in the back room. So, retirement system. So, what we really talk about most, employee number one, this catch-all, buy stuff, sell stuff, enter contracts and get legal advice, and economic development. Every once in a while, we get number four, but that's the rare exception, and we're thankful for that. Okay, does a matter have to be discussed in executive session just because it's authorized to be? No, we already talked about that. You fully can talk about these things in open session if you so choose. Again, there are certain circumstances where you may not want to. Who can ask for an executive session? Anybody. Anybody can ask for executive session. It's just like you get a piece of the mail, I didn't ask for this, throw it away. So, anybody can ask for one. Most likely, it's gonna be a council member or it's gonna be a staff. Now, if your lawyer's sitting there saying, you know, you may wanna, you know, go back there and talk about, that's probably a big red flag, like, hey, we're getting into an area, think about maybe asking for an executive session, and we may not wanna even explain why you want the session, just let's go back and get some legal advice, 'cause somebody getting ready to get in something that's gonna be an issue about an appropriate thing to discuss in executive session. When can an executive session be taken? Any dang time you want one. This is not tied to the agenda. It's important to have this on the agenda as an appropriate place to say, here's the things that we know we're gonna wanna talk about in executive session, put on the agenda. But if something comes up during the middle of the meeting, hey, I just thought of this, and we may need to talk about this right now, and it qualifies, it qualifies as executive session, you could talk about it anytime you want to. I would encourage you to hold to that practice we use where, if you wanna take it up front, 'cause you got outside lawyers, you wanna take it to the end and not inconvenience everybody, those are the two best times. But if something comes up and timeout everybody out of the pool, you could take one to talk about that issue. Do you have to advertise it and place it on the agenda? Again, those known executive sessions, you wanna put on there. If something comes up, how you smoking? We're not gonna meet for two more weeks, but we got something that's gonna be a disaster tomorrow if we don't talk about it now, and it qualifies, take the executive session. Can someone waive an executive session discussion? Okay, this is not like the attorney-client privilege. You can waive that privilege. You can't really waive it. If somebody comes out and says, let me give you my take on what occurred in executive session, that doesn't mean that everybody else can then, you know, ask them, now, you have to talk about it too. Now, you may be in a court proceeding, you know, required to talk about it, but it's not the waiver the same way the attorney-client privilege is. What are the legal consequences of talking outside of an executive session? Frankly, for the individual who does that, and again, let me make this very clear, the point of this discussion is not to say, like, let's turn this into a McCarthy hearing from the 1950s and ask who the leaker is type of thing, who's the communist or whatever, like they did back then. The point is, if somebody talks, it's gonna be somebody who's in that back room, and there are a lot of staff in the back room. And somebody could go home, attend to that meeting, and, you know, they could talk to their spouse, no idea if they're talking, here's what happened tonight, you don't believe this, honey. They could talk to coworkers. And then, so you don't know where the leak is coming from, to the extent we refer to it as a leak, but the consequences, you know, I don't know if anybody has a desire to round up the person who's doing that, and if you did, what are the consequences? If it's a council member, you have to regulate yourselves, very difficult to do. If it's a staff person, maybe a little bit more control over that situation. But what practical position does it put others in when someone discusses an executive session? Maybe no difference, but it may make it a little awkward, make it ask some questions. You guys say, well, I can't really talk about that because it was an executive session. Yeah, but your friend did. Okay, I can't control that. So, legal consequences, clear as mud. Okay, FOIA request. Any questions about executive session or attorney-client? Let's shift to something that is a little more practical. Yes, sir?
So, we go into executive session, and I know it's archived, probably, to where we came out, and I asked Mr. Smith of the county attorney, if indeed, when we were back in executive session, if I twice asked if what we were talking about qualified for executive session, and he said, yes, you did, and I asked him, and the answer was no, and he said, that's correct, and we stayed in executive session. So, your statement up there is, anything talked about in executive session, you can't talk about out, but if we're back in executive session, and we're talking about things that don't qualify, just 'cause we voted to go back, but we're talking about things that don't qualify, is there, I mean, that states like, we're back there talking about stuff that doesn't qualify, that it's still covered under executive session?
Yeah, that's an excellent, that's an excellent point, because what this, and this is, this is inartfully drafted, 'cause what this should really, what the intent of this is about the matter that was appropriately discussed. But if you've got things, hey, we're back here to talk about a personnel issue, but oh, by the way, let's figure out what we're gonna do strategically on ten different other things, that's, and so, we'll end up, you know, tapping whoever's on the shoulder, hey, that's not why we came back here. So, you're right, I mean, you've got to talk about the things. So, when you make the announcement, make a motion to go in executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Make a motion to discuss the legal advice in the case of, you know, Jones versus Wilson, something like that. You're supposed to talk about Jones and Wilson back there. You're not supposed to talk about, you know, property disposition or something like that.
Thank you, Brad Clark.
Yeah, and that's a good point. So, okay, let's get, yes, ma'am.
I just wanna go back to Mr. Mannett. Actually, in executive session, the legal consequences, even Mr. Mannett talking about, talking about things that should not be talked about in executive session. You said it's clear as mud, so we really don't know if there are legal consequences in any of those things.
So, yeah, let me give you an example of what could be. So, you compromise a position in a lawsuit potentially if something disclosed it's attorney-client privilege as well, 'cause you got two different things. Not everything that occurs in executive session is automatically attorney-client privilege, but everything that is an attorney-client privilege to discuss in executive session kinda fits in both of those little concentric circles. So, but you could, so you could maybe give away something in a lawsuit that takes away an advantage tactically in the lawsuit. One example that's a little less of a concern, because the county by and large is self-insured, but if you're an insurance company and you're saying, you know, I need you to cooperate in the defense of this particular lawsuit, and then you come out and tell somebody something that hurts us in the lawsuit, I may say, well, you haven't participated in good faith in the defense of your own claim, and therefore, I have a concern as an insurance company. So, you have all those potential consequences. When I talk about legal consequences for the person who actually does that, unless you know who that person is, you have something in place to deal with it and wanna censure that person. I mean, if it's a council person you know for sure, what are you gonna disenfranchise a district because, you know, that type of discipline? So, it's, this is an area we don't wanna be in. And so, I just mentioned it because it's, a lot of people wanna know, well, is it the same thing as attorney-client privilege? Not exactly. It's related, but not the same.
So, I thought it was just clear as mud.
That's clear, I think it goes back to those slides we talked about with attorney-client privilege, the concept. Abstract proposition, pretty understandable. Concrete proposition, not so much. Okay, good points. All right, so, and I kinda wish Judy were here, but she's probably back at the ombudsman's office dealing with FOIA requests, which is fine, but these have really risen in a number of years. That's great, open, you know, government, we wanna have that as much as possible, but the sheer burden of dealing with these, I think we got probably this year our first million-page request. That's not a dollar sign, that's a million-page request. This is penny stuff. So, when the PDT did a, you know, document dump with the county that's dated up here, you want our files, here you go. So, great, now, we've got this huge amount of data, but how do you get that translated into, you know, FOIA requests? And so, part of the due diligence on that was going back to the PDT and saying, what'd you guys give us here? What's in this stuff? And in particular, when they did a lot of the acquisitions for right-of-way acquisitions, because of the things you had to file, like, you know, file with the IRS, stuff like that, certain documents, people's social security numbers in there, tax information, that would've been a, we'd have a massive problem with a data breach if we just shotgunned that out without vetting it. So, in dealing with these, staff burnout and resources drain, I mean, we had a lawyer in our office who probably for ten, twelve years did almost, not exclusively, a lot of her practice was FOIA responses, and bless her heart, she was a trooper, but man, you could just see, that backpack was getting heavy. She was getting worn out. So, just something to keep in mind from a staffing perspective, we wanna keep people's privacy rights in check, but we don't wanna have this data breach where now, we've got a public relations nightmare, a crisis of confidence in government, because we didn't even vet what we just shotgunned out for the world to see. And by and large, a lot of this stuff's project documents. What's really salacious and interesting are probably the emails. We'll see what somebody said in an email, but just the straight transaction documents. And those are releasable, except you gotta redact the privacy stuff, and that's the point of it. So, we had a great idea, well, this, my suggestion would be, 'cause when I do stuff in the military, every, every sizable command I go to, we have a dedicated FOIA coordinator, that's all that person does. And it might be something to think about in, in, in the county, because right now, it's a mixture of ombudsmen's, the departments that gather the documents and legal who vets them. You might want to think about a staff person who does nothing but run herd over this, and this is like a belly button you can push to the status of all of it. And again, we don't want that person to be burned out, but we also want that person to have the subject matter expertise to deal with this and have a mindset. No one on the front end. If you say, "Hey, we're going to hire you as our lawyer, and we're not going to tell you that most of you are going to do FOIA requests," that's a little different than coming on the front end saying, "Hey, you're going to be our FOIA coordinator, and if you, you know, have a problem with repetitive type activities, may not be the job for you, because there's going to be a lot of the same thing." Lastly on this, the county, and this was something when we got the million-page request, Councilman Jackson said, you know, "There are companies out there that can assist you in going through these documents." County actually did this, I know Dale was involved, still involved in this. We've got some software that we're looking to do process volumina requests. I would take advantage of this in a major way as far as telling the good things Richland County is doing to deal with these major requests. Everybody knows how to do the run-of-the-mill, the two, three-pager ones. These million-page ones, and we can do that, this is something that ought to be presented to SCAC for a, for a type of, you know, innovative thing. I, I would jump on this if, and again, it's not a legal issue, this is just a, it's sitting in plain sight, that we need to take advantage of this because we're doing it, we might as well tell folks the good things we're doing about it. Okay, shift gears, hard segue here, personnel management issues that become legal problems. You've got basically two types of these, Mr. Brown touched on this in his presentation. You've got ignoring the issue, ignoring the employee problem. There's nothing in the file, this has kind of become a lost art, you know, people don't put things in the file anymore to document, "Hey, we had this counseling session, we had this particular issue." And, and so, the person's, and the person's lawyer's going to say, "Well, I don't see anything in the file here. You're telling me this is a problem person, there's nothing documented." That's a problem. Not provided undocumented correction or guidance. Most of the things that are going to take place, and, and let me tell you, there's every difference in the world between the word "management" and "leadership." Okay, management is like putting out fires and dealing with stuff that comes day-to-day. Leadership is getting ahead of it and taking people where they, they want to, they, they really want to go, but you have to show them how to get there. So, so not having that day-to-day, not micromanaging, but, but, you know, hey, doors open, you need, you need some guidance on how to do this. We've got young lawyers in our office who come in all the time, "Brad, have you ever encountered this?" Probably so. Let's don't reinvent the wheel, here's some things you can avoid, and just doing that day-to-day type of, of leading. Ignoring the issue is an absolute leadership failure. Second type of problem is, is when it's, and it's, it's, it's just going to continue within the, the department or the office. Second problem is exporting the problem. So, you ignore it, or you can move it away. It's not, not fair to other departments, not fair, fair to other governments, for example. Let's, let's drive this knucklehead to another county. Well, that's not going to solve the problem. Leadership abdication, and it's a negative cycle. So, what I would, example here, we had somebody who was brought in to a pretty high position at, at the county, and this person was a bad fit. And, and example I can use, you know, you, you go in the military in your early part of your career, there's something called "failure to adapt." That's a type of discharge you can get. And everybody remember, heard of the boxer named Riddick Bowe? Have you heard of this guy? Okay, he, he had a lifelong dream, he wanted to join the Marine Corps. He, he wanted to join the Marines. So, he goes down to Paris Island, he gets off the bus, those little yellow footprints, and he's standing there. It's like, average-looking guy, average, then this enormous guy, the drill instructors were like, up here like this, trying to get up in his face, and they're just yelling, and he's like, you know, "I, I, I was in the room with Mike Tyson, I've fought everybody in the world, I'm not really intimidated by you." And, and so, the point is not to be intimidated, but the point is to be trained, and he just didn't say, "Yeah, other than putting the uniform on, I really don't want to do the things that a Marine does." He kind of washed out. Example is, if you fail to adapt, you can kind of move that person out with a discharge. In this case, there's really nothing like that, especially if you hadn't put anything in the file. So, what, what this particular department did is they moved this employee who was a bad fit, rather than showing her maybe out the door, they moved her to another department in the county. And not only moved her to another department in the county, put her in charge of something that was kind of a niche area within that department that required a lot of special expertise. And guess what? That didn't really work out either. And then later, you know, the lawsuit followed, I don't know exactly what's happening, but, but exporting the problem, rather than dealing with it on the front end with corrective, corrective guidance. I mean, it's like Mr. Brown said, "I'm here to show you how to do this and assist you with it. I'm trying to set you up for success, not export you to somebody else." So, that, that's, those, and so, what this, the consequences of this are different treatment. Not everybody may get treated the same in a situation like that, kind of like the squeaky wheel gets the grease type of thing. Morale plummets for everybody else in the office who sees a special treatment given to a person. Services, ultimately, for the citizens suffer, so we don't have the right people in the right, in the job. Increases our liability exposure, we get sued. And the time, effort, money, just defending claims and lawsuits because we had a personnel issue that got handled wrong from, from the beginning. And, and one of the points Mr. Brown talked about, beginning with the end in mind, that was not done with, with that particular hire. All right, this is exacerbated by key leadership turnover. I mentioned it in last year's presentation, and this was an informal survey of, of one, of me, trying to remember all the people we've lost since, since 2012. 2012 was a watershed moment. All the administrators, council turnover, department directors, finance directors, procurement directors, and it was in the 20s. That's just tough when you have that leadership turnover. Ambiguous chain of command, you know, where's the buck stopping the department? And one of the things I love about going back and doing some of my military duty, there's going to be accountability. There's going to be a chain of command, somebody's word is his bond, there's going to be a strategy and a plan. Now, what there's also going to be is institutional-level bureaucracy in the military, but you're also going to get some of these other things. So, accountability, so we get things like, "Well, mistakes were made, but no one made them." No, no, the buck stops me and my department. If, if, if my person messed up, then I messed up. And, and that's what you've got to have with a leader. And it's exacerbated by a lack of strategic vision and planning. If we don't know where we're going, we're not going to know how we got there. All right, let's shift here, shift on this. At, at any point, the lunch is ready, please let me know, because I know you'd rather probably jump on that than, than here. All right, how much is corporate history worth? Well, we had a story that came out recently that, that Richland County got this letter out of the blue from, from some, somebody called, you know, Diamond, and sent it to Mr. Seals, the then administrator, and the county attorney, and, let's see. And so, was supposed to be given, you know, the administrator said, and council directed attorney, you know, "Take that over to SLED." Well, well, you know, why SLED and, and not some other law enforcement? Well, you know, we can send it to the sheriff, but council, you know, approves the sheriff's budget, that doesn't look real good. Might not be completely independent. So, SLED, that's a logical place you would think to send. But SLED said they had no available record of the investigation into the allegations. Well, that makes us look bad, doesn't it? Makes us look like we didn't do what we're supposed to do, derelicting our duty, and the county's covering up some scandal. That's, if the story stopped there, we've got a real problem. That's, that's a story that came out January 10th. All right, let's see the story that came out a few days later. SLED did have a letter implicating Richland County, and the agency produced a letter in response to, "Great use of FOIA." FOIA asked for it, and they produced the letter. Seal said that he and, and two lawyers, three guesses on who those were, and the first two don't count, met with SLED chief, other law enforcement officers. Everybody in that room was an honorable gentleman. They were all men, everybody in there was an honorable gentleman. Confidential request for assistance, here's the late, uh, date of the letter, and this is what we asked for. Conduct whatever investigation may be appropriate of potential implications in the, in the dang-dang letter we got, which is self-explanatory. Okay, this is all a matter of public record. I mean, everybody's got seen the letter now, they know about the meeting. And, and, so I think, you know, the, the, the PR person at SLED is a new person, so he probably didn't know anything about this. "No, you know anything about it?" "No, I don't," but, but his spokes he worked for did, because this meeting occurred three years ago. So, then the question becomes, this is a story four days later. The question becomes, what happened between January 10th and January 14th? Corporate knowledge, which in this case equals Larry Smith, saved Richland County from charges of covering up a scandal, potential criminal charges for obstructing justice. Hey, there's some criminal allegations, what are you going to do with it? Pitch? No, we got to send it on law enforcement. A nightmare PR scenario, accusations of dereliction of duty, which would be defamatory, because there was no dereliction, and a collapse in confidence of government, all because we had the corporate knowledge of an attorney who's been here 30-plus years and knows the history of Richland County. So, that's the value. So, when we go back to key leadership turnover, that, that can hurt an organization. And I can recall years ago, and I use this phrase all the time, change is not necessarily progress. We got a computer upgrade, okay, years ago. Well, that upgrade resulted in every one of my emails and most of my Word documents disappearing from the face of the earth, they're gone. Take all those emails and throw them away, that's what I got left, nothing. All right, I was pretty philosophical about it. I, I called administration and IT, saying, "Hey, you know, my emails are gone." They panicked, and they got somebody to do a recovery. And this, we're talking how long ago this was, this was like a floppy disk of stuff to recover. And they got them all back, and the reason they wanted it back is, they know that we've got the email from George Bush's first administration that's going to pull somebody out of a crack because somebody's going to say, "We never got the letter." I mean, we've got that stuff on file because of the corporate knowledge, and that's the value of that, and we do that. I mean, Mr. Smith, how often, how often do you, do you come to me and say, "You remember that thing from 14 years ago," and what, and, and we get the email, and it, problem goes away? All right. All right, let me talk about this briefly, because this, again, what does this have to do with legal issues? It can lead to legal issues if we don't know where we're operating. All right, Mr. Walker, you can't answer this one. What, anybody know these, strategic, operational, tactical? Anybody know what I'm talking about, the differences with these? Let me just give you a really quick example. Say, Richland County wants to do a transportation project, doing, doing lots of those. And so, that project's going to involve building a lot of roadways, and let's say we're going to have a backhoe operator who's going to do a lot of digging. All right, well, knowing how to dig in the holes and, and where to put these things, that's at the tactical level. It's a skill, I wouldn't know how to do that, I'd probably dig up a power line, mess it up. Tactical level of how to do that. Where we're going to dig the holes is the operational level. Do a project in the Northeast, Lower Richland, Irma, what have you. But at a strategic level, we're asking the question, "Why are we digging the holes? Why are we doing this?" And the answer is, to make it easier for people to get around Richland County, encourage folks to come visit us, place people want to live and work, that's the strategic level. You should be operating as council members almost exclusively at that level. So, when you look at it, and the facilities presentation, and the director says, you know, "Here's all the slides with the detail," you don't need to know where the decimal points are and all the little details about what it's budgeted. What you need to know is, he doesn't have the resources to get it done. So, the big picture is, straighten out that situation so we don't have a facilities problem. And that's operation, operate at the strategic level, which I would encourage you to think big picture on that. All right, let's give an example of that. This is an ordinance, we've talked about this before. This is in the utility section, talking about the 1970s. "Council certifies that water and sewers is being provided for, or funds have been budgeted for such service, and funds have been applied for, and that the unincorporated area of the county constitutes a DSA-designated service area." So, that means every place that's not the city of Columbia, or Forest Acres, or, you know, Hopkins, any place that's not incorporated, is the unincorporated portion, and the county's supposed to provide water and sewer for. Then there's this section, pursuant to a 1978 referendum. Folks, that's 42 years ago. "The citizens and the county undertook a county-wide plan for providing water and sewer services under its obligation under home rule, and under, oh gee, we got, now we got a constitutional provision thrown in here too." So, this is not just ordinance, state law, but now we get constitution. "The county is under an obligation to furnish the services required in orderly comprehensive plan." And then look at this language, particularly since portions of the county have been, and at the present time, the present time, folks, this is for the internet, present time is 1978. "In desperate need of sewer and water facilities and the health, safety, and welfare of the county's citizens." Well, that's about as basic as it gets, isn't it? I mean, if you're not looking out for the health, safety, welfare, if we're not as an organization, then what's our point? I mean, that's the fundamental thing in government. "Of the county's citizens must be protected as a part of the county's legal..." Look at that, look at that right there, "as well as moral obligation." Who talks about morals in 2020? I mean, we all should be, but I mean, you don't, that's, that's like hearing a word righteous, other than in a church presentation. You just don't hear that anymore. Legal as well as moral obligation. And so, my point is, when you think strategic level, are we going to be self-sustaining in water or not? And if we're not, I, I'd encourage you to revisit that ordinance and change it, just so you know what, ain't going to happen. But leaving that on the books, but then not having this question answered is a disconnect. So, that's a strategic level decision, are we going to be self-sustaining? And that would transform Richland County. It's like the US dependence on Middle Eastern oil. Richland County being self-sustaining in water would transform the county. Yes, it would cost a lot. Does the county want to relocate its major service headquarters? Is there something wrong with 2020? I mean, maybe there is. Maybe there is, but in the private sector, you proceed from need to solution. We don't want to proceed from assets to how to use them. We want to proceed from need to solution, so if we need to move for 2020, this is a great thing for you to think about strategically. If we don't, we own a shopping mall, what are we going to do with it? And that's a strategic decision. What problem are we trying to fix? This is, this is planning in a nutshell, you're going to get all kinds of classes on planning. Two things, what are we going to do and how are we going to do it? That's planning, right there. How do we property line our ends, ways, and means? You know what I'm talking about here, ends is where we're going, ways is how we're going to get there, means is the resources to do that. And that's what you do with planning. Flawed strategy can lead to legal problems. Poor planning can lead to legal problems. Deficient execution can lead to legal problems. This is where we experience this because we started from a bad, a bad place. And have we assembled the right team for the job, which, which I know Mr. Brown's working hard on doing. And, and that comes back to making Richland County a great place to work and want to be. And so, that's what, then the point of this, so appreciate his, his thoughts on leadership in the previous, previous presentation. All right, shift on this, so tensions among competing interests, let me give you an example. Economic development versus transparency. Well, I showed you in the executive session slide, one of the things to talk about in executive session is, is economic development. Now, a few, a couple of years ago, the county was directed to come up with a policy for buying and selling property. So, I think you had a piece or two that was sold, and somebody said, "Well, shoot, y'all didn't put it for sale." If I'd known you were going to sell that property, I'd have thrown my hat in there. Or, "You're looking to buy a piece of property?" "Man, I got 40 acres, I'd be happy to sell you that." So, so, you know, let, get more transparent. Well, that's great, but then on the economic development side, we have property transactions that are discussed in executive session, which is completely legal, you can do that. But what I'm saying is, kind of sends a mixed signal to staff. Do you want us to do the due diligence and advertise it, or do you want us to go for a great deal that a, that a developer's talking about? Again, there's not an answer to this right now, it's something to think about because it's, it's a tension, is why I call it that. Developers and homeowners. I'm a developer, I come to, and again, I'll preface this, 90-plus percent of the developers are responsible. 95, 90, whatever, you know, whatever, whatever the, the number is. But it's like you spend 90% of your problem on 10% of the people, you know, it's the few who aren't. So, the person comes in, "I'm going to build this subdivision, I'll build the roads. Roads ain't going to be worth anything, but I'm going to build them, I'm going to deed them over to the homeowners association, and then me and my little LLC are going, boom, we're going to disappear." And then, what are you going to do now? And so, the folks start calling you, the council member, and the point at which you come into this is when the council member who's now a home, or the citizen who's a homeowner says, "Man, I got potholes in my road, I mean, you know, the standards kind of won't take them over." And so, you get one side of it, and, and so, you go back to the beginning, years earlier, when the developer says, "You know what, I'm going to build houses, and that's going to help economic development, help growth." And so, that's a great thing, take care of citizens is a great thing. So, where do you draw, where do you come down on this? So, what I'm saying is, you're going to get pressure from developers to, to, to kind of relax the standards, and you're going to get pressure on the back end from homeowners to increase the standards. And you've got to draw a line. So, when we do things like bonded developments, how many years you want that bond to run? That's a strategic level decision. Another tension, business-friendly versus nuisance-averse, I just want to give an update on this. I know council a few, few months ago passed the public nuisance ordinance. I, I don't, maybe that thing's been used once, I don't know, so we, we kind of wanted an update, how's it going? As far as I know, this has not been indiscriminately used, and I'm surprised we don't have Chief here, because usually they send a representative, but I'm sure he's quite busy at home, but, but, to get any thoughts. But it's, as far as I know, that nuisance ordinance has been responsibly used. We can talk about it if you've got any concerns.
Yeah, there's some problems with the law.
With the ordinance or with the enforcement?
With the enforcement. And, well, that might be the parking, the parking part of it.
The park, yeah, that's a, I know what you're talking about, like, the park, yeah, we're, I'm sorry, for this, that's, that's a component of it.
That's a dis-ism, okay.
Yeah. But that's a good point. So, again, I've already covered this part. Let's look at, all right, whether you're a council person or a staff person, you're going to have a citizen come up, and it's got to be something we do to help this person, everybody's a desire to help. And a lot of times, it's, you know, you think about the ombudsman's office, they even call folks customers, so we're in the customer service. And, and you talk to PR folks, and they never want to say "no comment" because they want to give a comment. Then you talk to legal, it's like, well, no comment may be the best thing you could say, and you, you're trying to help your constituents, you're trying, it must be something we can do. So, you've got to spot these issues. A citizen approaches you about whatever, what are you going to do? First, my recommendation is, listen to, let, let them say what they got to say, because a big part of it is just vetting, getting it out, they want somebody to listen to you, and, and gather all the information, and, and, again, active listening. Spot the issues as they're going along. "Okay, what you're describing to me sounds like it might be in a different part of the county," that type of thing. What is the issue they have? What's the issue and what's the real issue? Is it a public issue, a private issue, is it a combination, a little bit of both? Does it have anything to do with Richland County? "Hey, councilman so-and-so, you know, I got in this wreck on Two-Notch Road, and this guy hit me, and, you know, and I, I want something done about it." "Well, was it a Richland County person who hit you?" "No, he wasn't Richland County." "Was it a Richland County car?" "Well, no, he didn't have a car." "Well, does this have anything to do with Richland County? What happened on Two-Notch Road, where do you think Two-Notch Road is?" "It's in Richland County." But other than the fact that it geographically occurred in the county, does it involve a county action? Okay, and if it doesn't, you may ultimately end up tactfully telling that person there's not a lot you can do in that situation. Is it purely a neighbor dispute? Folks, the neighbor who ticks off the other neighbor is as much of a citizen of Richland County as the person who's complaining about that person. So, you've got a pure neighbor dispute about something. Maybe something the county can do may not be. So, what I'm saying is, just listen first before you promise anything. Where is this happening? "Oh, what you're describing is terrible, but it occurred within the city of Columbia, and they have their own government that can deal with those types of issues. And in fact, we may be prevented from working in Columbia on that issue." Is it a federal or state preemption? I wish Ms. Kennedy were here because I, we talked about these community residential care facilities, and you have to think about fair housing laws, federal laws. She's got a rehab facility in her neighborhood, it's a concern, legitimate concern, but it may be preempted by federal or state law. And then you lastly, you say, "Hey, thanks for letting me know about this, I will look into it and be back in touch." If, if you're pinned so bad that you've got to give an answer right on the spot, that's going to be the one that's going to come back and bite you. Going to give a little time to give your thought, your, your issue, the attention it deserves, and I'll be back in touch. And then you talk to the staff, "Hey, is there anything we can do for this person?" You know, and, and that's basically it, so triaging the issue.
I mean, how many more slides have I got for this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was informed that lunch was ready.
I would, at this point, probably recommend you take that, and then I, I kind of wrap up, because I don't, I don't want to stand between you and lunch and... up, 'cause I don't, I don't wanna stand between you and lunch and... We're way ahead, I think we're probably way ahead, this was supposed to start at two o'clock. When you finish it, what do you wanna do?
You can finish when we come back, but you got time.
Yeah, yeah, how much more, the question is, or you can just finish when we get back, yeah?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have that much more. Well, we do have the, uh, case update.
Yeah, so are you ready for lunch? Are we doing lunch and pickup from, right after lunch then?
How about, how about we do this, 'cause, 'cause we, 'cause it may be a natural break to do the case update, which will not take that long, and actually, I am almost done with everything but the case update, so if you want, I can do, maybe fly through this. Oh, I've only got a couple more slides. You wanna do this, just kinda roll, and we'll, we'll do the couple of slides, break, and then come back when we do the case update, that way it doesn't inconvenience.
Go ahead and get a couple slides on the way.
Like two more slides. All right, so if, with your indulgence, so we'll fly through this. Um, so, we, we've, we've heard about, you know, county putting out fires, and that's kinda reactive, and, and so for years, I've been talking about, let's do some prevention out there, maybe, maybe it'll take, maybe it won't, so we've done some preventive training. I have put together this training program, it's called Wisdom at Work. Now, let me tell you right now, this is not your presenter's autobiography. Okay, I've made plenty of unwise mistakes, but what we're talking about is, you know, smart people learn from their mistakes, wise people learn from other people's mistakes. So I put this together, and the impetus for this, some of you will recall, a few years ago, and I think this was around the Ferguson situation, we had a couple people at the county who, county employees, who posted something on social media or something about, it was a politically charged statement, and it came to the administrator's attention, and he said, look, man, you know, I, I love you, but you can't say those types of things and then also be a service provider for the whole county, and so it cost those two people their job. And so, a- at the time, I was in Germany doing a military exercise, twelve, you know, six in the morning over there, midnight over here, I'm, I'm reading about this, and I say, you know what, that person said some things that were har- that were hurtful, but he, he or she also has to go home to his or her spouse that evening, or the next day, and say, and she said, what, how was work today? Well, it was great up until I lost my job at the county. What was that dang county, what did they do, lay you off? No, no, they, they didn't lay me off, I, I, my position's still there, I just, I just, I got fired. Where'd you get fired? You're the best whatever in the county. Well, it's for something, you know, I posted on the, or, what? It's for something I posted on the internet. You know, Facebook posts, that's your private Facebook account, what do you mean, you lost your job over that? Well, that's not the way the county sees it. You know, 'cause they have policies and procedures about how you use the internet, and I violated them. And so then, well, you know what, about that time, little kid runs up, says, hey daddy, can we go to dinner tonight? Well, daddy doesn't have any more money, so let's, let's not do that. And the wife says, well, you know what, you need to go out tomorrow and start getting a job. And so the person puts the application in, maybe they get an interview, oh, great, you know, you're really qualified for this, man, you're, I just, I'm just out of curiosity, why, why did you, why'd you leave your last job? Well, I was, I was fired. What were you fired for? Inappropriate internet use. Hmm, you know, that's, that's, that could be a problem, because, you know, given that this is the twenty-first century, our, our office uses computers too, and you've already lost one job for how you misuse the internet. I'll tell you what, we'll keep your resume, good luck to you. That, you know, and you're done. For, for a thirty-second decision about posting something, that, how many likes is that worth on your, on your ding-dang page? Lost a job. So I put this training together, 'cause I don't wanna see people lose their jobs over stuff they did, and so when we talk about, what's the source of wisdom, and the reason for this is, there's an ordinal ranking to these things. You got wisdom beneath that, you got knowledge, then you got information, then you got data, then you got trivia. Information, and this is not an IT thing, because you need information, but it's what you do with it. So information is two steps beneath wisdom. Folks, that's not, that's unacceptable. We wanna be wise, we don't just wanna be informed. All right, so wisdom and how we communicate, this is the bulk of the class, I do a huge class on emailing, texting, internet, and social media, and how not to get yourself in trouble, how to get your organization in trouble, and basically, how to avoid these conflicts that could totally mess up you and your family. Uh, U.S. strategic culture, wow, what does that have to do with the law? So I delve into that, I delve into strategy and planning, I delve into acquiring wisdom, and the wisdom of ult- and decision-making. So we go into all this, it's one of the classes we do, got a couple of them coming up in the next couple of weeks, a lot of staff attend, then we do FOIA training, we do something here, county code enforcement officer training, teach these folks how to go out and issue, uh, uh, or basically make sure that fire codes are being enforced, building codes, uh, animal care, those types of things, we do that type of training, again, all designed to prevent problems, uh, do training for tax officials. All right, I think we've covered this in, in, in previous sessions, but the one I wanna mention on this slide, if, you might wanna think about at some point, if you're not already doing this, we have this deal where the administrator can do certain contracts up to a hundred thousand dollars. I, I, I'd give a little more, uh, express, you know, note of this, because not just a contract, but is it a matter where the administrator can, can deal with it if it's up to that amount? It might be something good in your bu- in your budget ordinance, just a one-time annual thing that makes it very clear what he can and can't do, uh, just something to think about. Uh, and the last thing I'll, I'll mention is, uh, memorializing executive sessions, we, we gotta find a way to make sure, I think it was previously expressed, we're on the same page, everybody knows, when we come out and say, proceed as discussed in executive session, everybody knows to a T what that means. I, I just think that would help us with, with going forward, but anyway, that's the natural place where this would break, we got one more slide, very quick, on a case update, I think if we do it after lunch, we can just inconvenience probably Mr. Marchant only, uh, for a few minutes, a- and that way we can roll. I, I wanna do most of it, it's an open session, 'cause it's, it's not, it's not privileged. Any questions on what we talked about so far? All right, well, thank you, hope you enjoy your lunch.
All right, it's, it's one-ten, we'll break back at two-ten.
Good afternoon. Um, before I introduce or bring, ask Ed to come up, and, uh, Ed Gaggen, he's president of Customer Service Solutions, before I ask him to come up, I just wanna say, um, thank you for the time this afternoon, thank you to Mr. Brown, thank you to you all, uh, for giving us an opportunity to talk about strategic planning. Um, it's something that I'm somewhat passionate about, and over the last, I'd say seventeen years, I've done quite a bit of work on strategic planning, um, with, um, smaller programs such as minority women's small business programs, um, larger departments, finance, DSS, as well as jurisdictions, Mecklenburg County and, um, City of Greensboro. So I've been a part of those and helped lead some of those efforts, so I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. And so, um, with that, I'm gonna ask Ed to come up and talk about himself, because I probably couldn't do it justice, so I'm gonna let him talk about himself, and talk about his company, and then talk to you a little bit about why strategic planning is important, um, and what it is, and, and what the benefits from it could be. Okay? Thank you.
Well, thank you all for letting me come and spend a little bit of time with you, and I will talk a little bit about myself and my company, not, not a whole lot, but I'll give you a little bit of background on my company, but what I've been asked to do is to, uh, give you all just a strategic planning overview, just the, the core concepts and, and approach to strategic planning, and in terms of what we'll talk about today, we're actually gonna describe what is strategic planning, kinda give you the what of strategic planning, but also give you the why. Why do organizations participate in strategic planning? What are they hoping to, to get out of the process, get out of the plans? We'll talk about who is typically involved in strategic planning, or who is typically affected by it, uh, and then we're gonna talk about key success factors. So if you do decide to embark on any kind of strategic planning initiative, uh, how do you make sure that the planning process is successful? How do you make sure that, uh, the actual plans are successful as well? And feel free, as we're going along, to interject from your own experience with strategic planning, uh, any kind of comments, or if you have questions, feel free to ask that as well, um, and the more engaged we are, the better, wanna make sure this is beneficial to you. Uh, just to kinda give you a little bit of an overview of CSS, uh, we were founded in nineteen ninety-eight, we're basically a management consulting firm, so that means we do strategy work, whether it is strategic planning, or an organization is trying to, to transform its culture, and they wanna figure out how to do that, or with private industries, if they wanna retain and grow business with existing clients, how do you strategically go about doing that? If they're wanting to, uh, revamp their customer experience, how do you do that? We also do a lot of operations work, so that's everything from process improvement to, uh, redesigning service delivery processes, we do research and training, so the research may be mystery shopping, it might be surveys, it might be focus groups, intercept interviews, and the training, uh, is everything from leadership training to frontline service excellence training. Industries, uh, you can see they're represented in that graphic to the right, the graphic's a little bit dated, but it'll give you a little bit of a feel for the kind of organizations we work in. Uh, we do a lot of work in local government, um, so you'll see Mecklenburg County, and the City of Charlotte, and the City of Aiken, and Union County Government, those are some of the organizations that we've worked with. Uh, we do work in education, everything from K through twelve, to universities, we also do work in healthcare, uh, and we do a lot of work in pro-sports. Uh, pro-sports has nothing to do with the other industries, we just like sports, uh, so we've worked with a lot of different sports organizations. We did a tremendous amount of work in the early two thousands with the NBA, because they were a heavily sales and marketing oriented organization, and as attendance started to drop, they needed to get better, uh, at fan retention and growth. We've also done work with Major League Soccer, we're doing a lot of work with NASCAR right now, 'cause they're struggling i- in retaining and growing their fan base as well. Uh, I'm the co-founder of CSS, I've been doing consulting, research for over twenty-five years, and the company overall has done, uh, o- over a thousand projects in, in the time since we've been founded. Uh, in terms of the organizations we've worked with, you get a little bit of a feel on the screen for some of those different organizations, it's everything from Charlotte Mecklenburg Library, uh, what we did with them most recently was, we helped them to define a blueprint for what they wanted the library of the future to look like in twenty-twenty-five. So we started on this in twenty-fifteen, completed it around twenty-sixteen, but this enabled them to say, if this is where we wanna be in twenty-twenty-five, what are those three-year plans we need to have by twenty-nineteen, what do we need to accomplish by twenty-twenty, by twenty-twenty-five as well? So by creating the future vision, they were able to do their planning, you can see we've worked with Lancaster County Library, that was a strategic planning project, uh, many different departments and organizations within Mecklenburg County, everything from IT to DSS to the assessor's office, and right now, we're working with Union County Government, we've been doing that for several years, as a matter of fact, uh, last Friday, I facilitated a retreat of their executive leadership, a- and their focus for this particular retreat was, uh, what is our vision for the end of twenty-twenty? So not necessarily the strategic focus long-term, but it was based on their, their vision, their goals for this year were based on, uh, that long-term vision for the organization. So getting into the first of the four major components of, of our time together, I'm gonna talk about, uh, what is strategic planning, and we're gonna define what it is, we'll talk about typical timeframes covered, and then the typical components or pieces in any kind of strategic planning. So, uh, what you're seeing in blue up here on the screen is, is a definition of strategic planning, uh, it's essentially documented actions, a plan obviously is actions, but those actions are based on, uh, what the vision for the organization is, a- and it's typically done over multiple years, so it's not just what's gonna transpire over the next twelve months. A strategic plan says, this is what you want your organization to be like or to accomplish by X year down the road, three, five, or more years down the road, and the strategic plan lays out those goals and objectives, and to some extent, the plans, to actually get you from here to there. At the bottom, we note that a strategic plan requires that an organization has a vision. I mean, you, you have a sense of what you want this organization to become, what you wanna achieve for your community, uh, three years, five years, ten down the road, whatever that timeframe is, so, so that visioning piece is usually one of the first things that you look at, it helps you to get a sense, uh, of what you're planning for. Uh, strategic planning, uh, the process, this gives you a little bit of a sense for the definition of it, again, you're planning, uh, over a period of time, it's not just what do we wanna accomplish this year, but what is that multi-year, uh, plan that we are, are going to embark on over one, from the first year through the third, fifth, et cetera year, uh, to achieve whatever that future vision is for the organization. Uh, if you look at the bottom, it's typically a collaborative approach where, uh, you all may be involved, the leadership may be involved, community residents and stakeholders, management staff may be involved as well, so you're having the voices of all these stakeholders that are a part of the process, uh, and then you're obviously staging actions over time, assigning, in the end, when you get into the nuts and bolts, you know, the roles and responsibilities for actually implementing the plan. So in terms of strategic planning defined, uh, or the, what a strategic plan is, and any questions or comments on that? Okay? So what we're gonna talk about here is timeframes, and this has kind of changed over time, twenty, thirty years ago, when you looked at strategic planning, uh, the timeframes were five years, ten years out, and you're creating plans for five or ten years out. Today, typically strategic plans are looking at three-year, maybe a five-year window, so it's a much shorter timeframe, and the reason why it's a little bit shorter is that, as you can see, uh, circled in that second set of bullets, is that you wanna make sure that your strategic plan, the last year of those actions are actually gonna be applicable. Uh, if you have a five-year strategic plan, whatever you plan to do in year five, you wanna make sure that you're pretty comfortable that those plans are, are still going to apply to whatever that organization is like in five years, to whatever that community is like in five years. And, and the reason why it's shortened is that change happens a lot quicker today than it might have twenty or thirty years ago. Um, just out of curiosity, what are some of the changes that y'all have seen in the community or within this organization in the last five or ten years? Anybody wanna share an example of that?
Go first?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I've seen, um, in communities, a lot of re, um, people moving out of communities, the communities are changing, where the, the, and the communities are getting older.
Mm-hmm.
The residents are getting older.
Yes, ma'am.
So a lot of the residents now are being moved into smaller homes, like nursing homes or other facilities, and then we're getting, you're getting a new life of people that comes into the neighborhoods which may or may not have the same visions as the original owners. I'm seeing businesses along corridors now going out of business because no one actually uses those anymore. All right, so there is, there are a lot of things that's causing a, a deterioration in a lot of communities because of these changes that are happening, that are occurring. Some of our quarters are, are in very bad, some of my quarters are in very bad shape because the businesses are moving out, the people who used to patronize those businesses no longer patronize them, so there's a, you're not getting as much service as you once had at one time. So those are some of the things that's causing a deterioration in commu- in some of my communities that deal with everything.
Yeah, th- those are really helpful examples, because you touched on several things, you talked about demographics changing, people aging out, when, uh, people are getting older, maybe the, the size of the house, or where they wanna live, or where they need to be living, based on their health situation changes, you're talking about businesses, uh, if they don't have the demand for their services, then they might, uh, move out as well. You talked about, uh, as people might move out of an area, different people come into that area with a different vision, different goals, different experience, different definition, maybe a quality of life. So those are great examples of some of the change that, uh, I'm sure has been happening. Are there other examples that y'all would like to share? Yes, ma'am.
Um, the shopping centers, our malls are closing, and we're buying, and, um... And they're closing due to technology, because millennials and more people are shopping online, so we're not needing, um, actually the stores anymore because of online shopping.
Yeah, that's another good example, because you talked about how technology's changing, and how that technology change is impacting your businesses, and now you're trying to figure out, well, how can we utilize the same facilities maybe differently, uh, now that they're not gonna be used for those retail purposes that they were before? And these examples y'all are giving are really good, because a lot of them really highlight what's here under external, your community's changing, we talked about demographics, and the age, and people moving in, and other people moving out. You talked about some of the customers are changing, so the customers are using technology to make their retail purchases, and therefore, the demand for that and physical structures within the community is changing as well. as well. There are competitors to some of those businesses. You talked about those businesses closing down. The financial, the technology touched on. So you talked a lot about the economic change that's going on in the community, the external change that's going on in the community. Internally, you know, there's obviously opportunities for change in any organization, of how you operate's changing, the services you provide is changing, performance expectations of your customers are changing, as well as if the leadership changes. Whenever you have a lot of change, the strategic planning timeframe typically gets a little bit shorter. Because if you're in a situation where your community is changing a lot, your organization is changing a lot, trying to project out a strategic plan for five, or seven, or nine years down the road is more difficult, because it's hard to anticipate what is going to happen internally, what's going to happen in your community, five, or seven, or nine years down the road. So the more change you're anticipating in this organization, or in the community, that would suggest your strategic planning timeframe should be a little bit shorter. So that's something to keep in mind. Yes, ma'am?
That's one of the things to look for.
Yes, sir, okay.
And you brought up a very interesting point, because one of the things that's happened on councils, and it came up earlier, is that, you know, like, things may have been, you know, determined or put in place by a previous council, may not be the same as this council, because these councils tend to change. Somewhere, probably every two to four years, we're going to have a significant turnover. So when that happened, maybe what was planned a couple years ago may not be what, you know, the new, the newer...
Yes, ma'am. The leadership, the new leader.
Officials might, they may not, they may have a different perspective on how to move forward versus what was done in the past, and might want to alter some of those things that were done in the past, because they don't really fall in line with, you know, their expectation.
Yes, and that, that's a really good point. If you're seeing major leadership transitions in and out of the council every three, four years, for example, you would not want to have a strategic plan that is, you know, eight to 10 years out, because obviously, the goals, the focus, the priority, the vision for the organization that was set eight or nine years ago might not apply today. So that's, that's a good example, when you're thinking about that planning window, how narrow you might want to have that, three to four, or five years at the most, it sounds like. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of typical components of a strategic plan, without getting into too much detail about methodology, typically, strategic plans start with a vision. Where do we want to be in that three-year, five-year, whatever-year window? But it also, a strategic plan includes some understanding of what are our current capabilities, our current initiatives, because the idea of a plan is we're going from today to tomorrow. So y'all would want to have a very clear understanding of what the community's going to be like, what the organization's going to be like, what you want it to be like in three to five years versus what it is today, so you can lay out the plans to get there. The third item says strategic imperatives. The word imperative basically means it's something that you must do. If something's imperative, you must do this. So you want to identify some imperatives as well. If this is our vision to, to become this as an organization, or to do this for the community in three to five years, what must this organization do with its people, its talent, its culture? What must it do with its facilities, or its technology, or its services and programs? So along with having that longer-term vision, and that understanding of today, you want to understand, well, the components of an organization, what are our goals for those components, for our people, our facilities, our processes, our technology, et cetera? Having those strategic imperatives identified. Then you get a little bit more tactical. What are our objectives? If this is what we want to become or accomplish in three to five years, what do we need to, where do we need to be by the end of year one? What are our key objectives, those milestones that'll lead us to that long-term vision? And then the last key component typically in a strategic plan are the specific strategies and plans and timelines, and who is going to be charged with doing what. So this is when we get a little bit more granular in the strategic planning process, from the vision all the way down to this person is the champion of this particular set of activities over the next quarter, or something along those lines. Any questions just about these typical components of a strategic plan? Okay. In terms of the rationale for conducting it, this is the second key point, we want to chat about why would organizations go through a strategic plan. We'll give you some overall reasons, and then we'll give you a few more specific examples. But in terms of some of the broader reasons why organizations might go through a strategic planning process, obviously, they want to have a plan. So you, you're creating a plan because you want to have a plan for how we're going to achieve goals. We're not just hoping they happen, but we want to be intentional about it. The second bullet point's interesting, because it talks about, if you go through a strategic planning process, you not only want to set the goals, but you want to have the leaders in that organization agree to, okay, what is our approach going to be for Richland County, for this community, to actually plan for the future, to set a vision for the future? So going through a strategic planning process gives you the opportunity to have an agreement. Okay, this is how we're going to set that plan, how we're going to set that vision. The third is that a strategic plan enables you to do some alignment from, literally from leadership through frontline staff. So if the leadership of an organization, the elected body of an organization says, this is our vision, these are our strategic goals, then at that point, the, the leadership team within that organization can set goals that align, and the management team can set goals that align to what leadership is trying to do. And frontline staff can set goals and have priorities set that, that are going to help the managers achieve their goals. So it allows for some vertical alignment, so that the frontline staff, when they are doing their jobs, when they're out in the field, when they're talking to their customers, whatever the case might be, they understand how what they do impacts the vision of the organization, how what they do helps to achieve organizational goals. So by having a plan, having a vision, it allows that cascading to take place. Also, there's some horizontal benefits, where i-if you have common goals as an organization, then even if I have the IT department, even if I have code enforcement, even if I have HR, they, they can, and some organizations tend to be siloed, but if you have a common vision or a common set of goals, then those organizations have that commonality between them, and there's the opportunity for more collaboration between the different departments, different agencies, different programs, because at least there's a common vision, at least there are, you know, these common organizational goals. It enables more proactive decision-making, because if you understand what the long-term goals are, people are more confident in making decisions today, because they understand, yes, if I make this decision, it'll help to achieve the long-term goals, and you can get some near-term benefits as well. Because these are not just actions that take place in the final year of the plan, you're doing things every month, every quarter, every six months, to, to eventually work toward that long-term plan. Now, looking at these just a little bit more specifically, when organizations want to create a strategic plan, oftentimes, they want to have a common focus or a vision. You know, you might have a set of leaders, or a set of different department heads, or elected officials, whatever the case might be, and, and they, they have their best interests at heart for their constituency, but the organization doesn't have that common vision, or they don't have the common focus. What are we all trying to do together, as opposed to what are we trying to do individually? Creates that common vision. You understand priorities. Everybody at all layers of the organization understands priorities for resource utilization, because the plan says this is our priority. The plan says, you know, this is our vision, this is where we want to go. So the things that help you to achieve that vision are your priorities. It almost serves as a litmus test. When you're trying to decide, do we do Project A or Project B? When we're making a decision, you can always go back and say, which of these will help us to achieve our vision? Which of these will achieve one of these strategic goals we have? And if they're articulated, then you're more confident in setting priorities, making decisions, that sort of thing. If you want to base decisions on what's going to be best for the next three to five years, the plan helps with that. You can intentionally identify and capitalize on opportunities. You know, if there's something economic development-wise, or if there's something technology-wise, that's an opportunity presented, or you're in search of opportunities, if you know what the long-term technology goals or strategy are, you know what the long-term economic development or health and human services goals and strategies are, you can be more proactive about looking for how we can find those opportunities, address them. It allows you to look at internal strengths and inefficiencies potentially, and then deal with all these external challenges that y'all have already talked about already. So there's a lot of different reasons why organizations may decide to do strategic planning, but one maybe clear way to really think about this is to look at a set of questions I'm going to provide to you. So I'm going to offer four questions on the left side, four questions on the right side. The first set of questions are basically what comes out of a plan. So these are the typical components of a plan, or, or part of the deliverables of the plan. What I'm going to show you in a minute on the right side is decisions you make once you have the plan. So, and if you answer no to any of these, essentially, you may want to consider conducting strategic planning processes. So for example, do we have a common vision? You know, if this organization has a common vision, great. If it doesn't have a common vision, common focus, then you may want to consider doing strategic planning. Does this organization operate with a unified set of goals? So we all have the same common goals for the organization, for the community. If so, great. If not, we don't have that unified set of goals that, that you can put up on a board, and, and everybody understands these are organizational goals, then you may want to consider strategic planning. Do you have well-documented priorities, where it's very clear, it's very documented, what are our top priority organizational goals? What are we here to do? What is the business of Richland County? If so, great. If not, you may want to consider strategic planning. And finally, do you have plans that go beyond today, that go beyond the next 12 months, but you're really thinking longer term? If you have those plans, great. If not, you may want to consider strategic planning. The items on the right are primarily, once you have the plans, how you go about making decisions from the plan. So for example, when you're making decisions as a council, as a leadership team, as individual departments, are you making decisions on a common set of criteria? Does the whole organization know what those common goals are? If so, that's great. If not, then maybe you need a plan to, to articulate those goals for yourselves, for staff, et cetera. Do you, when those potential opportunities arise, do you know whether to capitalize them or not? Again, a strategic plan serves as a litmus test. If you know what the ultimate vision is, you know what your organizational goals are, when you get that economic development opportunity, you get that retail center that's closed down, and you're thinking of redeveloping that center for something else, you know whether or not to act on that opportunity, because you know whether or not that'll help you achieve your goals. Do we seek out performance improvement opportunities, and do we have a plan to be successful even as these external changes y'all stated continue? So these are different questions, eight different questions, and if you answer no to some of these, then that would probably lean you toward considering doing strategic planning. If, if y'all are comfortable in saying yes to all of these, then you may be well-positioned as it is. So before we move on, I'm just kind of curious, are, are any of these, when you look at these eight, are any of them pretty obvious yeses to y'all right off the bat?
No.
Any of those?
I got four no's on the game plan.
I got four no's on the game plan.
Okay. Okay. What about on the decision-making? Any of those obvious yeses at this point? Okay. Okay. So based on the crickets I'm hearing, and the, the shaking of the heads, I mean, this may be, obviously, this is a brief presentation, but, you know, based on how you're answering these to yourself, and what you've shared, you know, this is definitely something y'all may benefit from. So, okay. In terms of the who of strategic planning, we're going to talk about this from two different perspectives. First, the audiences of a strategic plan, and then specifically, who might be involved in the plan. And when we talk about audiences, there's a couple of key questions to, to think about. Essentially, the audiences, these are the people who are going to be looking at the plan. So who will read the plan? Who will utilize the plan? Who might help implement the plan? You want to have an understanding of who these folks are going into strategic planning, because even if they're not intimately involved in the process, you kind of want to know what their opinion is. You want to understand the voice of that stakeholder group, the voice of that customer group. When you see these three questions at the bottom, are there any obvious gaps that are missing in those bullet points? When you think about who might be reading a strategic plan, utilizing it, and implementing it? You know, we've talked about some of the groups at the top. Any others pop to mind that, you know, might be potential audiences for a strategic plan? Okay. I know I worded them kind of broadly. Yes, ma'am?
People who might be looking to move or invest in our county.
Yep, that's, yeah, that's a great point. You know, people who may not live here presently, work here presently, but are consider live, considering living here, moving their business here, investing here, you know, they might be audiences of the plan. So when you're developing the plan, what do we know in terms of how others outside of this community, how they look at us, and how they make their decisions about whether to invest here, whether to move here as well? So that might be a voice you might want to do a little bit of research on, or try to gain an understanding of, you know, as you're embarking on this process. That's a great example. Okay. Now, in terms of who to potentially involve in the development process, these are very typical groups, obviously, you all, executive leadership. You might have representative managers and staff, particularly as you get into some of the details of the plans, and you're, and you're talking about, well, what are we trying to do in year one to achieve the year-one objectives? What are we trying to do in year two? Who might be the responsible parties, or champions of those? Even if you don't involve a lot of community constituents, obviously, y'all are representatives of the community, or customers, I'm sure there's a lot of data out there through surveys. There's ways to incorporate the voice of the customer, the voice of the community, without necessarily having to conduct new research. So we always suggest to people, when you're embarking on this, you want to tie in the voice of the community, the voice of your customers, but look at what research already exists. So there might already be data that the county has acquired, that individual departments, or agencies, or programs have, that might give you a sense for what they are looking for, what their current satisfaction level is, that sort of thing as well, that you could potentially tap into. Okay? Just to kind of go through our last section here, this is really getting into some guiding principles for y'all to consider, some key success factors as well. The guiding principles are talking about the strategic planning process. The key success factors are more focused on the implementation of the plan. So when you're thinking about developing the plan, and you're thinking about what, what are some things we need to make sure we're doing, so that the planning process itself is successful? The first item talks about aligning to what the community vision is, or the voice of the community. So if there is a stated, or an understood, or a clear vision of the community, you want to understand what that is, because you all obviously are an important part of the community, but part of what you all do is to fulfill a role for the community. So you want to know what the greater community's vision is. If you have an understanding of, of what the community's goals are, their priorities as a whole, that'll inform your plans, so that, in, in theory, what you all should do should enable the success of the folks that you all represent. So understanding that is exceptionally important. Second item in the plan development process is you want to plan the plan. So you want to be very clear about how we're going to go through this process, who's going to be involved, how long it's going to take, the mechanics of it as well. Make sure that those key stakeholders that need to be involved are included. We talked about having a concurrent communication plan. As I mentioned, not everybody who is going to be affected by the plan is necessarily involved in the planning process, but we always recommend having a concurrent communication plan. So if you have a planning process, six months, a year, 18 months, whatever you all have, it's always good to, at the same time, have a six-month, year, 18-month communication plan, where even if individual stakeholders or community partners are not involved in the details of the planning process, you are communicating to them, this is what we're going to be doing and why. This is what we just accomplished, you know, this is where we're at in the process. So nobody is seeing the plan and hearing about it for the first time when it's done. Your stakeholders know what's going on, know why it's going on, they know when they have their opportunities for input, you know, they are being communicated with along the way. The next bullet talks about working as a team, where if we're trying to look at the vision of the community, or the vision for this organization, based on what'll help the community achieve its vision, we want to make sure, whatever self-interest we are, a back burner temporarily, we're focusing on the greater good for the community, and the vision for the organization, and serving that community, make sure we're very transparent, we're, we're being data-driven, and in the end, make sure the plan is very clear, organized. So anybody who would pick it up would understand what it is, and what the plan is, whether it's a frontline staff member, or any member of the community. It's agile, that's just a fancy way of saying flexible. You know, we talked about all the change that might happen two, three, four years down the road. Just make sure if some of that change happens, whether it's some new economic opportunity, or an economic slowdown, or, you know, some kind of change in personnel, that the plan can continue and, and be refined as you go along, and then make sure it's achievable. So you're not biting off more than you can chew. The plan, you have the resources, and you're devoting the resources to actually get it done. And in terms of the last slide, key success factors for implementing, just make sure that the process reflects whatever your organizational values are, whatever your desired culture is. So I'm not overly familiar with what your desired culture is as an organization, or, or the core values, but if there's transparency involved, if there's inclusiveness involved, if there's data-driven involved, you know, if there is this set of values, or typical types of cultural attributes that you want to see reflected in your staff, when they're working with each other, when your staff, when they're serving customers, just make sure that the process of doing this is reflective of that. The second item, and this is getting, again, kind of detailed, but when you get into the details of the plan, and you're literally saying, these are our objectives to reach the long-term goal, and these are the specific action items, it always helps to have a member of leadership to be an executive champion, that even though they might not be doing those individual actions in the plans, they're the one that's responsible for making sure that they're getting done. And then you have that responsible staff person somewhere in the organization who is responsible for doing that activity that deals with your talent, or your IT, or the program, whatever the specifics of the plan are, that you have those individual point people at the staff level, the executive champion, so that we do have people who are owning this, they're taking responsibility for it. It obviously creates accountability for it as well. So having that identified is, is important. We talked about the flexibility, make sure it's measured, you're measuring not only the, the outcomes, are we achieving the outcomes we were looking for, but are things getting done by the time you expect them to get done? So we're measuring that, reporting on that. And then we have the accountability pieces in place, where we're tracking how well are we doing against the plan, and then we also have the celebrations in place, where when we are hitting the target dates for action, or we are seeing some benefit in the community, or in the organization, you know, we're succeeding along the way. We're not just waiting till that three-year timeline to, to, to celebrate. You know, we are celebrating as we go along, and we're really realizing that it's not one giant step to the, to the year three, it's a series of small successes that will help us in the end to achieve whatever that plan is. So that's the overview I had planned on presenting today. Before I hand it off to Clayton, are there other comments or, or questions that you all have at this point?
Specific comments or questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
This is my, this is my heartbeat right here. When you say a plan, this council consists of 11 single-member districts, and each one of us have a certain thing that's going on. And how do, I think what we need to look, in my opinion, is find a plan that would incorporate, you know, what's going on in Mr. Jackson's district that's real important, what's going on in Ms. Myers and others' districts that's, that are real important, that's at the top of the list, and put that in a plan, and figure out how you're going to do it. Because when you talk about a plan... I remember before I came, that's why I said councils change. When I came on council, we had neighborhood improvements, you know, and I, when every time I drive down Decker Boulevard to see that nice sign sitting up there, international corridor, and I look at the rest of the communities, and we can't even get one, and when we get one, it ain't, you know, not, you know, it's not the same. So, then there were some communities that didn't even have a strategic plan, so the rest of us, like me, I, my, my, I, my mama had eight children, she didn't come out there with one bar of candy, she better come out with eight. And the fact, fact of the matter, when they came up with these plans, you know, like they were eleven districts and five plans, and like the rest of the little children didn't get what they were supposed to get, and I was one of them. So, now, when you was talking about planning, you better start planning so you can touch everybody, rather than touching one, and the rest of us don't get nothing, because see, that's when, you know, you know, a little potent child go like, well, I didn't get what I'm gonna get, I ain't gonna support that, you know, so, I mean, that becomes, you know, in other words, I get mad. And I think, I'm just telling it like it is, that may not be the way somebody may put it, but I'm just saying it the way I see it, and that's the way it has been done. Thank you.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's really helpful, because you want to have a common vision for the organization, but remember, the second point we talked about was, then, before you create the plan, you have to have an understanding of where we are today. So, you know, if different districts are in different places, then, you know, how do we try to move the whole organization, or the whole community toward that common vision? And, you know, the pace of progress, or the focus for one area may be a little bit different for the other, but it's all trying to move the, the community as a whole toward the common vision, so that's a great point.
Ms. Newton, then, Mr. Manning.
Sure. I, I just wanted to, to say that I, I could not support this idea more, as you know, in fact, I made a motion during the last budget process that we do this, but I'm really excited that we're having this conversation, and again, and to Ms. Dickerson's point, just to acknowledge that, that I understand that those challenges are there, I, I know that I've worked with some companies that are global organizations, and they have the same thing, where you have to have, what are we doing for the corporation as a whole, and how are you doing in this country, or that country? So, I'm sure that if we find the right framework, we can work it out for all of our districts, but I, I certainly acknowledge that, and I'm excited to incorporate those elements as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Manning, then, Ms. Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've missed the point, sir, Mr. Speaker, of what Ms. Dickerson was trying to say here, because in your page 122, it looks like, align to the community vision and the voice of the community. What she's saying is, we've got several different communities, each one has their own needs and desires to the exclusion of the others, so we can't lump them into this. We'd still need several different plans to address the voices of the few communities that may look, look alike.
Yes, you, you definitely may-
We've got a whole big problem there.
Right. You may need to tailor, you know, certain parts of the plan, you know, based on what's unique about the needs of one area of the community versus another area of the community. Yes.
Mr. Manning?
I did have Ms. Manning, thank you.
Uh-uh, you had, uh-uh, Mr. Manning.
Yeah, Ms. Manning, next.
Well, since you don't want to speak, I, I will, I think I lost my thought, but what did you say, Ms. Manning?
Okay, we got several different communities with different needs and desires, but it's not all one, like it says here, align for a community vision, there's naturally one community vision out there.
Yeah, I, I think I lost my thought, because I, I raised my hand when he was speaking, but this is, like I said, I'll repeat again, this is my heartbeat, this strategic plan, and how we actually plan that is equitable across the board, and we may not, maybe what might be identified in one community may help, may be the same that it's across everything, but how do you fix it so that, you know, each community knows that, okay, this is being addressed, and perhaps, you know, in two years, as we go through the line, yours are next in line, and stuff like that, but they are inclusive in the plan. I think what we see is a lot of people that are excluded, you know, and because they feel excluded, it's hard sometimes to get them to get engaged, because they feel like, I've been coming here for the longest, I've been asking for certain things, and it's never been done, so why should I participate? I think in starting, getting, building that enthusiasm back in communities who felt like they have been overlooked, and not been taken care of through some of the planning, that we've done through previous administrations, and, you know, council members, et cetera.
And Ms. Dixon, I think, you know, we can still have one broad vision for the county, you know, going back to Ms. Myers' concern earlier about fire service. Of course, the broad vision is going to be, you know, effective fire service all across the county.
That's what I'm saying.
But we look at each, you know, we may look, may look at one district and say it's going to require these things to get to that particular goal, then in this, we just haven't done a good job of that, I think, in the past.
Well, I, I think that's what I'm trying to say, we're going to look at fire, especially in places, if we look at fire, look at what areas are okay, and look at the areas that, you know, may be lacking, and may have not been able to benefit from the plan, so look at how we address it, we put it in the fire, look at it from a whole, and deal with it.
Right. I, I'll give you a second, but we're going to have the same goal for all of them, but may require different things to get to that same goal.
Absolutely, that's true.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
One quick comment, if I can, to the chair?
Yes, please.
Real quick, I think one of the things, if I was to go at the end, we talk about a series of small successes, and I think that would be very beneficial for us, to have a series of small successes, so that we don't be just uncomfortable with the fact that we're going to achieve something very large, and we can, because we build a lot of small successes, so.
Well, I, I think I knew what I was going to say, Mr. Chair, may I have this little point person here? What I was going to say, some communities do not require a lot. Some communities are very affluent, and they, you know, they're self-sustainable. Some of our communities have also gotten to, we, we gave them a special purpose district, so they maintain, but there are a lot of the communities throughout this county that may not be as affluent, and they need a little bit more help than others, and, I mean, we have a lot of them, but we have less affluent communities than we do a lot of communities that are really needing. I, when I first come on, came on this council and talked about having community meetings, one of my councilmen said, they ain't never had a community meeting. I mean, so, because they really didn't need it, you know what I'm saying, they were self-sufficient. A lot of people are not self-sufficient, we have to help, we have to reach down and help those who are less, who are less, whatever I'm trying to say, y'all are the less fortunate ones.
You can, Ms. Dixon? Mr. Jackson?
I think one of probably the most important pieces is the accountability piece. I, I think that people do a great job of planning, experts like yourself come in and offer expert advice, and documents are written very elaborately, and public engagement occurs, and feedback is given, and all of those things happen. And quite often, my experience has been, where the breakdown occurs, is in the follow-up and follow-through, and the accountability, and ensuring that that plan is not just something that's done and put in a beautiful glossy binder, presented to council, and approved, and put on the shelf, but that someone is responsible for making sure that it is enacted, and it's engaged, it is reviewed, it's evaluated, it's updated, and oftentimes, that's where we lose out. And because we're all so busy, unless you ride herd on it personally, individually, you're going to find yourself in a situation where folk will do as much as those who are riding herd, and those who are screaming loudly about require them to do. And so, we've got to kind of change that mindset. If, in fact, it's worth the energy and effort and time put into developing it, it ought to be worth the energy, effort, and time of making sure it comes to reality.
Yeah.
And no one should have to ride a hurdle over you to make sure that happens.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Good point.
Ms. Newton?
I wasn't going to say, I agree with what Mr. Jackson said, I have a friend who does strategic planning, he calls them pots plans, where you bake it, and you put it on the shelf, and then it's done, so certainly, I guess, to, to just, I was thinking, to address some of the things that we were talking about before, when we do get to the point where we're ready to do the strategic planning, and look at our common goals and mission, it sounds to me, this isn't the right word, so, and we can find it at a time, but, but that there's, there are strong feelings about ensuring equity as we plan, and so, the thing about that, and starting from scratch with the planning process, is that that's one of the values that we can enshrine in what we're doing, so as we're evaluating things, we can ask the question, well, you know, have we done all the things that we need to do to address equity? And again, that might not be the best word, but, but those are some of the-
That's the thing we're here, yeah.
Right, and so, I guess I just wanted to acknowledge that it, it sounds like, at least to me, that there's some agreement on that, so we've already got some agreement towards, towards a strategic plan. Yay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you all very much, Clayton.
Thank you very much.
I think this was, yeah, I think this was the point in the agenda where we were going to take a break, so.
All right, well, we'll take a fifteen-minute break, and-
Okay, well, welcome back. We're not yet done talking about strategic planning. Hopefully, that's a good thing. I do appreciate Ed coming down again, kind of walking through what strategic planning is, what are some components of a strategic plan, and why it's beneficial. I did want to just quickly talk about the packet a little bit, section five is sort of where this presentation starts. The first two pages, I believe there's some, there's like a briefing, or a document there that summarizes what Ed talked about, and what I'm going to be talking about, and then behind that is the presentation, and then behind that, I think it's on four dash thirty-one, is some material that I'm going to talk about during the presentation, that you may want to refer back to in more detail, just to be able to see it better, but also to learn more about some of the examples I'm going to be talking about. So, I'm going to refer back, so at some point, if you want to follow on with the examples, but for the most part, you can follow along with the slides. I did title this presentation, Leaving a Legacy This Way, because I think that anyone who's lived for a period of time, and hopefully in search of noble pursuits, wants to look back on their life, and ensure that they left the world a better place than they came into. And I think engaging in strategic planning in the way that Ed has presented, and the way that I'm going to be talking about, is a way that those of us in this room can ensure that we do that, that we leave a legacy, the effects of which can and should be felt for many years to come. A quick outline, I'm, I'm going to talk about, Ed briefly went through strategic planning components, and I'm going to go in more detail about what those components might look like if we were to do a strategic plan, and have a strategic planning framework in Richland County. Then I'm going to talk about a couple of initiatives that are currently underway, and how that might fit within this type of framework. And many of the elements and components are very similar to what Ed talked about earlier, and then I'm going to briefly go through what could be a proposed implementation plan and timeline. So, I just want to make a quick distinction about strategic planning. It's distinct from long-term planning in that long-term planning supposes that an organization starts with what it's currently doing, and continues to do it, and devotes resources to doing that. The problem with that is, is that oftentimes, eventually, a community organization needs change, and Ed talked about that, and they change over time, and what you had planned to do, and what you started doing, is no longer meeting those needs and wants of the organization and the community. Strategic planning is distinct, then, because it suggests that we start with a desired future state, and work backwards to define a place where the organization and the community should start, and move from that present to the desired future state. So, I want to just draw a, a quick distinction there, and hopefully, if you've done a good job establishing what your mission statement is, that, that should align very well with what the vision for the community should be. As I go through this presentation, I'm going to be referring to a few examples, and the first question you're probably going to have is, well, why these three? So, there's a few reasons. Hopefully, we can all agree that these are somewhat large jurisdictions, some of them are close to home, Mecklenburg County is sort of a regional comparative, some are farther away. Mecklenburg County did win NACO and ICMA awards for their strategic plan, but there are other comparable jurisdictions out there that you may be thinking of, Pinellas County, Florida, Marion County, Indiana, Maricopa County, Arizona, Kansas City, and even South Carolina County. So, one of the reasons I didn't draw from those is because of a few things. They're not necessarily strategic in nature, they're long-term, they're starting from where they currently are, and they're planning based on what they want to do, not necessarily looking at a desired future state. Many of South Carolina counties and cities use a comprehensive plan as their strategic plan, and that is essentially starting from where you are. Some of those, some of those jurisdictions are only focused on the organization, so they don't bring the community element into it. In other words, they're only looking at the operations of the county, and not necessarily the services that are out in the community, that may be part of the plan, and also the community input. So, those are a few reasons why I chose these three jurisdictions to look at. So, the first element is a community vision. It should be a broad picture of the community in the distant future, that's the desired future state that we're looking for. It's, it's distinguished from a, a mission statement, which is more why an organization exists, and what we do for who, and how we do it. But it should say where, and what we will be, by when, and should answer questions, answer these questions, what do we aspire to be as a community, and what do we hope to achieve? And every subsequent element of this framework, it is designed to bring this vision into reality, and identify where the organization should begin its efforts. So, what does that look like in practice? So, again, this is on four dash thirty-one, if you, for a better readable version, but essentially, there's a, there's a tagline there, right? In 2015, Mecklenburg County would be a community of pride and choice for people to live, work, and recreate. It is a, a comprehensive statement, right, as you can see. So, it's not just the tagline, while that is important. But the tagline is important for sort of publicizing and engaging citizens, but the substance is important for the organization to begin bringing the vision into focus. And so, it should be written this way, so that the community, when they're engaged, they see their input in it, and in terms of what we value as a community, it's being defined, and they can see themselves in that. And I also want to point out that the, the vision should be future-focused, so you see a specific word in there, Mecklenburg County will be. It's what we will be, not what we are, or what we plan to do, but it's what we will be. And so, one of the things I want to highlight is, just a couple of sentences, one of the things they said in their plan was, we will have safe neighborhoods with comparable crime rates from one neighborhood to another, we will be protecting our natural resources, we will have an abundant source of clean drinking water, clean and healthy creeks that are suitable for prolonged human contact, and air quality within acceptable standards. And so, they're getting very specific about what it means to be a community of pride and choice for people to live in, right? So, they're defining what, what it means to live in that county, what it means to work in that county, what it means to recreate. And so, that is how they see the desired future state of Mecklenburg County. And why that's important is, when we talk about vision elements, which is another part of the framework, all of this is starting to bring the vision, which is a distant desired future state, into focus, so that we can turn it into actual, actual action. So, vision elements are sort of these broad themes that reflect what we value as a community. And as an organization, taking the things from the community vision, that the community and organization values that are similar in nature, and grouping them into these broad themes, ensures that it's derived from the community vision, and is also aligned to focus areas, which I'm going to talk about in just a second. So, in practice, this is what it looks like. And this is on, actually, the next, the next page, four thirty-two. So, in this example, safe neighborhoods would then fall under community safety, air and water quality would be grouped with protecting natural resources. Why is it important to go through these vision elements? It's because we're starting to break down the vision statement into actionable items. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. So, I also want to point out that the focus areas are also on this slide, and what are the focus areas? These are the various lenses that we view coordinated delivery of county government services, and I would also propose that it's also community services, whether it be nonprofits or other agencies that we collaborate and partner with. So, we're taking the broad themes from that, those vision elements that are similar, and grouping them into focus areas, and why is this important? The expectation- The expectation is that that coordinated service delivery aligns with focus areas, and they're coordinated in a fashion because the organization is viewing them through the same lens. And we view them through the same lens because the organization can begin to make decisions about the hierarchy that oversees these services, the structure of the organization, and how resources, funding, human capital, should be allocated to provide those services. So essentially, the focus areas, bringing that vision into focus, allow for the organization to bring the vision more into actionable items. So here's another example of what some other focus areas. City of Edmonton is one example that I'm using, and you can see there are four focus areas up here and also on your slides, it's healthy city, urban places, regional prosperity, and climate resilience. So the key phrase here is that these focus areas require transformational change in the next ten years to achieve our vision. So what is it about having this lens of a healthy city? So this is where we begin to, we're still looking at focus areas, but each focus area should have a broad general statement about what we want to accomplish, okay? So again, we're starting to narrow in more into that vision and focusing in on what we want to accomplish in terms of actionable results. And each focus area should have an actionable goal that states what we want to accomplish, and essentially, where we want to go or what we want to do in practical terms. So for Edmonton, their specific goal associated with a healthy city, what does it mean to be a healthy city? Edmonton is a neighborly city with community and personal wellness that embodies and promotes equity for all Edmontonians. I guess that means we're Richlandians, but, but those, they've highlighted or bolded four key phrases in there that I'm going to come back to, and it's how they've started to bring that vision more into focus. I think everything up to this point, before I start talking about desired results, is that they should be fairly stable over time, okay? The vision shouldn't necessarily change in three to five years, but we did talk about a strategic plan being living and being able to be tweaked, for lack of a better word. These should stay very, somewhat stable over time. The next elements I'm going to talk about may change more frequently, and that would be part of what Ed was referring to in terms of those three to five-year plans, and I'll get into those more specifically later on. But essentially, desired results are these multi-year objectives that support and align to the focus area goals. They're more specific, they're narrowly focused. So you see we're going from the broad vision on down to we're getting more and more specific. So Thurston County was another example, and we talked with them extensively about what their process was, so we got a lot of good information from them. They're terming their desired results as initiatives. Obviously, terminology is, can cross over, but what they are talking about is, their desired result is improved health outcomes for all. What are those health outcomes? Well, the desired future state is more people living longer, healthier lives because they take care of themselves. So getting very clear about what they want to see and what are the desired results for that community. So if we've been intentional and thoughtful and gone through the exercise of identifying all of these other elements, we should be able to come to a conclusion about how we can go about achieving the results, and that's where our corporate strategies come into play. I'm terming it corporate to distinguish between departmental or program. This is enterprise-wide, this is community-wide goals, or strategies, I should say. But they're essentially your theory of action. They outline how you're going to focus on achieving the desired results. There should be actionable statements stating how we will get there. And this is on page four dash forty. But Thurston County said, okay, well, here's our strategies. And you can see they actually broke them down into short-term and long-term strategies. Things like promote equity through training, education, and data, target investments and programs that support school-edged youth, increase access and health outreach throughout the county. So this is how they see themselves achieving their desired result to improve health outcomes So if we know how we're going to go about implementing this, we need to have a way to track our progress towards achieving those results and those focus area goals over time. These should be quantifiable indicators, corporate measures, how we know when we get there. We've already said how we're going to do it. If we're not tracking our progress, then this is not a worthwhile effort. So getting back to Edmonton, remember those key four terms they pulled out of their goal? For them, those became their indicator categories: community wellness, neighborly, equity, which I think was mentioned earlier, and personal wellness. And so here are some corporate measures that they've defined. So what does it mean to be neighborly? Well, it's a sense of community, they have a sense of community score averaged for Edmontonians' neighborhoods. They also look at community wellness in terms of the percentage of Edmontonians who indicate they witnessed or personally experienced any discrimination or racism in Edmonton. So that is how they're measuring and tracking those results. And so what they use, as you can see up here and hopefully in your booklet, is that they're using survey tools, okay, to help come up with those measures. So they're sending a perception survey out to the community and say, saying, okay, did you witness or personally experience this? And then they're tracking those results over time. And the goal, of course, is to get to whatever percentage or whatever they believe is success. So putting all the pieces together would look something like this, okay? We have a vision statement, we have a focus area, a focus area goal, a desired result, being very specific, we want to reduce health risk and diseases. That's something that Mecklenburg County had. And then the strategies, and then the measure. Each focus area has a focus area goal with multiple desired results. Each desired result should have at least one strategy and one measure. But each desired result may have multiple issues, and this is where issues help begin defining short-term plans. And I'll kind of go through an exercise of what that, what that looks like. So current initiatives in Richland County. Now, I've seen the total scope of Revivify Richland, and so with this sentence, I'm sure I'm not doing it any justice, but I just want to simplify it for us, so, for the purpose of this exercise. But essentially, Revivify Richland is designed to identify, assess, mitigate, and remediate blighted areas through inventory and prioritization and immediate to long-term strategies. So how would this fit within this type of framework? Well, this would be an issue that would be a particular area that we would focus on. And so I actually just borrowed some of this and made up some of it, just to kind of give you an example. But if our issue was Revivify Richland, it might fall up into a desired result that is improve neighborhood wellness. It might fall up under a goal that is to preserve and enhance our natural resources, the desirability of our neighborhoods and the overall quality of life, within a focus area of growth management and environment, okay? And strategies that align with that, as well as potentially a neighborhood wellness index. So if we were to track this over time, and again, this is just an example, and actually, this should be on the end there, it should be FY twenty results, not necessarily FY twenty-three. But if our measure, our corporate measure, was neighborhood wellness index, our three-year, if we were to come up with a three-year plan, it might be, we want sixty percent of neighborhoods scoring eighty or better on this index, okay? And if we're in our first year, we might not have any data yet, and so if we were going to use a light system, so to speak, this would be a gray area because we don't know, we don't have any data yet, so we don't know where we are, okay? But let me get to this example where I'm going to do a slight shift on that and show you how it can change a little. So with a community survey, this is another initiative that is happening. This is designed to measure citizens' perception of the quality of life in Richland County, their opinions about service delivery, also provide an opportunity for feedback about priorities for future initiatives. This is essentially represents a tool to measure performance under those corporate measures, similar to what you saw in Edmonton. And so how would this fit? Well, it would be a tool to measure citizen satisfaction with input opportunities, and it might fall up under a strategy, an issue, a desired result, and a focus area goal, and a focus area in this way. So I made most of this up, but this is just an example and borrowed some of it. But if we were going to measure that, that would specifically be a question on our community survey. What is your satisfaction with input opportunities? And our three-year target might be, we want an eighty percent satisfaction rate. Let's say at the end of the three years, we're only at sixty-five percent. Then it becomes a decision of, are we happy with this? Are we happy with sixty-five percent? Maybe we did the best we could do. We devoted all the resources that we could. This is the best we think it's going to be. Well, then we move on to another issue for the next three-year, one, two, three, four, five-year plan. If we're not happy with the results and we think we can do more to get to that eighty percent, well, then we devote more resources to ensuring that there's more input opportunities, engaging satisfaction until we get to that eighty percent. And thus, it goes on to the, it continues to be an issue on the next iteration of our, of a business plan. And again, if there was a light system, this might be a yellow, right? Green, meaning we've succeeded, we've achieved. Yellow, we're not quite there. Red, we're not on track. Gray, we don't have any data. So this would be a potential proposed timeline. On the second page of the, that first document, that's sort of the agenda briefing, it goes into more detail about what each of these might look like. But the first step would be to engage, or to have a community engagement consultant begin to start planning for internal and external stakeholder input and developing focus groups based on that. We would also want to work with the consultant to develop a communication plan, both internally and externally to citizens and our partners about what we're doing, and then finally getting into actual internal and external stakeholder input. Overall, this is about an eight to ten-month timeline. We did do some research with Thurston County about how much engaging a consultant costs, and so the costs you see in there are based on some comparison. If we were to do, have a local consultant come in, what that might look like in terms of cost for us, accounting for cost of living. Staff would come back with a draft strategic plan and go through all of these elements, what we, what came out of all of that input, stakeholder input, and present those at a work session. And then we would go back and ensure that what we said we did and what's captured in there is actually what people want to see and is reflected in what staff has put together. But I think the biggest thing I want to highlight is that the, the goal of this would be, at the end, next year's retreat, you would be identifying specific issues that you think are either current or new ones that would be on the first iteration of a one-to-three or three-to-five-year business plan. That would be what the outcome, that the overall framework would be moving towards. So I just want to highlight that because that's when you start making decisions about, is this an actual issue that we want to put resources and funding towards? Any questions about, anything that I presented or anything that Ed's presented?
Any questions? Just get your guys.
Thank you. So I love the framework for this and think it was really helpful. I have a question about the community engagement consultant, and I do like being behind, so it was my understanding that council approved doing a community survey. I thought we had even maybe sent out an RFP. I guess, let me just stop there. Can you just tell me the status of that first step?
I think I'm seeing that as a little bit different than the community survey. The community engagement consultant would actually be creating the community vision. What does the vision look like?
Okay. So then, now that I see where I was incorrect there, can you tell me the status of the community survey?
It's, the RFP was closed. I think they submitted some, there were some submissions. I'm not sure where we are.
It's going to need to come back to your own category to award.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Make sure you look at that timeline there and see where we might want to go.
I appreciate your time. Oh, question, okay.
I definitely support strategic planning, so I don't want to come off as a naysayer. We've gone to the community a number of times. In fact, with the big plan and the neighborhood improvement projects for the penny taxing and, and so when I go now, they say, yeah, we did this plan five years ago, and we invested all of this time, and what's going to happen? And I have to go tell them that, well, I'm not sure about what's going on with the plan. So I guess my point is that we keep going to the community, getting their input and coming up with fabulous plans, and nothing happens. And the community, well, some of the people I've talked to are disillusioned because they've been involved in a process so many times. And I don't know, and I know, I don't know if there's another way that we could get the information to start our priority setting, then going back through a long, long process, even though six months may not sound long, and get the community excited when we can have some immediate returns or something that won't take as long because they've been through this a number of times.
Okay.
And that's my concern, because they've been through this a number of times, and we've gone and gotten input. We've done surveys of what was needed. I don't know, the priority areas. We did, two years ago, we did a priority, a survey of all the needs in Richland County. And I think Mr. Walker suggested something similar, but we had already done one about two years ago under one of our former administrators. But we never used that information, or maybe not used it in the best way. And then we have the ombudsman's office, which they get hundreds of calls, thousands of calls to track priorities, to track issues that the county has. And there's another one, getting resources. So I'm just cautious about going through an elaborate process and getting the information and then not being able to address the needs once we have.
Okay.
Are you clarifying, please? Are you talking about Renaissance or Revivify?
Which one?
That's what I'm asking, which one?
Okay, Revivify is a part of Renaissance.
But I think he's addressing only Revivify, aren't you?
Yeah, but I'm talking about a process, a plan, period.
Yeah, so Revivify Richland was sort of an example of a potential, it could be an issue that we want to focus on that would fit within the framework. But I think what you're saying is maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is actually based on Thurston County's work. Mecklenburg County did not do it this way. They felt that they had enough input from different sources at that time, that the board at that time got together and developed the vision statement. It was not, that's not to say there wasn't community input, but it was not as extensive because they already felt like, we know what the issues are, we've got enough previous history and input that we can write our own vision statement with the people in this room.
Newton and Dickerson.
I'm happy you go.
Oh, mine is just real simple, because I looked up there and the first thing I saw was August twenty twenty midterm to retreat, and I'm not going to be here August twenty twenty, after Mr. Livingston have that first meeting that we got here every August.
We got your port.
So, so I guess one thing that occurs to me, and I don't think that this is a question that we, you know, can answer now at the end of the day, but would be great if we could answer, and to address part of Ms. McBride's point and also part of Mr. Jackson's point earlier in terms of creating plans and putting them on the shelf, my question to us as a body is, what does commitment to strategic planning on the part of this council actually look like? You know, because it's going to take our real commitment to make sure that we're not just going through the motions where we have to go back and tell people that we got feedback on something, but didn't necessarily do something with it, just to make sure that we're really driving it forward. I know as individuals, there are those of us who are committed to this process, and I certainly count myself among them, but the time will come if we say we're going to do this, where we as a body will have to act differently, and so we will just have to among ourselves say, this is what it looks like to be committed. And so we will just have to among ourselves say, this is what it looks like to be committed to strategic planning, you know, when we're doing the budget, when we're doing our, our, all of our activities for planning. So I guess I just wanted to put it, put it out there for us to consider because that's what it's really going to take to make this happen. You know, whatever process we use here, but to make sure that real results come from this, which is what we all want. Because I, I do think that it predates me, but other efforts have been tried at other times, but I don't know how robust on the part of the body as a whole. No, I, I don't want to say it that way. I, I don't know that maybe there were some other steps we could have taken as a body to make sure that we drew.
Yeah, let me follow up, Mr.
Go ahead.
I am done. I don't think mine is not. I think that the council is committed and has always been committed. So that's not my issue about commitment. It is an issue about staffing and having the time to get the work done with all the other projects that we have, initiatives that we have going on. My concern is, how can we use the information that we already have if it's not too dated to come up? And we already know some of the issues and not to have such an elaborate process for input from the, I want input from the committee, but the process that we use. Because we, we do have a lot of data that's already there. We have a lot of knowledge that's already there. We have a number of communities that meet monthly, but it's not going to take a real elaborate process, I think, on some areas. I'm not sure, but that, that's just my concern. But whatever we come up with, I'm one hundred percent behind a strategic plan and process that we can use.
I remember, several years ago, when I went to a national conference, and one of the sessions I attended was on strategic planning as relates to county councils. And I remember at that time, the main challenge was, just going back to, you know, the original makeup of counties, it was primary design, it just seemed to do three basic things: law enforcement, tax collection, land use kind of things. And now it has morphed into all things for all people. And so, so we start talking about health outcomes and wellness and housing, those kind of things. It's, it's, it's just so much bigger than county government. And so they talked about the significant importance of if, if it's going to work for a county, partnerships and collaboration has got to be one of the main themes in your, in your plan because you are now charged to do, to engage in all of these things that county government was not originally designed for. And so therefore, you got, you know, you know, how you can do health and wellness without making sure you hold, you pay them a prison health account of doing some things, or education and so forth. So we got to figure out a way to make sure that we, that we, we consider that. And Ed, I didn't, Ed, I was about to call your last name, but I didn't want to mess it up. But have you had any thoughts about when you talk about stuff like county government and you got so many moving parts that are affected by some of the other entities? You know, you know, how does that affect a strategic plan?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. That I think what you're, the way you worded it about partnerships and determining different ways that county government, when it's not may, maybe purely your typical role to, to fund something or to drive a certain program or service, how can you all serve as facilitators or conveners in the community to help, help those things that might not necessarily be a typical or primary use for county resources? So that would be a deep conversation to have to get at the question of resources and priorities. Where should your resources be? And is this really the role of county government where it's not, but you still feel a pull to have some impact on these other areas? Where can we maybe convene our different partner organizations or facilitate movement forward without you all taking on a responsibility that's not typically county government? So when you're thinking about priorities and where to invest resources through the planning process, you would ask yourself those questions and maybe try to position the county in a slightly different role for those areas that are just not typically your, you know, your, your primary responsibilities.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, I think something that Mecklenburg County did was, so they identified through their vision a lot of things that they wanted to see. And there were some vision elements that came out of that, such as education, literacy, arts, and cultural activity that were not core county government functions. And so they saw those as opportunities to reach out to the agencies that do those things and begin to partner with them with, this is what we want to see in our strategic plan and our strategic planning framework. Can you be a part of this and share data with us so that we can begin to see? And, and that was fairly successful.
And that's one of the ones I was thinking about too, because they, even with the housing initiative and all those kinds of things, they just had a whole lot of that stuff in their plan.
Mr. Livingston and, and Mr. V. That is becoming. Mr. V, now you mentioned Mecklenburg County. Now, is Mecklenburg County one of those counties that is merged with the city and the county? Like Jacksonville, Florida?
No, they are.
They have not?
No, so they're.
Does it have the city government?
Yes.
Some services.
Okay.
Correct.
They combine some services.
They combine some services. I know there was a combination of some of those things that they.
Correct.
Right, okay. Don't mention, what's the other county that's out in California?
Maricopa.
Maricopa, don't talk about that. You might as well. They're so far ahead of everybody, so.
You have other questions coming in?
All right. Thank you.
So the plan would have to include, we have to, some of the stakeholders would probably have to be some out-of-city officials to be involved in some of this stuff, that that would.
I think that is part of the intent, and that's what Ed pointed to, is some of the people you would want to involve in, in the process.
That would be those.
Stakeholders.
So we were refining this, which is the schedule.
Oh, the question, which is a good question, is, you know, you know, of course, now, this is not a definite schedule. We, we may have to, you know, you know, work with, refine at certain times too, but it give us a good start though.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's, at the end of the discussion, reference county council members regarding this issue, regarding strategic planning, that, that's kind of the last thing on our agenda. So let me make sure there aren't any further discussion, reference county council members. Mr. Brown.
I just wanted to say again, thank you, and very specifically, what we wanted to accomplish with this particular retreat is just what you saw at the end, for example, is to give you some specific things that you could take back and think about, okay, how do we move forward? So we didn't want to just leave you just kind of wide open with, you know, general thoughts. So we really are looking to do something like this. And so we're just asking you to consider all this information, really give us some thought, and then let us know when you're ready. But I, I will kind of come back to you as well and, and ask you, it's now, are you ready? So I, I will be asking that question. So again, thank you very much, and I hope this information has been beneficial to you as members of council.